Good evening. In compliance with Chapter 551, Open Meetings of the Texas Government Code, I call to order an information session of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for April 12th, 2025 at 6:03 PM. A quorum of the Board is physically present at Austin ISD's central office to conduct this meeting. Trustee Singh, I believe, will be joining us by Zoom. This meeting is being broadcast on cable channel 22 through Spectrum, Astound Broadband, and on channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning is available in English on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. Welcome and thank you for joining us. We'll start with general public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to share comments with the Board. This time allows speakers to comment publicly on any topic of their choosing directly to the school board. We have time for up to 60 speakers during information sessions. As a reminder, the district continues to provide time during our regular voting meetings of the Board to hear from the public about agenda items for consideration and vote. This is an opportunity for the Board to take part in listening to our community. While we wish we could respond or provide feedback, we are required to limit our questions to requests for clarification or follow-up directly to the administration. Members of the public wishing to participate in the public comment portion of our meeting called a dedicated Austin ISD phone line in advance of the meeting to sign up, to speak in person, or to audio record their remarks. Tonight, we have 19 people who signed up to speak in person, and we have 41 people who left a recorded message. We will now move to in-person testimony. In order to provide as many opportunities for input as possible within a limited time period at this meeting, each speaker will be allotted one minute. No substitutions or yielding of time to others is permitted. Callers who signed up to speak in person are welcome to come to the microphone when their name is called. As you come to the microphone, there is a device that will light up as you move through your one minute of allotted time. When the buzzer sounds, please make a final thought in one sentence. Again, we ask that whether you come to give a complaint or praise, that you reference any staff member or person, any staff member by position or by abbreviated last name and initial. We ask that all audience members, whether speaking or not, please show respect for others at all times. Thank you. Our first three in-person speakers are Tatiana Brown Gomez, Alana Urbano, and Laney Gilbert. We'll call three people at a time. So Tatiana Brown Gomez, Alana Urbano, and Laney Gilbert. And Ms. Brown Gomez, you can speak when you're ready.
The button? Thank you. Good evening. My name is Tatiana Brown Gomez, an Education Austin member, and this is my second year at Dobie. I'm Dobie's 2023-2024 Teacher of Promise, a sixth and eighth grade ELA teacher, volleyball and basketball coach, newspaper advisor, and persistent cosmetology teacher. This year, we've revived programs and raised the bar academically. The Roadrunner, our student newspaper, elevated students' writing, reading, and speaking skills. They also learned Canva to develop digital media, audio production, and photography skills. In December, Cosmetology held its first showcase. The superintendent, Board members, and guests were amazed by my first-year students and demonstrated high-school-level skills. On the 24th, we aim to top that with the fashion show, "That Same Night You Decide Our Fate." I ask that Dobie's plan keep the same career-focused ACE programs, esports, cosmetology, barber academy, culinary, and medical academy. I ask that Dobie's plan keep the same teachers and staff who impressed TEA and wore many hats to provide equitable education to students facing abject poverty and homelessness. I ask that Dobie's plan keep our students at the center. And if you're tearing apart our community, how do you plan to restore the resources and support it deserves like every other AISD campus? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alana Urbano, and I'm the proud band and mariachi director at Dobie Middle School. I've worked for Austin ISD in the northeast side for eight years. My colleagues have selected me to be the 2025 Dobie Teacher of the Year, and I am the committed member of Education Austin. And the reason why I'm here to speak today is about the future of Austin ISD in the Runberg community. For the first time in nearly a decade, we've taken two bands to UIL competition and received our first Superior ratings. Our student, Albert Rodriguez, achieved the highest middle-school music honor in the state, placing in the All-Region Band and ranking 20th in the Austin area on his Trump. Our Dobie Theater, Mariachi, Dance, and Cheer programs are the largest they've ever been. Our athletic programs are soaring with wins across football, basketball, tennis, and more. Austin ISD School Board, you have the power to include the community in this decision. Fight for a solution that will honor the culture, care, and commitment that we've built at Dobie. Should you choose to close down permanently, Dobie, you are closing down Runberg. We ask you, do right by them.
Good evening. My name is Laney Gilbert, the proud theater director of Dobie Middle School and a member of Education Austin. I'm here to talk about the future of AISD in the Runberg community. Please empower us with true voice and choice in shaping this decision. Our future depends on it. At Dobie, we have many thriving fine arts programs: band, dance, theater, mariachi, all at little to no cost to our students. How can we guarantee that wherever you would send our community, they will have equitable opportunities to participate in the same activities? Dobie has the only full middle-school theater program left on the northeast side of Austin. What happens to my students and their growing passion for theater? Can we guarantee that they will be given spots in the already cramped fine arts courses that are available? The potential loss of our programs will continue the cycle of inequity that puts our theater high schools in a state of perpetual catch-up with all of the other high schools in the district. I ask you to get to know us, come meet with our community, Monday, April 14th at 5:00 PM, because should you choose to permanently close our doors, you are not just closing Dobie, you are closing Runberg. Thank you.
Thank you to our speakers. Next up is Frainer Elvira, Elizabeth Davis, and Jose Rico. And we're ready when you are. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Frainer. We are all really upset about what's going on about our school. Dobie is and has been an amazing school, and it really pains me that we might lose it. We finally have an athletics program that kids are excited to go to school for and really makes them want to do good in their classes, to be able to participate in such activities. Dobie is the only school on the northeast side of Austin that has an amazing theater program that we didn't have two years ago. And now we're doing wonderful and actually competing and doing really good in our theater program. We also have a beautiful and amazing band with our extraordinary and funny band directors. I've met so many friends and wonderful teachers and staffs, and I really created a strong bond with each and every single one of them. I really hope you guys reconsider your actions and give us a chance. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Davis. I'm Restorative Practices at Dobie and ACE Coordinator, Assistant Coordinator for Programs After School. This is my first year at Dobie. Dobie is more than a school. It's home to most of our students. We are committed to the well-being and fostering of the whole child. Our campus survived understaffed before COVID and after COVID, yet we came together to build a strong community that is finally built on a solid foundation. Our after-school program promotes career and college readiness, which opens our kids up to possibilities that they may not have thought of elsewhere. Austin Voices provides security for the community and Dobie's families with their clinics that are held on-campus, their food banks, and assistance to the needs of the community as well as Dobie itself. We see the growth in our students that we're making. Closing Dobie robs families and the resources as well as opportunities. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Jose Enrique Rico. I teach two class periods of English Development and Acquisition, a Newcomer Flexible Academic Block, and four English as for Speakers of Other Languages classes for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade at Dobie Middle School. Dobie deserves dignity and consideration, transparency in communication, and candor. The reason I'm here today is because I want to speak to the future and legacy of Austin ISD in the Runberg community. Last year, my coworkers voted me Teacher of the Year, but when we got our star interim results back, I felt like the worst teacher in the district. My students love me. I see my students grow, but when I got those star results back, I was ready to quit the next day, the very next day, because I'm interested in the community, I'm interested in the future of my students. And all of these flags right here, these represent where my students come from. But when they're in my classroom, everybody's a Roadrunner. And what I pledge allegiance to is my community. What I pledge allegiance to is these people here. What I pledge allegiance to is the future of my students and their outcomes. I've had to remind myself of that and stay true to my mission, because I'm putting children first, always. Not a budget, not all of this. The students' outcomes first, always. This is my fourth year at Dobie. Two principals in two years of revolving door of interims, teachers that quit after one semester, others that loved Dobie but were worn down, positions cut every year, entire seasons of instability. And then, we got Ms. Walker. And under her leadership, Dobie is finally a place where people are deciding to stay. You want to talk about teacher retention at the school that has the lowest teacher retention?
And Mr. Rico, we have a lot more speakers. We want to hear you.
We are building a school worthy of its students right now. And you're trying to take that away from us? Don't close the school down. And if you decide to partner with the charter, let the community decide its own future with you. You have the power to fight equitable solutions. You have the power to avoid mass migrations to charter schools. Losing Ms. Walker, all of our special programs, and the momentum that all of my colleagues have dedicated ourselves to is not a risk that the Runberg community is willing to take.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
We have a gathering on the 14th. On the agenda is the future and legacy of Austin ISD in the Runberg community.
Thank you.
We would like to respectfully request your presence and for you to be a part of that conversation.
Thank you. I appreciate it, and I'm sorry to interrupt. Thank you. I appreciate that. Next up is Fabian Valdez, Mindha Anderson, and Alexandra Gavida.
Hello. My name is Fabian Valdez, and I'm an eighth grader at Dobie Middle School. I have been attending schools in the east side for my entire life. I am here to discuss what's important to Dobie students and our success. During my time at Dobie, I was taught to be a musician, actor, and leader. I love playing violin in our mariachi program, playing snare in our drum lane, playing percussion for our top band, and running sounds for our plays in the theater program. All of my friends are in sports and fine arts. Some manage to do both at the same time. Many of them are kids like me that have found inspiration and meaning in a program that gives hope and a plan for the future. One thing I've noticed is more Dobie students do better in more engaging environments like my math teacher, Mr. Smetana's class. He makes it simple and explains the subject well, and the way he explains it makes me want to learn math. One thing I ask is to give Ms. Walker more time to hire good staff and keep the strong teachers that are dedicated to their job and create a fun and safe environment for Dobie students. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Mindha Anderson. I'm a bilingual National Board Certified Teacher Librarian and a proud member of Education Austin. I'm speaking to you today as the Texas Librarian of the Year to celebrate to celebrate National Library Week, and thank you for continuing to fund certified school librarians at every campus. As we know, school librarians are not funded or required by the state, so I'm proud to see our district upholding our community values and continuing to invest in our students in this way. I also urge you to restore the high-school library clerk positions for the upcoming school year, since they provide essential services for our kids. Library clerks hold down the front desk and help the revolving door of student requests so teacher librarians can teach research skills, digital literacy, literature topics, order new books, support teachers in their instruction, and more. I urge everyone involved in budget decisions to avoid cuts that will directly affect student success. And I also invite you to ask me about Poem for a Pickle Week that we're celebrating next week. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Allison, and I'm an eighth grader at Dobie. I feel really devastated ever since I heard the news about Dobie closing down. I feel like they shouldn't close down the school because it took a lot of effort to be where we are now. Being at Dobie has made me feel very happy and comforted. I have made so many bonds with students, teachers, and staff because of our amazing Dobie band and fine arts. Band has helped me be more happy to be at school and get better grades. It feels really unfair how we might lose the happiness and memories of the students, teachers, and staff who have been at Dobie for years. And now that Dobie has been on a good path and kids are doing better at school, we can't just simply get derailed from the steady growth that we are making. So I want to ask y'all, why is it that this is happening? And if y'all can please reconsider y'all's options and really see Dobie's growth. Thank you for y'all's time.
Thank you to our speakers. Next up is Armina Martinez, Rosie Griffith Tremino, and Todd Gerlach.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Armina Martinez. I am very proud to be a teacher assistant in Special Education Life Skills at Dobie Middle School, also to be their PTA president. And my question is very simple. As taxpayer, where is the 2022 bond money will go? I mean, what will happen to that money? Because I personally would prefer to, for that money, to stay in the Runberg community for the future of our kids. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rosie, and I'm a sixth grader at the Ann Richards School for Young Women Leaders. I am here to share my perspective and urge you to reinstate our principal. She brought strong and compassionate leadership to our school, and most importantly, she brought a sense of stability. My teachers seemed so happy with her leadership, and we, as students, trusted that she would be here for us years to come. It is well-known that she was experienced and demonstrated excellent character. If she didn't have the support and resources she needed to do her job perfectly, then that is a district issue. If she made a mistake, use restorative justice, wrap her in support so that she can learn from it. Right now, you are showing us, the students of Austin ISD, that it doesn't matter how hard we work or how strong relationships we build, it can all be taken away from one incident that we are not adequately supported to navigate. What an awful message to send us, and we do not accept this approach. That is why so many students staged a walkout today at school. I hope that you hear our voices and listen to us, and I hope that you also hear Ms. Griffith's voice, too, in your executive session tonight. Thank you for your consideration and time.
Hello, I'm Todd Gerlach. I'm the father of two students at Ann Richards School for Young Women Leaders. I want to express my unwavering support for Principal Griffin and my overwhelming desire for her to return as principal of the Ann Richards School for Young Women Leaders. I also would like to ensure that you allow her the opportunity to speak for herself at the executive session tonight. I want to express my extreme displeasure with the district's communication through this entire ordeal. The lack of transparency regarding the process and zero statements regarding even the most basic non-confidential details of the case leaves the community guessing what might be going on or the motivations driving things. Our school community deserves better. And with that lack of communication, we don't know what's happening tonight. So I implore you to find a solution and resolution that not only provides the support for students and families, the students and families are seeking, but also allows you to stand behind your staff, teachers, principals, administrators, who are making the tough decisions every day for positive student outcomes.
And Mr. Gerlach, can you...
If the trustees and district are unwilling to provide that support to everyone and continue its terrible communication, then it's hard to understand why any student, family, teacher, staff member, principal, or administrator would choose to be a part of Austin ISD. I am certainly questioning my dedication to it.
Mr. Gerlach, can we wrap for other people? Thank you. I appreciate your comments. Thank you. Next up is Iris Nicholson, Melissa Michelson, and Molly McCullough.
Hello. My name is Iris Nicholson, and I am a senior at the Ann Richards School for Young Women Leaders, and I am here in support of Principal Griffith. As a senior, whether or not Principal Griffith is allowed to come back does not affect me as much as it affects the 800 other stars who attend Ann Richards, and that is why I am here. I've had five principals at Ann Richards in less than four years, and I can confidently say that Principal Nicole Griffith is the right principal for Ann Richards. She went to every single school event, from staying late at basketball games to driving across the city to watch a three-hour-long mock trial competition. She made flashcards to memorize every single junior's faces so that she would know them when they walked across the stage at graduation. She met with students and clubs regularly and genuinely cared about and made time for every single one of her students. Everyone I know loves Principal Griffith and wants her to come back. That is why we held a walkout today, and we called into the Board meeting and left you a voicemail to share how we feel. Now, I recognize that there are a lot of hard decisions that school boards have to make, but this is not one of those decisions. Principal Griffith has rescinded her resignation and has asked to come back. The Ann Richards community would love to have her and welcome her back, and you have the power to bring her back. Make the easy decision. Thank you.
How do I follow that? I am Melissa Nicholson. I'm the proud parent of an Ann Richards Young Women Leaders student. And you've heard a lot of outcry from our community at Ann Richards. You've heard from a lot of students. You've heard from a lot of parents. You've heard from a lot of colleagues of our principal. While we do not know why she resigned, we know three things. We know her character. We know that she is a committed leader who is dedicated to the growth and educational opportunities of the entire Ann Richards School population. You've heard from students how she made them feel welcomed, how she took the time to get to know each and every one of their names, how, when they had had previous principals and interim principals who had not taken the time to do that, she did. We know her character, we know her courage, and we know her commitment. And that is all we need to know. We ask that you accept her rescindant of the resignation and that you allow her to come back to the Ann Richards community, her dream job where she was born to lead.
Good evening. My name is Molly McCullough, and I'm a seventh grader at Ann Richards. I am here, along with multiple other people, on behalf of the Ann Richards School principal and community. We all know that our principal rescinded her resignation more than a week ago, so why has she still not yet been reinstated? The decision is not that complicated. Also, multiple members of the Board met with us on Tuesday, April 1st. They heard what we had to say, and they expressed their wanting to give us a principal that will listen to us and support our school and community. If this is truly your mission, then you need to stop spending time on this supposed hard decision and reinstate our amazing principal. You feel that you can push back having a conversation about this decision for as long as possible, but we will not allow it. Our principal needs to be back with our community, and we will stop at nothing to make sure that she is put there right back where she belongs with all the people that stand with and support her. AISD Board, you have already lost our trust, along with damaging the strong connection between you and our school. If you want to rebuild any of this, then we suggest that you reinstate her immediately. Thank you.
Thank you to our speakers. We have four in-person speakers remaining, so I'll call all four up at once. Cynthia Solis is the next, followed by Amy Moore, Jana Robertson, and Laurie Solis.
Hi, my name is Cynthia Solis, and today, a member of the media went ahead and gave me the investigative report regarding Principal Griffith. And I'm going to start sending my PI request to Ally. That was quick. But we have the report, and I want the Board to know that it is roughly 20% of the story. It covers four days, and it is vastly, like, shockingly incomplete. I'm implicated in this investigation as well. It was never asked or interviewed. Everybody in this room has my cell phone number. And yet, we went with four days of information to a conclusion based on one grievance, one. So it is exhausting and must be so hard for all of the incredible lifelong educators who are watching this happen to Nicole Griffith and Dr. Holliday, some of the best people we have here at AISD. If one complaint and one grievance and one incomplete investigation can end the career of multiple marginalized women who have led this district, what does that say about our ability to retain excellent leaders? Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, Superintendent Segura and AISD trustees. Thank you for your service to AISD. My name is Amy Moore, and I'm here tonight to ask you not to close Dobie Middle School. I completely understand that there are no easy alternatives that you have in front of you. Dobie's not alone is a campus in the state that needs a little extra support to meet the state's ever-moving goalposts and AI graded tests. I taught middle-school math a long time ago and navigated middle-school with my own three kids. It can be a joyful and also a really hard time in a child's education. Middle-school education needs a huge spotlight on it in AISD. I'm asking you tonight, if you haven't already, to please put together a citywide task force that focuses on middle-school, that includes our community members, teachers, students, parents, business community, and community partners, to find creative and out-of-the-box ideas to support our middle-school students. I'm also asking the entire AISD community to come together, no matter what your zone middle-school is, to fight for Dobie, because this isn't just about Dobie. If we, as a community, fail to address middle-school challenges in AISD, Dobie could be only the first of several middle-school dominoes that are going to fall, and that outcome is not acceptable. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jana Robertson, and I'm the Director of Bands at the Ann Richards School for Young Women Leaders. We all know that strong leadership is critical to student success. Since our principal joined Ann Richards two years ago, students have thrived and our community has strengthened. Last week's community meeting was a powerful reflection of the deep respect and trust this community has for her. Thank you for creating that space for us. One moment that I cannot stop thinking about from that evening was hearing her father speak, sharing that our principal has truly not felt heard throughout this process. That is deeply concerning to me. She is a respected leader who has served this district for many years. In fact, every district leader we've spoken to, many in this room, have described her as one of the strongest educators and leaders in our district, and I quote, "A force to be reckoned with." At the bare minimum, this sounds like someone who deserves a seat at the table. I ask that she be truly brought into the conversation, give her voice the respect it deserves, and let her be part of building a path forward, because if anybody can navigate what I can only assume is an extremely complex and nuanced situation, it's our proud principal. Thank you.
Number 60 right here. I'm Laurie Solis, President of the Austin Council of PTAs, here to support the Dobie Middle School community. Middle School community. We recognize that the district is facing incredibly tough decisions, working with limited options, and enormous stakes. Thank you for creating space on Monday for the community to come together, to listen, share, and provide input on the future of our schools. That said, it's unfair to hold communities accountable for a state test that continues to change, whether it's shifting benchmarks, AI-driven grading, or even altered scores after reviews. The instability at the district and campus levels have also played a role. These results reflect the test itself, not our students or teachers. But beyond the test, we have to acknowledge a deeper truth: We can do more, and we must. I'm calling on the Austin community, families, and community partners to step up for our students. Middle school is a challenging time, but our community is ready. Please open the door for families to share ideas, see the full picture, and help shape solutions that support every part of the student experience, from academics to extracurriculars. With that shared commitment, we can uplift our middle schools, strengthen our high schools, and build a strong foundation. This isn't just a challenge for AISD to face alone; it's something we all share responsibility for changing. Thank you.
Thank you to all of our in-person speakers and everyone who's made the time to be with us tonight. We'll now move on to our pre-recorded messages.
My name is Xiao Jin Li. I'm speaking to appeal the recent rejection of our children's LASSA application due to an address verification issue. We bought a second home within one mile of LASSA last year and filed homestead exemption transfer online in January, clearly establishing residency. However, no one from LASSA or enrolled Austin contacted us to request additional evidence after standard documents were deemed insufficient. From recent communication, we found LASSA's verification process relied on inaccurate information, which unfairly penalized us. I'm not here to blame anyone; I'm asking for leniency, more time to complete the homestead transfer process, and for our children's application to be considered afterward. I ask for your support in our family's good-faint effort to transition our children from private school to AISD. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brooke Anderson. I'm a proud parent of a daughter at the Ann Richards School for Young Women Leaders, and I am calling today to please urge you to reinstate the principal at Ann Richards School for Young Women Leaders. She has rescinded her resignation, and she is the best leader for the school. You heard hours of student and parent testimony, speaking on her amazing skills and qualities and what she has done for that school in just a short year and a half, a little over a year and a half. It is time to reinstate the principal at the Ann Richards School for Young Women Leaders. If you do not do this, parents will still be following up, because we will want answers. This is not okay. Thank you very much. I hope you have a good evening.
My name is Heather Wong. I'm a proud parent of two future AISD students, a longtime educator and a member of Education Austin. I've spent my 20-year career serving East Austin schools, including Doby Middle School. Last week, we learned that our staff is at high risk of closure or charter takeover, and tonight I'm asking, where was the plan? AISD has known this was possible for years, yet with just weeks left in the school year, there's still no clear plan for Doby's future. In fact, we were promised a new school. The groundbreaking was supposed to happen this week, and now it's canceled. Let me be clear: Doby is a brilliant, resilient community, predominantly Hispanic immigrant and refugee families who face real challenges. And despite this, Doby has made incredible strides with consistent leadership this year, including innovative programs, thriving fine arts, and a strong wraparound support system with Austin Voices, CIS, and more. Our students deserve stability and investment, and if AISD systems fell short, our students and staff should not bear the consequences. Doby doesn't need to be erased; it needs to be invested in, just like every other campus in AISD. Let us finish the work we started. Thank you.
Hello, I'm calling regarding the principal at Ann Richards School for Young Women Leaders. I'm a parent of a child who is a student there. I'm calling to lend my wholehearted support for said principal. I am an educator myself, so I understand the situation more than an outsider might, and the importance of stable, devoted leadership to the school, and that is exactly what this principal is. Nobody has benefited from her forced resignation. The students' learning has not helped, the students' mental stability is not helped, the school's stability has not helped, the sense of community and upstandingness is not helped, and the students' observations and exposure to adults working things out to a positive end is not met. For those reasons, there is no reason whatsoever to force the principal out, and we are so excited to have this opportunity to have her retained. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Noah Solomon, and I'm reaching out from Doby Middle School. I need to address some serious concerns regarding recent communications in December, particularly about the assurance given in December regarding our school's standing and that Doby was fine and a turnaround plan was just a technical term used by DEA. It was truly shocking to hear about the potential closure of Doby, especially when AISD has consistently failed to provide the necessary resources to support our students and staff. At Doby, we take immense pride in our unwavering commitment to our community and relentless advocacy for our students and their families. Our students with their unique needs and boundless potentials deserve to be seen for who they are, not defined by test scores. Doby is the heart of the community, and closing it due to failed leadership and unwilling to embrace the risk is not just unfair to our dedicated staff; it is deeply unjust to our families and students, who have already faced enough challenges without the added burdens from AISD. I look forward to seeing Superintendent Mateus Segura on April 14th to engage with our families face-to-face, just as well as all they did when she aimed to disrupt our campus. Our community deserves transparency and accountability, and together, we will champion the needs of our students. Thank you.
Margarita, parent of two students at Ann Richards. And my comment is that, if possible, our principal be reinstated. We know she retired, but then rescinded her resignation. There has not been a lot of transparency in her case. We understand that for district confidentiality reasons, the cause cannot be disclosed. But if she is willing to return, as parents representing the students, the teachers, we want immediate restitution. Thank you.
Regarding 5.2, 8.2, and 12.1 related to monitoring special education failures, improvement is needed. For example, some evaluations are on time; they're not quality. District is missing opportunity to review and resolve issues once evaluated. There's still little or nothing awaiting on the other side. We need services, SDI. There's a deep misunderstanding of disability. ECSE program and its leadership need some special attention, including with child find and the delivery of services, as well requiring a secluded setting for three-year-olds and four-year-olds should be reviewed. Separately, if any changes happen with Doby, they must go through a transparent, legally-compliant RFP process. Third feature should be excluded. And then, as it relates to Ann Richards, adults are rallying behind leadership. Children and families have experienced harm, can't always speak up. Grievance and investigation reportedly supports the termination, and that decision should be upheld. Regarding rescinding, let's keep theatrics out of our schools and prioritize student-centered decisions. Thank you.
This is Sharon Vane, AISD alumni parent. As part of your commitment to transparency and putting closures last on the priority list, please share in a board meeting, as well as in communications to the community, how and when you have considered boundary adjustments as recommended by the Long Range Planning Committee's work and final report. Is there a schedule for regularly assessing boundaries? If not, why not? As well, studies show campus libraries are a key driver of literacy, which directly connects to goals on the new scorecard. Cutting library clerk positions affects student outcomes. Please consider other cuts to get to your goal. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mary Francosa. I'm a founding member of Cub Scout PAC 512 at Riley Elementary School and have three children in the dual-language program there. This is a very special school, where no matter what language you speak at home or how many resources your parents have, we all come together here to share our cultures, have fun, and of course, learn. The campus is nestled right next to the Texas DPS headquarters, who are great neighbors to our school, checking in on us and making us one of the safest single campuses probably in the entire district. Parents can take a variety of good transit options to get to Riley, including the rapid bus line, train lines, bike lanes, car, or walking. Riley has a beautiful school garden filled with native plants that is used constantly, filling up every day after school for play, but it's also used all the time for scout meetings, birthday parties. Please consider keeping this facility. It's a very strategic location for AISD, and it's a wonderful place. Thank you so much for your time.
My name is Caitlin Gabor, and my daughter attends Ann Richards School, and I'm calling on behalf of the principal of Ann Richards, and I beseech you to do anything and everything under your power to keep the principal of Ann Richards. And as parents of students at Ann Richards, we will find any money needed for a lawyer in case that is the issue of a lawsuit, so that this money is not coming out of your pocket, but hers. And the end goal is to keep the best principal we have ever seen in AISD. Thank you for your time and commitment.
Hello, my name is Tom. I'm the parent of two Ann Richards High School students, and we've been in AISD schools since 2012. I'm just calling because the students, teachers, and parents are all pretty traumatized by the disappearance of the principal a couple of weeks ago, and the news that a classmate's mother in the district was also let go. Our kids have seen teachers struggle to stay composed. Students are feeling low morale and angry, and they're feeling like the constant leadership changes need to stop. I hope that everyone will see this, the meeting last week, and the protests, everything else, as an opportunity to revisit the facts and weigh the outcomes with more perspective. I can't tell you what is right, but I can tell you that losing people with 30 years of experience is a thing that you can't replace, so I hope that you guys will work to do the right thing. Thank you.
Hi, this is Jennifer Lloyd. I'm the parent of a ninth grader at the Ann Richards School. I'm speaking on Agenda Item 13.1, and I'm urging you to reinstate the principal of Ann Richards School. As a lawyer, I understand that credibility determinations are important in employment matters, and so I urge the trustees to speak directly to the former principal, asking for her side of the events giving rise to her initial resignation. The district lawyers can certainly advise on legal risk, but I think it's up to the trustees to evaluate the actual people that are in place and their performance. I believe that Nicole G. is an excellent leader for the Ann Richards School, and after hearing from her personally, I urge the trustees to reinstate her as principal as soon as possible. Thank you for listening.
Hi, I'm a parent of a ninth-grade student at Ann Richards School for Young Women Leaders, and I'm calling to give my support to the reinstatement of Principal G. to be brought back to Ann Richards. She has been excellent for the school and the time that she's been there so far, and has really fostered the kids to really bloom and brought back a lot of the things that helped them thrive. So we also do not have confidence in the hiring process, as the two previously hired principals did not work out well for Ann Richards and were not good fits. So please, I beg the board to figure out another way to solve the conflict that led to her resignation. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
My name is Rachel Preston, and I'm a teacher at LASSA and a proud member of Education Austin. I'm speaking to you today to celebrate National Library Week and to thank you for continuing to fund certified school librarians at every campus. We know that they are tied to higher literacy rates, test scores, and graduation rates. I'd like to share how libraries and librarians have impacted me. As an adult in particular, but also as a student, having access that was free to both classic and contemporary literature helps both build and sustain my lifelong love of reading, and I hope that the same can be done for our students in Austin ISD. I also urge you to restore the high school library clerk positions for the upcoming school year, since they provide essential services for our kids. I urge you, as members of the board, to avoid cuts that will directly affect student success. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Dr. Beth Adams, and I'm a parent of a child at Ann Richards School, and I am asking the board of trustees to please reinstate the principal to her position at Ann Richards School, and that you please speak directly with the principal for more information as to what happened that led up to this. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Abby Aiken, and I'm a teacher, team leader, and department chair at the Ann Richards School for Young Women Leaders. For the past 10 years, I've been honored to be a part of this incredible school, and tonight I feel a deep responsibility to speak in support of our principal, N. G. I must begin by thanking you, because two years ago, this board made its best decision yet, affirming her as our leader. Under her guidance, our community and culture, as well as our commitment to our mission, is stronger than ever. This was accomplished in large part because she worked tirelessly to earn the trust of students, teachers, and parents. Trusting N. G. is easy. She does what she says, and she says what she does. Her humility, strength, kindness, and intelligence foster genuine connection, whether through her game show-themed professional development days, her daily low-down emails, or the flashcards she made to greet every student by name. Simply put, you cannot replace her. Leaders like her, dedicated, honest, and driven, are rare, and it is your duty to support and retain exceptional talent and leadership, which is why I must ask that you reinstate N. G. as soon as possible as the principal of the Ann Richards School for Young Women Leaders. Thank you for your time.
My name is Jennifer Koppel. I am an AISD parent and member of the Ann Richards School CAC, calling regarding Agenda Item 13.1. Now that principal has resigned, rescinded her resignation, I understand clearly that the principal's desire is not to leave. I respect the principal's judgment to know that she can fulfill her duties as principal with integrity and fairness and thus remain at the Ann Richards School, and I believe so should you. I'm fully aware that the principal may have indeed made a significant mistake. However, we must do better to ensure that our frontline professionals feel safe, secure, and valued when they falter. AISD leadership owes it to our families to take risks that support our best talent, which is already under threat from budget cuts and general distrust in the public education system. I hope that you will reinstate the principal to her position at the Ann Richards School and that AISD is able to offer the opportunity for healing to any families.
My name is Lisa Lass. I'm an AISD parent and a member of the Friends of Austin ISD Libraries. I'm speaking to you today about the library clerk position being cut from the 2025-2026 AISD budget and to celebrate National Library Week. Thank you for continuing to fund certified school librarians at every campus. We know that they're tied to higher literacy rates, test scores, and graduation rates. I urge you to restore the high school and middle school and elementary school library clerk positions for the upcoming school year, since they provide essential services for our kids. I urge you to avoid cuts that will directly affect student success. The library clerk at Marcusson Middle School is responsible for helping keep the library open eight hours a day, recommending books, bringing the librarian up to create program, and maintaining the clothing closet, mentoring, advocating for newcomer students and families, and so much more. Thank you for your time.
My name is Jessica Kingman, and I am a parent of a student at Jocelyn Elementary School. I'm calling to voice my opinion that Jocelyn should absolutely not be included in any proposed consolidation of the AISD districts. In my experience, Jocelyn is run with incredible efficiency and thoughtfulness under the leadership of our principal. Our beautiful campus is small, and I know that's why many in our community love it, and we have a long waitlist every year to show for it. Our staff is incredibly involved in the day-to-day running of our school. Demander and Spanish dual-language programs are incredible, and I believe that the growth and performance of our school overall is something that we all are really proud of. I strongly believe that consolidation would detract from what makes our school so great. So thank you for taking this time.
Hello, this is Rebecca Stein. I'm calling to leave a public comment about opposing Jocelyn's inclusion in the school consolidation effort. Jocelyn Elementary School is a very important place to our Jocelyn Elementary School is a very important place to our family. My autistic son transitioned to kindergarten. I was worried that he wouldn't be able to enjoy school, but he loves it because of the culture that the principal has created. The program includes multiple social and emotional learning programs, and a unique culture blending not only Spanish and Mandarin, but also the other languages that the kids speak in their homes. It's a once-in-a-million opportunity for our kids to go to a school like Jocelyn, and it's really important that this not be consolidated with another school. We want to keep Jocelyn the way it is, because it's serving our students.
I am a current teacher at Dobie Middle School, and I believe that our school is just more than a school. It is a community and a home for all of our students, parents, teachers, and staff. We ask that you please take into consideration that, and about displacing all of our students, staff, teachers, everyone in this community. So once again, please save Dobie. Please save Dobie. Dobie is our home.
My name is Rena Dewana. I'm at the Walkout here at Ann Richards in support of our principal. Our school is the best choice. Our school is the best choice. Our school is the best choice. We walk out, we stand proud. We are our principal, we stand proud. We walk out, we stand proud for our principal, we stand proud. We walk out, we stand proud for our principal, we stand proud.
Thank you.
My name is Emma Thornton. I am a student at the Ann Richards School, and I'm going to be saying our Ann Richards School mission statement, because it's something that we really try to follow and believe is very important.
The Ann Richards School for Young Women Leaders dedicates itself to prepare young women to attend and graduate from college. Commit to a healthy and well-balanced lifestyle, lead with courage and compassion, and solve problems creatively and ethically in support of our global community.
Thank you.
My name is Tingi Chen. I'm a parent of AISD students. I'm speaking in strong opposition to include Jocelyn Elementary School in the proposed consolidation plan. Jocelyn is not a under-enroll school, it's a destination campus. A majority of Jocelyn students come from outside the neighborhood. It also maintained greater than sixty percent of neighborhood students. Parents choosing to transfer students to Jocelyn because of the school's strong language program. So families across Austin recognize Jocelyn as leaders in language education and inclusive learning. Eliminating school that draws students in rather than losing them is counter to the goal of long-term district sustainability. Jocelyn is already doing what AISD says it wants, offering programmatic trends that attracts enrollment, so please recognize Jocelyn's success as model. Do not include Jocelyn in the consolidation plan. Thank you.
Nadia Khan. Low scorecard goals are not smart. They enable our cycle of under-supporting schools and create what we call hard-to-staff positions, conditions we create and have full control over. Set goals that require policy changes that disrupt our cycle, disrupt the system that continually tricks us into thinking all schools are the same. They are not the same. Concentrated needs requires concentration of support and resources. This is the district we have. We must support staff until all positions are easy to staff, add the supports we know are needed when children and teachers face more challenges, and create simple days on campuses that are pleasant for everyone. Smaller classes, more counselors, teachers, staff trained in de-escalation, more onsite admin, all provided long before the state threatens the district with a takeover. As a participant in the long-range planning, I'd also like an implementation update on that plan, a plan that focuses on stopping the cycles of harm that our system perpetuates through its policies. Thank you.
Hello, I'm the mother of a student at Ann Richards, and I wanted to call to talk about the principal who recently rescinded her resignation. I want to say that we had a very bad experience under this principal. It is shameful that so many parents at Ann Richards are on a witch hunt to identify the child that was mistreated. Also, for these parents who are advocating that the principal be returned to campus, please know that she has a history of mistreating kids with special needs. We were in a situation where our child was specifically mistreated. We have documentation, records, and we cannot say enough how shameful it would be for the district to fold to parents.
Hello, my name is John Mosty. I'm calling in support of Riley Elementary. I have three children that attend that school, two third graders and one kindergartner. I'm also the cub master for PAC 512, which is based out of Riley Elementary and chartered through our PTA. This was our founding year, and we had thirty-nine students join as Cub Scouts from our school. This is a very special school with a unique blend of culture and community that I feel so lucky to be a part of. Our school location feels very safe, with proximity to the Texas DPS headquarters, and accessible, thanks to cat metro, bus, and rail, great bike path access, and safe sidewalks. As you make your choices and try to do what's best for our community and our city, please remember the unique qualities that make this school so very special. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm calling as a parent of a kindergartner at Jocelyn Elementary School, and I am calling to advocate for Jocelyn to remain an independent campus and not to be subject to reconsolidation with other campuses. It's a wonderful community, a thriving school, with an incredible administration, and a community that has been so valuable for my daughter in her growth and development and learning. And I would just like to advocate, as a parent affiliated with this campus, that it remains within its current structure. Thank you.
I'm here today deeply disappointed in the way the board has mishandled and misjudged Principal N. G. at Ann Richards School. Lack of support has created a pool of people who chose to say, "It doesn't matter if someone has been loyal for decades, for years, for all the time, through just a few years of hugging the wheel." Instead of seeing your hair on your pants, to princessing, and dressed as a roadie, because of the actions of the board, wanting to stop this trap, she is brave. To have her in her relations, she could have stayed on, didn't. She chose to fight, she chose to entertain. So I'm proud of her. She's standing up, being out, fighting what's right, how leadership looks like. The decision to support N. G. has negatively impacted thousands of lives, and we did so in years to come. The complete opposite of what you're supposed to do. This board, the one we elect lead with fairness and courage, got wrong, and deep down, I believe you know it. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Lisa Flodde. I reviewed the video presentation and want to highlight some major flaws in the data shared by the presenter about discipline. First, special education settings are routinely used for undocumented removals. Students receiving special education services are experiencing frequent removals that go untracked. Shadowed discipline is alive and well. The former principal and presenter of that information is the principal of my child and witnessed this firsthand, so the data being presented does not reflect the full picture. I urge the board to receive that data with a grain of salt and clearly define all types of removals should be counted. Second, I urge the board to reconsider the reinstatement of the former principal at Ann Richards. Many parents of students with IEPs are afraid to speak out, but there is deep concern about her support or lack thereof for students with disabilities. Her performance should be thoroughly reviewed with input from a wide range of stakeholders. Some voices are being drowned out. Please listen to those who are rarely heard. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Meg R. Kidman. I am a mom of Austin High Kids at Zilker, from Zilker. I'm addressing the AISD Stronger Together agenda. I would like to start by expressing my heartfelt gratitude for a wonderful initiative of the dual-capacity building framework. It is truly inspiring to see such a thoughtful policy being implemented to hold accountability for healthy systems and involving parents to meet goals. I have noticed the positive impact this framework has had at Austin High. However, it seems like the system fails when challenges arise, when we encounter difficulties, specifically in the athletics program. During these times, the framework can sometimes feel less effective, especially when the campus administrators and campus teachers stop communicating with parents during difficult times. This is opposite of the GK Community Relations Policy that states AISD will hold accountability for a healthy system. I would like to conclude by saying that I encourage ongoing discussions on how we can adapt and strengthen the framework further to include challenging moments to ensure that it remains a supportive tool for all involved. Thank you again for our commitment to such a powerful initiative.
Hello, I'm a family member of an Ann Richards student. I know for a fact that the former principal had a pattern of bullying and mistreating kids who were special needs, and now she's pulling a publicity stunt to try to bully the district into letting her return. You have to stand up to these unethical tactics, and please don't let her come back to continue bullying the children under her care. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
There's a comment about the principal at ARS who staged theater as a power play at the expense of the students by rescinding her resignation. This principal has a history of bad behavior towards kids with special needs, especially brown and black kids with special needs. We expect the district to prioritize those kids instead of caving to the demands of the entitled parents at ARS who are demanding her return. We expect the board to stand strong against these demands and do its right.
My name is William Tierney, and I'm calling about the cutting of the library clerk positions from the AISD budget for 25-26. I'm a parent at Merkison Middle School and Anderson High School, and I'm speaking to you today to urge you to restore the library clerk positions for the upcoming school year, since they provide essential services for our kids. I volunteer at the Merkison Middle School Library, and I see firsthand the huge impact made by our library clerk. In addition to assisting our librarian with daily work tasks, she has made a close connection with many of the students, and often has a big positive impact on our most vulnerable kids. She's a leader of our mentoring programs and makes an impact supporting and advocating for newcomer students and families. I urge you as members of the board to avoid cuts that will directly affect student success, and thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Amanda. I'm a teacher. I am calling in regards to the Ann Richards School principal. I believe there needs to be systems in place to mediate relations between parents and administrators. This current conflict reflects an inability of the district to train, mentor, and keep high-quality leadership in the district. The best thing AISD can do for families is have strong leaders on campuses. If we lose this principal because of an inability to resolve a conflict, then AISD is losing an incredible leader at a nationally-ranked school. There has to be a resolution that does not involve firing a principal. We must have better conflict resolution, or else this will continue to happen more and more, until there is no quality leadership left in AISD. Thank you.
I'm making this statement anonymous. I'm a friend of a parent whose child attends Ann Richards School. I'm really concerned about the principal's, or former principal's, history of mistreating students with special needs, including my friend's child, whose mental health struggles were mishandled by the school. The district investigated these issues, and they asked the principal to rightfully resign. I'm super troubled by some of the parents' efforts to bring the principal back. I feel like they're ignoring the harm that's done to some of these vulnerable students. It feels like a witch hunt, targeting specific kids, and it's wrong. The district has the number-one responsibility of the safety and well-being of all these students, and they really need to stop entertaining the idea of reinstating this principal.
Laura Cheeks from Dobie Middle School, Special Education Department Chair. If it's Dobie today, who will it be tomorrow? Our students are already navigating serious challenges: housing struggles, language barriers, academic pressures. Yet despite these obstacles, Dobie continues to be a pillar of resilience, a place where students, staff, and the community come together to strive for better opportunities. Dobie students deserve more support. Dobie staff deserve respect for their dedication, and the Dobie community deserves to thrive. Let's take action now. Saving Dobie isn't just about one school, it's about protecting our future.
I'm a parent of an Ann Richards student. We are appalled by the parents trying to bring back a principal who has resigned mid-year and then created a stage production designed to upset parents and students. We have sound knowledge that this principal has violated a huge amount to TEA and FERPA codes, and we demand the district not cave to pressure and make an announcement soon that she will not be given the opportunity to return. Thank you.
Hi, I am a parent of a student at AISD. The former principal at ARS has mistreated several students with special needs. The parents of ARS students shouldn't, should be, sorry, parents of students should be teaching their daughters compassion instead of advocating for the return of someone with proven wrongdoing. Just remember, there were people who loved Bill Cosby too, and questioned his victims. Board, do the right thing and announce there's no chance for this principal's return. Thank you.
My name is Angel Perez, and for the past three years, I taught at dual-language math at one of the most underfunded, misunderstood, overlooked campuses in this district, Dobie Middle School. Let's be honest, this process, this leadership, this so-called solution you've given us is disrespectful. The incompetence, the lack of urgency, and detachment you've shown is unacceptable. You seldom come to our campus, you don't know our kids, and you haven't seen the ganas that gets us through every single day. But I have, and Dobie has. I teach students from single-parent homes, from foster cares, from the border, from war-torn countries, kids who have lived more than twelve years than most adults ever will, and they still show up and they still try. Porque aquí tenemos ganas. And what do we get in return? Closure, displacement, and silence. This isn't about data, it's about neglect. You preach equity, but bulldoze the very communities equity should be protecting, and our kids deserve better, and Dobie is better because we show up because no one else does. And I'm not here for your reconsideration, because it's clear where your priorities lie. I'm here to tell you that you gave up, and I want you to know that I know that you are wrong. Thank you.
Hi, my name is CJ Pelz, and I am a student at Bowie High School. I'm speaking today to celebrate National Library Week, and thank you for your continued to fund certified school librarians at every campus. We know that they are tied to higher literacy rates, test scores, and graduation rates. I'd like to share how the librarian and library at my school has impacted me. I am a member of the band Books Club at my school, which is run by our librarian, Miss Walker. She is amazing, and this club has positively impacted me and made my life at school a lot better. I also urge you to restore the high school library clerk position for the upcoming school year, since they provide essential services for our kids. I urge you, as members of the board, to avoid cuts that will directly affect student success, and thank you for your time.
Thank you to all of our callers. Thank you to everyone who's here with us today and who made comment. This now concludes our public comment. Trustees, are there any questions, clarifications? Trustee Foster has comments.
I guess just off the bat, President Ba as well. We, as late, haven't had lots of public comments, and yet what we see time and again is that when our community has concerns, they show up, and they show up with civility and grace. So I'd just like to thank folks who have a variety of concerns that have been lifted up. And in particular, I won't get everybody's names right, because I was trying to listen well, but Frainer, Savian, Allison, Rosie, Iris, Molly, Reyna, Emma, and Sejri. We had almost twenty percent of our public comments coming from students, so thank you for that. I can't speak to how concerns will be resolved, but I saw evidence tonight of the young leadership of our students from two, three, four different schools, and I saw evidence of the excellence of the teachers who are helping develop these young people. So I'd just like to offer a note of thanks.
Thank you for that. Appreciate that, and to our students and their educators as well, and the families who are here supporting them. Trustees, any questions? Trustee Hunter.
Thank you. You stole my thunder, but that's okay. Also, I have a question. Oh, I want to thank the administration. We had asked, we haven't been getting very many calls, but we had asked that there be more than one opportunity in a small window, and thank you for doing that, so that people could record. and thank you for doing that so that people could record and call in on multiple days. I know that somebody has to be there to kind of go through all of that and I appreciate that because we need to hear from our community. And secondly, I do have a question. I don't think I missed it, but has an instrument been determined for proposed consolidations?
Trustee Hunter, we have not developed any tool to evaluate any consolidation or any recommendations. The last conversation we had with the board and the commitment from the administration was to come back, develop a timeline, work with the board to develop guardrails, and then create the space to go through a process and develop a tool. So no, we do not have a tool, we do not have a list. We are just developing a process that will be bringing back to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Quintana.
Thank you. I wanted to see if our general counsel or someone could speak to the process of what happens in our executive sessions. I asked, somebody sent us an email earlier this week and so I reached out and asked our admin and I just, I would love if somebody can speak to that and the process of that.
Yes, the executive session is a conversation. The board meetings are the kind of only opportunity for the full board, the administration, and council to have a conversation about something like this. So that's what that will be. It isn't a hearing, it isn't an open opportunity, it's a private conversation. And due to the confidential and private nature of the subject matter, that's why it's held in closed session. It's posted a little bit more specifically because of the high-profile nature of this particular personnel matter, but that's what it is.
And can you also just briefly tell us that there is a process to where if somebody would like to come and have a conversation with us, that is available?
Correct. Generally speaking, the district has grievance policies. The FNG grievance policy is available for parents and students. The DGBA policy is available for employees and the GH policy is available for community. GF is available for the community and the public at large. So that's if someone wants to present a concern or a complaint to the school district, they would go through those grievance policies. And of course, there is the public comment portion of the meeting available as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know Trustee Singh is with us on Zoom and I think has a question. Dr. Rich, are we set up to do that? Perfect.
Hi, everyone. Apologies, I can't be there in person. I am not feeling great, but I just want to know, I really also appreciated hearing our families, particularly our students, speaking out. So thank you so much. I did want to follow up with some specific questions about Dobie, but Superintendent Segura, I believe that we have that on the agenda and you will be giving some short presentation explanations around some of the questions that have come up.
That's correct. Trustee Singh, as part of the agenda preview, the board has the opportunity to ask questions of the administration. And so we are prepared to provide clarity around different kind of areas of exploration that you've requested.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Questions from other trustees? Perfect. And I just have one quick question for the administration. I don't know if you have contact information for the people who called, but caller number 29, Meg Brown, was someone we weren't able to hear and I don't know if it would be possible to let that caller know that there were issues with the quality of the call and maybe...
I know her, I can reach out.
Okay, if you just want to let her know that we couldn't hear her and if she wants to email us in case she's not watching, that would be helpful to make sure we hear what she wanted us to hear. Thank you again to everyone. It's a lot to come down here and it means a lot that our community cares so much to show up and be present. I see it as a real sign of love for our school district and as one of our strengths. So thank you all for being here, for taking that time and for sharing what you shared tonight. Please know as a reminder that you can share any general comments or questions with the board by email at trustees@austinisd.org. And we meet twice a month. As a general rule, at our voting meetings, you can comment on something on the agenda and at our information sessions like this one, which is usually our first meeting of the month. We welcome comments about anything. So thank you for being here and we're going to move on to with the rest of our meeting. You're welcome to stay if you wish to do so. So thank you all. So next up is the president's report. As part of our agreed order with the Texas Education Agency, the agreement requires that at the first board-authorized meeting each month, the board shall publicly report by reading into the record the percentage of time invested in student outcomes during the prior three-month time period and the total time spent in closed session during the prior month. This January, February, and March three-month average board meeting time spent on Lone Star Governance Defined Student Outcomes and Special Education Monitoring was 62.59%. For the last month, March 2025, we were at 64.58%. The board spent 318 minutes in executive session in March. The board is also continuing our community outreach meetings. We invited members of the public to join us. We invite members of the public to join us at one of our remaining meetings. We'll meet on Thursday, April 17th at 6:00 PM in the Odom Elementary Cafeteria. We'll meet on Tuesday, April 29th at 6:00 PM in the Sadler Means Young Women's Leadership Academy Library. And we're also planning some meetings for May and we'll provide more information once those are finalized. And our next item is part of our commitment to discuss student achievement. We have a presentation on Score Code Goal Two Numeracy Goal Progress Measure 2.1. As part of our commitment to focus on student outcomes, this time does count toward our TEA required minutes and we have estimated 60 minutes for our conversation, although we don't have a time limit. And before we hear our presentation, we need to confirm that our monitoring report is complete. Does anyone have evidence that the elements of an effective monitoring report are not present? Excellent, since everyone agrees the required elements are present, we'll turn the floor over to Superintendent Segura for the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, President Boswell. The team and I will be presenting on Goal Progress Measure 2.1, a second-grade numeracy intervention. I have joining me Jennifer Pace, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary School Leadership, Dr. Mary Ann Maxwell, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Academics, and Ms. Jennifer Jones, Director of Elementary STEM. And so we pull up here a presentation. Here we go. So as for our community, over the last many months, since the beginning of this school year, I would say, sorry, as the beginning of this spring semester, we have modified our approach to the monitoring reports and have moved towards a structure that allows for more of a conversation and really clearly communicating how the work that we're doing aligns with overall initiatives, but ultimately kind of demonstrating that if we do the work, we will see outcomes move over time but in a way that aligns with our values and aligns with the goals set by the board. So Goal Two, the percent of third-grade students earning meets grade level or above on STAR Mathematics Assessment in English or Spanish will increase from 39% in June of 2024 to 55% by June of 2029. The Goal Progress Measure 2.1, the one that was identified by the administration and approved by the board, states the percent of second-grade students scoring in the recommended-for-intervention level on the NWEA MAP Mathematics Achievement Score Proficiency Indicator. And again, this is one of the ones where the lower that you go, the better off we are. Below 30 percentile in English and Spanish will decrease from 37% in June 20th, June to 29% by June 2029. And so as you are always endeavoring to do, we're aligning the goals and the goal progress measures to the overall work. And the initiative that this goal and goal progress measure are aligned with and in support of are the Early Learning Initiative, which is one that we will be providing more details to the trustees in the coming months. And so with that, I'll hand it over to Dr. Maxwell to take us through the remainder of the presentation.
Thank you, Superintendent Segura. Good evening, President Boswell and Board of Trustees. We're here tonight to talk about math after last month's presentation on literacy, talk about where we are as a district, the work that has been done, what our data has historically been showing and then is currently moving towards, and then some of the things that we're seeing on campuses and the plan moving forward. So in, as a background, as Superintendent Segura mentioned, what we're doing here is looking at the percentage of students in the district that are by way of our screener, our math screener, would be considered for receiving interventions in math. And so as mentioned, we want that number to go down so that we have less students that would qualify for interventions in math. We start off with a little bit about our belief, our philosophy in math and beliefs and practices that we have here in Austin ISD. As we see here, we really want math to stand out in our classrooms and with our students and our teachers as engaging, very relevant instruction, that they have opportunities for very rigorous math instruction but have real-world applications. Some of these practices and beliefs that we talk about tonight have some criticality to them that is not as often talked about in math as it is in literacy. The research that we've attached at the end of the report, the initial piece of this, with a link to that research references this, that early math skills are actually really significant predictors of later academic success, sometimes even more so than early literacy skills. And that's not talked about very much in math. But the flexible thinking in math, the problem-solving skills in math, the reasoning skills that you learn in math are applicable in life to our students and across content areas as well. So when we talk about these beliefs and the practices that we embrace, we consider them very, very critical to not only building mathematicians but to build successful learners in Austin ISD. So we're focusing on that, on our youngest learners, which aligns with our initiatives. And also you'll see some elements here that are a little more familiar in literacy than they are in math. So a balanced model of instruction where we have similar components in the fact that we want various components to be taught in math that really lend themselves to flexible thinking and really understanding what math is and having conceptual understanding and then their ability to have productive struggle and really use math strategies across their thinking and use it fluency. We have a model and a math framework that is really aligned to evidence and I'm going to have to remember to scroll while I talk. I'll do a little bit of both, I'm sure I'll get mine. That's based on evidence and we really consider early numeracy and intervention critical pieces of this, building early math thinkers, but also identifying early when students need intervention is really an important piece as well as a system so that we are working very closely with our youngest learners and building their thinking and also building their skills so that they can continue to build on those and we don't cause gaps as they continue in their educational careers. We want to be data-driven, of course. We want to know the students in our classrooms and be relevant and understand their backgrounds so that we are connecting with our students closely. Collaborative professional learning, observation, feedback, and then of course engagement in our family and caregivers. You'll see all of these things are similar to our math initiatives and our math focus, just like they are in literacy. So with our main district initiative that this is aligned to, again, this is our foundation-first, early childhood. So starting as young as we have our students coming into our classrooms and building up their successes and their social and emotional environments that they're in to make them successful in the learning is really a focus of this initiative. This is most closely associated, this Goal Progress Measure is most closely associated with K2 outcomes. So this is looking at second grade only and how our second-grade students are faring compared to other students who are taking this math assessment. And then implementing really robust numeracy practices and MTSS practices that support their learning in the classroom. Some of our key data findings tonight that we see in math, really when we're looking longitudinally at math, we do not see the same trajectory in movement yet. I'll say yet there as we continue to work on this and put more things in place that have a math focus in the coming plans, that there hasn't been the same longitudinal movement when we're looking at spring to spring to spring. So just a reminder, when we're looking at this data, we want to compare like seasons, so spring to spring or fall to fall or winter to winter. And then the, so, and it's a little bit different from math. Actually, we have 37% compared to the 30% that we have in literacy. And so we have a little bit of a larger gap there that we are looking at changing those numbers and it's set up so that we have some smaller changes in the beginning, knowing that we have a literacy focus and our targets get a little more aggressive through the next five years. And then with that said, with the less movement from spring to spring comparisons, we are beginning to see some initial movement from last year to this year as we put things into place. I'll scroll now, thank you. As we're putting things into place for this year. So what we're seeing here is fall to fall and winter to winter, a little more consistent growth. And actually, the appendix, the table in the appendix shows that a little more clearly. This time we included that table to show whether or not some student populations increased or decreased in their number of students who are qualifying for interventions or their percentage of students. And then you can see a little more clearly, with a little more green coloring, the fall to fall, we have some more consistent decreases and then winter to winter, we have some more consistent decreases. We'll talk a little bit more about why that, why we think that is during our root cause analysis and our plan moving forward. But overall, we do see a lot of variation. If you look from year to year, especially in spring, you see a scope and all students in most populations, we go up, we go down, we go back up again. Student populations are exhibiting various different things throughout the year as we look historically and how that's gone. And then I think for really our last one, just to remember that although we're talking specifically about students who are recommended for intervention level, the main focus, the real focus here is, the reason we're looking at that is this is a very good indicator of how Tier One is going, how our core instruction is going. So if we have less students that are qualifying for interventions, that tells us core instruction is getting better and better and better because that means less of them will ever have to even move into interventions and that is the goal, obviously. We want to move that number for all students, just like we do for literacy in math, by moving our most marginalized populations, the most that get us to that decrease from 37% to 29% overall. And I think with that, I'll hand it over to Ms. Jones to talk about our root cause analysis.
Thank you so much. So some of the things you'll hear, there are some similarities, like Dr. Maxwell said, with literacy, but we also wanted to be really specific to math and some of the root cause because there are some really transparent things we need to talk about that our district has done and where focus has been. And then luckily, we'll be able to talk about the plan forward because of that. So I don't think this is any surprise, but we know that post-COVID, our data for our students just across the board is showing that they had, you know, that lack of opportunity and there were definite effects on their learning. We also know that rigorous instruction and just their academic performance started to decline and struggle more. And really, we didn't have great instructional materials. As you know, we had those gap years for a reason in the state and we were trying to kind of just figure out everything that we could do to help support students in the gaps that were coming with their learning. One of the things that was most affected by that was not just all of our students, but particularly our marginalized students had one of the most negative impacts of COVID. And so that is something that we know has happened. One of the things, though, that's different a little bit about math that we want to be specific to, so just to be very transparent and put this out there, in the past five years, we've had five different math curriculum resources. So we have had zero consistency in what we're using with students. Teachers are being asked and trained in new products, sometimes a lack of training in those products. And that's on us, right? So we know that. We also, you know, they're listed in the report, so feel free to look, but there are five different products that we've used over those years. Last year was the first time that we had STEM Scopes Math in the district. However, it did not come with a lot of training and support, unfortunately, due to kind of the timeline of when it was received and then trying to support campuses. So some of the work that we're doing, you'll see later on, has to do with how we're trying to really support our campuses with the use of that product so we can see if it is making a difference for our students. Another thing that everyone kind of knows, but some of the practices that are most critical in math, such as hands-on with math manipulatives, really concrete learning in our youngest... really concrete learning in our youngest grades, those practices started to disappear with COVID due to, you know, social distancing and health concerns, as they should have. But it's been a lot longer of a process to bring them back into our classrooms and to help support our new teacher workforce with how to use those appropriately. So that's something to be considered as well. Also, another thing that is, you know, something that we keep talking about here in our district is that we have a very heavy literacy focus. And when you focus heavily on one thing, that's great. You hope to see results and progress, which we are seeing in literacy. But add account of what, well, what is now lacking is we're not doing the same work in math yet. So we are noticing that growth is more limited in math due to a lack of us being able to have that same focus. Very lastly, one of the things that we know is staffing continues to be a struggle. So we don't have the same teacher workforce. We've lost a lot of great teachers who've retired or who've left the profession. We've brought in folks that sometimes don't have the same background in education training programs. Sometimes we are dealing with teachers that are even not certified and we're trying to help them get certified. So there's just a lot happening in support of our teachers, so we know that that professional learning is gonna be critical to helping them. But we have put a few things in place. So when we do see small incremental growth, there are some things we're doing and we're seeing results from. One of those has to do with the curriculum rewrite that I kind of spoke to. My team has worked so hard, very, very hard, to do a complete rewrite so that we have better guidance on how to use the STEM Scopes curriculum resource that we've adopted. It's also more laid out in a friendly manner for teachers so that as they're planning, they're not trying to guess how to put units together. And there's also supports, scaffolds, differentiation, how to use small group instruction with students, and student independent activities and kind of stations embedded in that. But we also need more training and time with teachers to improve that even more. But that has been a huge focus. And we've had a little bit of time with leaders, but that's gonna get better. But we have spent a lot of time with instructional coaches this year at our campuses that are fortunate to have that. And so with those individuals, we've had a heavy focus on pedagogy. We've also had some teacher leaders that we've been able to work with across the district in upcoming content so that we can help not only look at what they're planning for, but then how to best implement strategies with that for students in the classroom. And with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Pace.
Thank you. Good evening. I just wanted to share a little bit of information about our outlier schools, looking at some of our Band I and II schools who had significantly lower rates of students who scored in the recommended-for-intervention range and just kind of zoom in on what some of the causes are for that. So talking about Blackshear first, 33% of their students scored at the recommended-for-intervention range. And that's compared to 51% for the band. So that was a significant increase for them. And they do have the lowest teacher certification rate of the Band II schools, but they have an instructional coach and a dyslexia interventionist who's supporting their teachers. And because they're so small, they have about two teachers at most grade levels that coach is able to really help move the teachers along. One of the things that the principal spoke highly about in terms of quality of their PLCs is that the second-grade team is just incredibly cohesive. And that came up in several of our outlier schools, that trustee Kaufman spoke last time about the effectiveness and the quality of PLCs. And we see that some of that is because the team just really works well together. Blackshear, in fact, was in the top three of the Band II schools for median growth from fall to winter in the map, second-grade map assessment. And they had the highest median achievement of the Band II schools. Interesting to note, too, is that they attract a huge transfer population. It's a very diverse group of students. More than half of their students are transfers in. So they really work on small group instruction to meet the needs of students because they're so diverse. And small group instruction during math time through a station-rotation model is one of the things that they attribute to their success. Also, just the implementation of the high-quality instructional materials at Tiers I, II, and III, just making a focused effort to use STEM Scopes is something that's been a change for them this year. And then using the recommended materials for Tier II and Tier III, both Timmy and Bridges. They also have implemented an Imagine Math goal-setting routine. And so this is kind of an individualized program that kind of moves with students up or down to meet their needs. But they received recognition for having some of the highest student engagement in that because they are having individual goal-setting conversations with students about that. We do still have gaps to address at Blackshear, as well as some of our other schools. Again, they have a very diverse population and there's opportunities for us to improve there. And I'm gonna address that a little bit later on when we talk about the plan forward. I also want to talk a little bit about Campbell Elementary. 38% of their students scored in that recommended-for-intervention range in comparison to 51% on average for the Band II schools. They do have teacher certification rates that are slightly above average for the Band II. And their vacancy rates are slightly above average for Band II schools. So we know that that helps boost their student achievement. They were in the top three of the Band II schools for the highest median achievement on the MAP, MoI MAPs, MAP Growth Assessment. Additionally, they are also using small group instruction in the math independent practice and guided time to work with students and meet their needs and differentiate. And they have a really big focus on hands-on manipulatives, which you'll hear me talk a little bit more about in the plan forward. Again, we have gaps to address still at Campbell Elementary, as well as most of our campuses, and we'll talk more about that. Moving on to Palm, they were of the highest in our Band II schools. Only 27% of their students scored at the recommended-for-intervention range compared to 51% in the band. And their certification rate is actually lower than the average for the band, but their vacancy rate is kind of right on par for the Band II schools. They do have a dyslexia interventionist and instructional coach and part-time tutors who are supporting their students. They have a wide variety of specialized programming for students. More than a fourth of their students are receiving special education services. Again, this is one of our campuses that talks about the dynamics of their team and the impact that that has on their PLCs in terms of alignment and just higher MAP Growth scores. And they have really worked hard on just implementing MTSS. They really did not have strong MTSS systems before. So just improving the core instruction and using high-quality materials and having a system for Tier II and Tier III interventions contributes to their success. And Rodriguez Elementary, with 38% of their students scoring at the recommended-for-intervention range, is significantly better than the average for the Band I schools. Band I school average was 64%. And looking at their teacher certification, it's slightly above average. Their vacancy rate is slightly below average, but they do have a content interventionist and an instructional coach and a part-time tutor that are supporting both students and staff. They, too, have a wide variety of specialized programming and a significant number of students, more than a fourth of their students, receiving special education services. Still with these supports that are in place, they're in the top two schools in Band I group for median growth and achievement on the middle-of-year math MAP Growth, MAP Growth, MAP Growth test. They also cite just a focus on actually using STEM Scopes consistently and with fidelity. And they're really focused on routines and numerical fluency and spiral review and coaching teachers around those routines. And again, like I've mentioned at the other schools, using small group instruction to differentiate for students during the core instruction, they attribute to their success, as well as having a really cohesive second-grade team that works well together in PLCs. They're collaborative and cohesive, and it results in stronger instruction. And then finally, Overton Elementary, with 40% of their students scoring at the recommended-for-intervention range as compared to 64% for Band I schools, with teacher certifications slightly below the average for the band and vacancy rates are kind of on average. But again, here, they're supporting their staff with an instructional coach, a content interventionist, and part-time tutors. The instructional coach is actually really working with teachers to develop their ability to facilitate PLCs, analyze data, and really work on, look at student work samples and talk about whether students are mastering the SEs and the lesson objectives. And then they also had a lot of work to do around MTSS refinement and just making sure that teachers were consistently using the core resources, STEM Scopes, and in interventions. And so that has been a part of their success as well. And I'm so sorry, my mouth is so dry. But I'm gonna turn it over to you, Dr. Maxwell.
Thanks, Jo. So as far as the progress of our initiatives go, as we've discussed, we know we've seen some movement in literacy, but also there has been work done related to the early childhood initiative that is focused on math, just not with the same level of intensity. So as Ms. Jones mentioned, we've aligned our resources and our guidance as far as really supporting teachers with their implementation of the instructional resources, really focusing on high-quality materials, high-quality practices, and as much as possible, getting in front of our campus leaders and instructional leaders on our campuses to talk about math learning and pedagogy and why the curriculum is built the way that it is. We have also connected our, some observations and walkthroughs of our classrooms and throughout the year at campuses, we've been able to walk into math instruction as well as literacy. And using our MTSS walkthrough documents and using those really as an anchor to establish some baseline understanding of math practices and what we would want to see in the classroom. We've been able to go in and campus leaders have been able to use those tools to give feedback to teachers. And then we continue with those walkthroughs and calibration of what math practices look like in the classroom and really supporting teachers with that implementation. And so we've done that with those ongoing learning sessions with principals, assistant principals, instructional coaches. And we are also still meeting with those PLC campus leads in math and science that have some focus on those practices and using all of the things we've talked about, not just the practices, but what math data looks like, how you can use that really effectively in your classroom, and how you can really give high-quality assessments and performance tasks and know where your students are in math. And then Ms. Jones will talk about some of the key performance indicators we're looking at to track that work.
Thank you. So the very first one that's there, I'm not really gonna spend a lot of time on, but as you know, the scorecard goal is written to monitor our third-grade students and their ability to get meets or exceeds beyond meets on the third-grade star. So we have last year's scores, obviously, we will not have this year's to see if there's also some growth there or not until the summer, when those are released. But one of the things to hit on here that we really want to hone in on and really look at is we're gonna keep monitoring math because that is our universal screener and that is one of the, you know, district-wide assessments that we have to be able to monitor how our second-grade students are doing. Even though some of the numbers, don't worry, I'm a person that, you know, I'm not real happy with a lot of them either, especially for some of our student groups. But there is, if you look at, you know, fall to fall or winter to winter, there is some movement happening, even though we've had a lack of focus on math. So just some of the small things, we know teachers are working really hard, as you heard in our outlier campuses, to have great instruction for students each day and to try to meet their needs. And so we hope with ongoing support in our future plan that Ms. Pace will talk about, that we'll see even greater success for our students. One of the things that's important to us, though, is really that MTSS process, including all three tiers. So we've talked a lot about the core instruction. You've heard from our campuses that in implementing the core curriculum and holding to that, that they're seeing great success and movement with students. It's exciting to hear, but we don't want to forget about that we do have students who are identified for Tier II and Tier III services. And this year, we actually narrowed the focus and gave explicit instructional materials to be used in those tiers. And so the groups that are being pulled either by teachers or interventionists or other support staff have very explicit and direct instructional materials to be used, and those are intentionally designed to fill gaps. They are not designed to be supplemental of the core curriculum, like what I'm learning in my core classroom with the teacher at that moment is what I'm learning in intervention. It is what am I missing from prior years that I need in order to better access what my teacher is teaching me in my grade level. So that has been a shift, but we have seen a lot of campuses hold true to those materials. And in doing so, we've seen excitement from both the people providing the interventions and from students engaged in the intervention when we go on classroom walks, which is really exciting. A lot of times, we don't always think of an intervention class being as engaging or as exciting because we know that students may have a negative self-image or not feel like they know things. It is just really exciting to see so much fun and learning happening, even in our intervention setting at our campuses. So I just really hope that that continues. So that'll be something for us to monitor. Other things, obviously, the observational data, we want to make sure. And I think the greater time we can spend with our administrators and those who evaluate, to look for high-quality math practices and know what that looks like in the classroom, the greater that feedback is going to get for our teachers to help narrow the focus of what can we push forward and what are they already doing well that we can build on. And I think PD, we've kind of talked a lot about, but yeah, we can't wait to grow that into other areas of our organization. And with that, the plan forward.
Great. So we really want to build off of the success that we've had with literacy, do the same thing with math, making it a focus. We've started the work, but we have a lot more to do. We talked about professional learning and expanding on that. So we had taken a really structured and layered approach to professional learning with literacy, through monthly training for principals, our assistant principals, instructional coaches, our content interventionists and teacher leaders. And we want to do that with math moving forward and kick it off with a big focus at Leadership Institute, similarly to what we did with literacy this year. We also want to include our executive directors in the professional learning. We did that with literacy. It was hugely helpful in being able to coach principals and make sure that they knew what to look for going into classrooms and being able to give teachers feedback that actually moved the work. We want to continue with our instructional rounds or learning walks, which was kind of calibrating with our classroom observation tool and practicing with entire leadership teams, assistant principals, principals, coaches, content interventionists, to go into the classroom and look at specific instruction and come out and debrief and use the tool to talk about what we saw and what is gonna be that specific bite-sized actionable feedback that we can provide that teacher that's gonna immediately move the work and increase the frequency of those at our priority campuses. Additionally, I mentioned that one of the things Campbell was doing is really focusing on using hands-on manipulatives. We have a few campuses that are doing that, but we know we have many more campuses that need to do that. And so our academics team with Ms. Jones has started already an audit for us so that we can really look at what materials we have in our classrooms, what's not available that aligns to our curriculum so that we can kind of figure out what it is that we need and do we need to prioritize that as a budget item. And then we laid a lot of foundation this year with MTSS systems, really working on refining our Tier One core instruction and bringing some consistency and actual scripted resources to our Tier II and III interventions. We did that with both literacy and math, but we want to continue to improve that and coach teachers on best practice, stabilizing our resources, which will include some revisions to our math curriculum because our STEM Scopes HQIM Tier One curriculum has been revised recently. And so we'll be adjusting our curriculum to include those revisions. And then additionally, in math, we would like to really support our PLCs through data analysis and continuing to, as a team, both centrally and supporting on campuses, really monitoring our students' academic goals, our intervention instruction, and our progress monitoring to continue to reduce the number of students who are needing intervention. We also want to support teachers in the development of high-quality instructional schedules. We also want to support teachers in the development of high-quality instructional schedules and routines. And so that'll be a big piece of our work is what does the math block look like? Are we clear and explicit about it? And do we know what we're going in and looking for at each moment of the day during the math block and during the literacy block? This year, we worked on including dedicated time for tier two and tier three interventions in our master schedules, and we will continue to do that moving forward. And finally, we know we have work to do around closing achievement gaps and reducing variability in student outcomes. And so we are working on plans for root cause analysis so that we can really understand how our instructional practices are influencing the growth and achievement of our African-American students. So thinking about things like focus groups and looking more deeply at student and teacher level data, classroom observation data as well. And I think that wraps up. Anything I left out there?
I think so.
Okay. And we would like to open it up for questions.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you to all of our presenters. A lot of exciting information here to talk about. So we'll now open the floor up for our monitoring conversation. As a reminder, we have asked questions that are of technical or tactical nature before tonight's meeting. Those questions and their answers are posted with the agenda materials for the public to see. You will find these at austinisd.org/board/meetings. Our questions during the meeting will be of strategic nature, meaning we will ask questions to help us understand how the reality for our students is aligning with our vision. Trustees, questions? Trustee Kaufman.
It's just a clarifying question. The posted agenda, I don't see any attachment with questions. So where there were no questions asked in advance?
Thank you for clarifying, yes.
No.
Is that accurate that there were none?
We didn't receive any questions submitted.
Yeah. Thank you. Any questions about the monitoring report? Trustee Hunter.
I have a clarification question before we move on. So sorry. Just trying to use my teacher voice. I have a question, a clarifying question about STEM scope. You said that this lowercase HQIM, I guess, is going, it has been revised, so that requires the district to revise its curriculum? Are we talking about pacing emphasis or like big sweeping changes that teachers will have to learn a new thing?
That's a great question. I hope my team is listening at home and I do them justice. We, so just a little bit of background information. So the State Board of Education had the instructional materials review process for 2024, and STEM scopes is one of the only major publishers that actually made the list other than Bluebonnet Materials, which is the state-created resource. And then there was another publisher, but not in full scope where they accepted. So they kind of kicked off this EMRA process for many publishers that are now up for 2025. EMRA is Instructional Materials Review Process that the state does. Sorry, just so that we're all on the same page there. So it does give districts additional funding to purchase those products. So that is something that's exciting for our district because that will help our budget constraints, as you know, because last year we did pay for STEM scopes with general fund money. And that's exciting. But at the same time, in order to get the 100% across-the-board score that STEM scopes received, which is really exciting for kindergarten through Algebra I, they did rewrite a lot of the material. And so they moved different units around pacing-wise, but they did it by emphasizing why they did it, which is exciting for teachers and for my curriculum writers, because there are some prerequisite skills that they wanted to make sure students really solidified before getting to some of that deeper learning. And then in our primary grades of K1 and 2, they really made sure that the most essential skills, such as addition and subtraction in our younger grades or fractions, were seen throughout the course of the year, which we had made adjustments to our scope and sequence last year to do that, but now STEM scopes also does it. So our teachers won't be jumping around in the student notebooks, which is exciting also. Another thing that they are offering is we also will get some additional student materials because of that allotment money or entitlement money that we're getting. So students will also be able to have some independent practice that's directly aligned to what they're getting. So activities were rewritten or disappeared that now we'll have to go back and make sure we provide guidance to teachers for what is there. Units shifted around, but we're fortunate that with job-alike and the beginning of the year kickoff that we do with professional learning, we'll actually get time with our teachers who teach math to talk about the importance of those changes. But our curriculum documents won't change as far as the structure or any of that, and that we spent a lot of time getting them familiar with this year.
Perfect. Great, thank you.
I hope that answered that.
It does. My actual question, and then I have a reframing, is what systemic barriers are, I know we said that we're going to begin that, but I just want to know if you've kind of been digging a little bit. Historically underserved students groups, particularly African-Americans, Hispanic students, economically disadvantaged, students receiving special education services from achieving proportional gains in second-grade math. Like what's, do we have a clue about that?
So I think they're very similar across the board, really, with what we see with literacy. There was a hard hit, right, with the pandemic and coming back from math. And this is Austin and this is everywhere. They've seen a lot more difficulties in coming back. Again, part of that is just that heavy, heavy focus that came out on literacy and the same teacher in second grade teaches math that teaches literacy. For many of our, also, when we talk about family and parent engagement, I really want to be transparent with that, too. A lot of time and effort have gone, has gone into some, maybe some things that haven't been as successful, like literacy night, but not as much materials, really quality things that parents can use easily that have to do with math. Lots of reading to your kid, lots of providing books, lots of little activities here and there that you can do with letters and blending and sounds and things. And those materials haven't existed as much in math. And so that's one of the things that we really need to, as we, I don't, I want to be careful to not say shift our focus to math. I want to say add our focus because we cannot afford to slow down at all with literacy for our, for our kids. As we add that math focus, that's one of the things that we really have to get intentional about and explicit about. We have some resources with it. Our materials do provide some things, but really things that our parents can use, you mentioned in the, in the Washit area last time, so just anywhere that's in the car, on, you know, just any moment that you have that are super easy to use for our parents and families and our caregivers. So that definitely is, I think, just in our culture, there's a little less familiarity and comfort level with math. And so that's a little bit of a different level of support. So that's a barrier. And then we are beginning to scope out the work of the data analysis and the root cause and the observations around what is happening very specifically in Austin ISD with our more underserved student populations. And we're starting to scope out that work and see what it will look like beginning soon and going into next year so we get very good understanding of what's happening in our classrooms with our kids and with our teachers. But that, we're at the beginning phases of that to really be more intentional and dig more deeply with that.
Thank you. And then I just want to do a little reframing. When we talk about instructional coaches, campuses are not fortunate to have instructional coaches. That is by design because they are necessary in those campuses. And so I just want to kind of get, like, keep that upfront. I know the administration has decided like where those resources are going to go, right? It wasn't like, well, we weren't lucky enough to get it. No, there were some decisions made behind that, and I thank you guys for making those decisions, the superintendent for guiding that work. I, I really want people to keep that in the front of their minds as we begin the budget process, to know that there's no luck of the draw. There's no special anything. There's what's best for kids and what's needed. So I thank you guys for the presentation and answering the questions.
Thank you.
Trustees, additional questions? And we have trustees on, oh, Superintendent Segred, do you have a comment?
Not necessarily. Maybe it is a comment. One of the things that, that I was talking to the team about was, you know, the board's role is to, to really understand kind of what resources need to be deployed or what things need to change that are the purview of the board. And, you know, we talk about kind of resource allocation. And when Trustee Hunter made that comment, I was compelled to just share that, you know, three years ago, we didn't have instructional coaches, you know, and last year, we didn't have content interventionists. And the one thing that we, was briefly mentioned, but I think it's probably worth expanding upon, is manipulatives. And the fact that, you know, I was talking to Ms. Pace and I didn't, I didn't realize that it'd been a very long time since the district had invested in them. And we hadn't, as a system, developed an inventory. Where, you know, what do we have? Where are they? You know, and, you know, Ms. Jones is putting together and already started the work of working with our principals to identify where the resources reside within Austin ISD. And you might find that some of these resources are in, you know, in closets or perhaps, you know, in the back of a, you know, a gymnasium somewhere or even in a storage, you know, here in central office, but we don't know where they are. And so there's going to be a task associated with identifying where they are, you know, distributing, redistributing them if necessary, and then also identifying where there are gaps and then funding those gaps. And so back kind of full circle budget, you know, it is going to be something that will require an investment. And so I think it's important that we kind of say that. We don't know exactly what that'll be, but at the time that that is identified, we will share with you kind of where it resides within overall budget so that we're always kind of connecting back to kind of what's in the purview of the board. So just wanted to make that, that's a big lift and it kind of got, you know, talked about very quickly, but wanted to acknowledge the work.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. I'm trustee, trustee Gonzalez.
Thank you. My mom is a recovering elementary school teacher. She has closets that are full of manipulatives.
We don't get rid of that.
She's been retired for like 10 years, so you're, I'd love to.
Is she going to bring them back?
Could contribute those.
Let's go.
Happily. So I, thank you. I, trustee Hunter had asked a question about parent and family engagement and parent-facing materials. I would just ask that there's some sort of process to evaluate if those tools that are offered are actually increasing families' confidence or understanding of how to support their students in early numeracy. And then the second question I had is that in the document on page two, as a foundational belief as it relates to math instruction, it says that we emphasize fostering curiosity and a joy in learning math. And so as we talk about providing a curriculum that is very structured for novice teachers, I just want to know how we are measuring students' perceptions of math as continuing to be engaging and empowering, and then how you're using those insights to improve instruction further.
Good question. Thanks, that's a great question. I will say one thing that we, when I say we, sorry, it's my team and I, love about STEM scopes is because there is so much real-world connection that's embedded in every single unit. So like even if I'm a novice teacher, our materials aren't scripted, right? So a teacher still brings this art with them and this understanding of their students and who they are. But there's really exciting and relevant, I would think, for the age group activities that are in there to really show how math is applied in the real world. I will give an example. It's actually my favorite example. If you have a older adult or an older elementary child or middle schooler, you will understand bottle flipping. So there's actually an activity in STEM scopes where we're going to apply and we're going to do frequency of data, and then we're going to actually show how we would represent that data on different types of tables or graphs. And there are stations, and one of the stations that students go to and engage in is bottle flipping because it's so relevant, right? So something so simple gets kids excited. And I will tell you, at a training, adults were just as overly joyous and excited to flip a bottle and see who could do it the most times, have the frequency table, turn that into usable data, and then talk about the findings. I think sometimes we think math has to be up here, right? Because it's math, it's got to be up here. And we forget that we have to make it relevant to students and what they experience. It's really all around us. So STEM scopes is unique in its curriculum because it's designed only by STEM. So it's not a publisher that's trying to produce for every content area. They only produce math and science materials, and they do that for a reason because they have experted curriculum writers in STEM. So it follows the 5E model. It starts off with engagement, really gets kids hooked into what they're going to be learning about, and then really relies on that hands-on and then moving into these other phases of learning to help them solidify it. So I hope the more we can support our teachers with not being afraid of math per se, because so many will tell you they're not math people, and I just have to say, we're all math people, we just may not know it yet, that we really can help them feel comfortable and confident in presenting those lessons to students and really having just as much fun with the students with math, even if they felt that they themselves struggled with it. I don't know if that answered, but I hope that that at least gave some insight on some of the materials.
I think one of the things, trustee Gonzalez, that we are working towards is kind of identifying how to measure certain things. And which you described, I think the root of the question was, how do we know that students are having, you know, enjoying, you know, learning? And I think there's anecdotal evidence, there's observations, but the measurement is something that is part of the work. And so I can't sit here and say this percent of the students we know enjoy, you know, the STEM scopes. But I think for us, we're trying to develop those tools so that over a period of time we can present to the board, this is our understanding of how students enjoy engaging with the curriculum. So just want to be like hyper-clear, like everything that she said is absolutely true, but also the measurement and the way to measure is not like truly defined at this point.
Well, I'll also say, just in general, we know that, I'll give a literacy example that everyone's probably a little more familiar with. We know that kids are enjoying letters when they're reading books and they're enjoying literacy when they're engaged in their joyful readers. I think the same can be said for math. We think of it as just numbers, but kids are enjoying early lessons about flexible thinking in math and numeracy and building curiosity around numbers, and you see that as successful math students later, instead of students who are dragging to math class. And that's what we're trying to build early so that they feel like successful mathematicians. So you see it, that sort of engagement and curiosity continue when they're even older and they're, I was, I was in a trigonometry class the other day and I have no idea what was happening, but the kids did. And they were very engaged because the conversations around what was happening were, were great conversations. And so that, that's when you see that, they were, they were in a trig class and so they were confident about their math skills. And so that, that I think is a good way to measure it, right? Whether or not our students long-term are successful and enrolling in math courses and advanced math courses, and we're really building that trajectory early. Also, Ms. Jones may not talk about herself enough to say that she actually has been going out and doing numeracy lessons at campuses with kids, but also with parents and parent engagement meetings. Some of the principals actually have continued doing those numeracy lessons with parents so that parents begin to kind of think of ways to talk about math and numbers with their kids. And they're really engaged and learning some things about math doesn't always have a right answer, but it's really fun to think about numbers and the way that they work together and the relationships in numbers. And so it's just another, another piece that you can see the level of curiosity as people are really engaged.
Thank you.
You good?
Trustee Deirdre Gostey. Yeah, I had a quick question on the, in your root cause, you go over the frequent change in materials that we've had over the past few years. So I was just curious, with the move to STEM scopes, what's the expectation of the consistency and longevity of these materials and how are we coming to that expectation?
I can talk about longevity of the materials. So it's, it's, you see a pretty strong correlation between, you know, changing materials and using different materials and student outgoing is going up and down and back up again and back down again. Last year was the first year we did STEM scopes. This is your, the first year we really went full force with it and had, you know, curriculum resources to really support teachers in their usage of it, where you start to see some initial trends, right? I always want to say initial because it's just one small data set that we have right now that are showing those trends. And so knowing that STEM scopes is on the SBOE, SBOE list, the State Board of Education approved list, lets us sigh, give a little sigh of relief because we will continue to get funding for this material. That's critical in today's budget conversation, to know that that money will be coming in for this particular instructional material. More, more materials will, of course, be on that list over time. However, we really have a strong belief that the longer we stay, but there's no magic material out there. There are solid materials and there are great teachers that use the materials. So that, it has to be that combination of the materials plus us and teachers working together. But we really feel strongly that the, it is much more beneficial to stay with the same instructional material for as long as possible. Sometimes they have to change significantly because our standards change, and when those things are out of our hands, that's usually why adoptions come up and change over time. But, you know, that, that is definitely what we are going for in future conversations with anybody about instructional materials, really revolve around that, to know that it is going to be something sustainable that we can continue to purchase. And you can talk about expectations, maybe as like usage on campus.
Oh, yeah. I mean, we are going to continue to implement our MTSS systems and observe for that, the use of for that, the use of STEM scopes as our tier-one core resource. It's just an expectation on our classroom observation tool, and it's what we will use to give coaching feedback to teachers.
And one thing I would share with the board is, curriculum's expensive, very expensive. I have sat down with the wonderful team, as well as many others, and have had difficult conversations around, you know, how do we afford all of this when there are so many incentives to go in maybe directions that don't necessarily align with how we want to kind of function as an organization? And so I think, you know, we're fortunate in the fact that, you know, we identified something that worked for us, and we were hopeful, but it was never an expectation or requirement that the State Board of Education would actually adopt it. And so I think it's important to note that we didn't select this because it was on their list, we selected it because it was the right solution for us, and it happened to get on their list later on. It is different, because there are lots of pressures everywhere, but I want to make that kind of clear point, we choose to invest in things that we believe in, and this was something that we believed in well before it was adopted or accepted.
So I'm just going to kind of repeat my understanding of what I'm hearing, just to make sure that I'm clear on it, because I was asking, you know, what the expectation is for being able to stick with this curriculum? And so if I'm hearing correctly, it's that the quality of the curriculum that you chose is one aspect, and then the fact that additionally there's the benefit of the funding, those two aligning together gives the expectation that we'd be able to stick with this curriculum, at least for the foreseeable future. Is that right?
Correct.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick clarifying question about that approval process? I know it goes on a cycle, how long are we safe? How many years? Like how many years will this be on the list before they reconsider the list?
That's a good question. So for the ones that are currently on there, so they're on there, but there is, I have to double-check with our STEM scopes folks, but like they are on there again to just continually get re-approved. It's not that they have to go through the full rewrite process or anything, but they do still include them to make sure they're going to continue to promote them to be on the list. Whereas a new publisher, there's an extensive process they go through to get on this year. So I think right now there's about 48 full-scope math curriculums that are seeking approval for 2025 EMRA, and we'll see, you know, how they score and what the State Board chooses to put on there. And then there's also a timeline of which instructional materials are going to be reviewed, so that you can keep track of what's coming up. What I feel, and I don't know, we've kind of talked about this, is still a little gray, is like how much is funding increasing as more materials are approved, because we are really trying to avoid a battle of choosing between literacy and math and science and, you know, SEL curriculum and all of these things, if funding doesn't also increase as more get on. So I guess more to come on that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, trustee Kaufman.
Thank you. I was very intrigued on the key, when your discussion of the key performance indicators by the fourth bullet, where it says percentage of students who are receiving tier-two and tier-three interventions, and the longitudinal movement of those students across tiers. I'm very curious, and really only answer this if you've done like an analysis of that or you have data, I don't really need anecdotal discussion of this, but have you done, what have you learned from looking at the longitudinal movement of students across tiers?
Well, we just started tracking it, so not, nothing yet.
Okay, I'm very intrigued to know more when you do that.
Fall and spring right now, and so we have no longitudinal data. That's something we'll continue to build and include in KPIs as we report on progress.
And how do you anticipate responding to students who are consistently, year after year, some extra professors are in that group needing interventions, versus kids who are coming in and then coming back out and coming back in? Do you see that data as potentially changing the strategies that you're using?
Absolutely. So we want to use that data to evaluate a few things, the strategies that we're using and the resources that we're using. Also, it lends itself to the question of fidelity of usage as well, so I think that we would also want to lean into, even more so at that point, observations of what's happening in tier-two and tier-three, which is part of our MTSS observational, but really we have, we've seen a lot of it take place in the classroom of quality things, but we've just been focusing so heavily on core, as we should, that, you know, it's still open to see what's happening exactly in tier-two and tier-three. We're building that knowledge about our system now.
Thank you, and most of my other questions were answered in the presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to add, I had that exact same thing, trustee Kaufman popped into my head, is once that information is gathered, then what are the safeguards that are in place to ensure that students aren't just fluctuating between tiers, but are exiting with durable numeracy gains? So I just, yeah, I agree.
I was channeling you.
Excellent, thank you all. I have a couple of questions before we wrap up. I see that our students who are emergent bilingual, and our students from families with economic disadvantage are farther from that target than our other students. It looks like we're really getting to where we hope to be, and we hope we can get even beyond, and are for some of our groups for that 24-25, and I know we need that spring cycle. But what do you think is happening with those two student groups that's kind of keeping the same level of progress from being made? When you see that five-point gap from where we want to be for our students from families with economic disadvantage, that three-point gap from our emergent bilingual students?
So are you referring to the winter?
I'm referring to the data analysis chart, yes. And we see, for example, you know, for some of our student groups, for African-American students, we want to be at 61, we're at 60. You know, for some of our student groups, we're kind of where we want to be, but for our students with economic disadvantage, we still have five points to make up by the spring. And I understand the, you know, it's, we're looking spring to spring, but what do we think is happening, where that gap is just bigger for those groups?
Yeah, so this is a little bit of that difficulty with the just, the winter data, because it, within the year, different students will make variable improvements. And so what we see a lot is, at the beginning of the year, they're a certain place, and by middle of year, it looks like we have more, literally, looking at the data, we would have more students that qualify for interventions. But a few of the reasons are that when you do that middle-of-year testing, it's, you know, students are going to be improving at different rates. Also, as a district, we do fairly early-middle-of-year testing, so we do beginning-of-year testing in the fall, in September, really mostly early September, and we do middle-of-year testing in December. And so it happens really quickly. In the meantime, the beginning-of-year RIT score goes up significantly for the middle-of-year RIT score. So we don't quite give half a year, and then we assess those students before they've, a lot of them have had the opportunity to really reach that middle-of-year RIT target. And so what we kind of see, if you look, you can see in fall, a lot of those student populations are at that target, or even are below it, and then it pops up in winter. And then what we tend to see, although we haven't looked at this data very long, so I'm just, these are just very recent projections of what I've seen, we tend to see it go back down in spring, once students have had a full year of instruction and, if needed, interventions. We'll tend to see that go back down. So it's a little bit tough to use it just at the middle of year. And for the reason too, also, just to say, we do some of that testing early, because some of our younger learners, especially like kindergarten and coming up in first grade, they have dyslexia screening coming back from the break in January, so we try the best we can, we work with campus administrators to spread that out as much as possible, so they're not hit very heavily, the students aren't hit very heavily at different grade levels with multiple assessments. We can't completely prevent that, but we do the best we can, which is why it's early, and I think we kind of, we kind of tend to see that jump. Some of those reasons, though, overall, those numbers are too high, whether it's middle or beginning of year, or any of those things for our marginalized students. So some of those are the barriers that we talked about earlier. And then again, needing, our job of needing to really dig down into Austin ISD and see what's happening with our students and on our campuses to really intentionally identify the barriers and the root causes that are taking place.
Thank you for that. And I really appreciate the richness of your data about the outliers, really looking at so many different factors, and seeing interesting, you know, kind of patterns or lack of patterns, depending on what we're seeing. And so I'd love to understand how that informs next steps, and what you might be coming to us with, as far as resource requests, or what that looks like.
Yeah, I think one of the things that really stood out to me, well, two things, but the first, largest, because it was different than what we heard with literacy, is the small-group instruction in math. And maybe it's because we kind of tend to do that in literacy, and it's not quite so novel, but I think in math, we don't do that as much. And so just these campuses having the foresight to work that way to better meet the needs of their students is something that we can learn from and gain from, and really support our teachers in what that independent and guided practice time should look like and can look like. And then I just think to continue to be really intentional about staffing and how we staff support for our, you know, band one and two campuses.
One of the things, too, that we don't have here, because we were just in the beginning stages of scoping out that work as well, is really using lighthouse schools and outlier campuses as learning labs. And so we started to set that up this year, where we have those campuses as learning labs, principals are invited regularly, we have another one tomorrow at Blackshear, where other principals are coming and seeing what's happening, and they're having very rich discussions, because their peer learning and seeing each other's systems happening is sometimes 10 times more powerful than, you know, a PD session that we give. And so that is another piece that we're building out for next year, is to really develop that, those peer opportunities and the learning and the coaching that is involved in those example and lighthouse and learning lab models, to really just take advantage of our outlier campuses and the structures that are working well.
Thank you for that. And trustee Singh is with us, and trustee Singh, I think you have a question as well.
Yeah, you actually covered my question, so I think we're on the same wavelength, so I appreciate it. No question.
Okay. Good, trustees, any additional questions? All right, I think the last question I have is just, what do you need from us? As we look at this, it's, yeah.
Well, I think for us, it's providing awareness that in the upcoming budget, you know, there will be some line items that we'll call out. I think, you know, as a system, you know, we have the ability to cover most things, but things that pop up, for instance, manipulative effort, you know, something to keep an eye on, and also the scope associated with, you know, identifying a partner, or ourselves doing internally, to actually do a deep dive, school by school, classroom by classroom, to understand, you know, what are our, you know, black students experiencing in our schools? And so those are two things that are outside kind of the day-to-day, so making our board aware and just, you know, acknowledging that there may be an investment in those areas that are reflected in our budget. So I would say that's the two main pieces.
Great, thank you for that. I just want to, as someone who was here before you were superintendent, we did invest in a lot of manipulatives when Dr. Ellis Zolday was here, so I hope you find some of them. She brought them to a board meeting, she brought little bags of blocks and things that we played with, so we did make an investment in the interest of taking good care of the limited taxpayer funds that we have. I hope they're out there, and I hope some of them are what you need.
They're not completely bare, we've seen quite a bit of really wonderful usage of manipulatives, so they are out there. Our curriculum and our curriculum guidance now is very explicit, and you're about to teach this lesson, these are the manipulatives that will really help kids understand the concrete, connect the concrete with their learning. And so there's more of a need. And then, too, there was, I know many districts experienced a lot of manipulatives going home in COVID, and maybe not coming back. So there's that as well, it probably affects the inventory.
Thank you. Oh, trustee Quintana has another question, yes.
I know that y'all mentioned, we've had five different curriculums in five different years, and so I was wondering if we have any idea how long we're going to have this one, and if it doesn't work, what is the next step?
Sorry, is it a? I get really passionate when you say curriculum. So like we were talking about, with that process, we're fortunate enough to have a product we fully believe in, actually make it on the state list, because sometimes those two ideals don't align, and for us, we got lucky, and they do. But we also know that we owe it to our students and our families to be able to always ensure that we're providing the best product that we can, that we feel like meets the needs of our students. So we really want to keep track of our data to see, now that we're going to have had it consecutive years, are we seeing growth from our students with the different strategies that we're putting into place to support our teachers with it? And then also, as more and more materials get on the list, we feel like we owe it to be fiscally responsible, to always look at those materials and see, are we making the best decision? Also, are we able to support the product that we have? Just kind of thinking from both aspects, because we want to meet the needs of our students, but we also don't want to repeat what we've had to do, where we're, you know, investing exorbitant amounts of money into it, if there's money there to help fund what we're trying to fund.
And also just, if there's ever a decision to change an instructional material, there's an extensive process on that that involves community and teachers coming in for, to provide input and all kinds of things, or groups that we conduct, and then open meetings where people can come view materials and things like that. So that definitely, we definitely have a process for that, and any change in materials from here as well will include multiple outreaches to community to view materials and have an opportunity for input. Sure.
Thank you, trustees, any additional questions? Trustee Singh? All right, thank you, everyone, for the productive conversation, and now, trustees, we vote on whether or not we will accept this monitoring report. As a point of clarity, we're voting to accept this report as a formal acknowledgement that we have had a satisfactory conversation with the superintendent, and have a deeper understanding about how the current reality for students lines up with our vision for them. So at this point, I will entertain a motion for the acceptance of this monitoring report.
I move to accept the monitoring report.
Trustee Quintana, okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, so having, is there any discussion on this item? Okay, having a motion by trustee Quintana and a second by trustee Hunter. To accept the monitoring report, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, and the motion passes by all those on the dials. Thank you, trustees, for taking part in the shared commitment to students and student outcomes, and thank you to the superintendent and all of our presenters. So the next item on our agenda is scorecard constraint progress measure 5.2 and constraint progress measure 5.3. The presentation has been recorded, it's available to view through the link in the agenda item, and as a constraint, this item does not count towards student focus time, although it is part of our scorecard, and we have scheduled 30 minutes for this discussion, and if we had questions that were asked before, they would be with this agenda item, but as trustee Kaufman pointed out, we do not have any for this one either. So before our discussion, we need to confirm that our monitoring report is complete. Does anyone have evidence that the elements of an effective monitoring report are missing? Okay, so since everyone agrees, the required elements are present, we will turn the floor over again to superintendent.
Thank you, President Boswell. Thank you for allowing me and the team here to answer any questions. I have joining me Dr. Gloria Williams, Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services, and Ms. Brandy Grattan, Assistant Director of Discipline Standards and Accountability, and they're here to answer any questions regarding constraint progress measure of 5.2 restorative practices, and constraint progress measure 5.3, which is also restorative practices. For our community and families following along, the board monitoring, the monitoring report includes constraints, and these are those things that the board identified, that the administration needs to consider and respond to as we move through and move student outcomes. And so the constraint selected, constraint 5, states that the superintendent shall not allow students to lack access to a fully-integrated, evidence-based system for social and emotional learning and campus mental health supports. The constraint progress measures that were approved in part of the scorecard include 5.2, the disparity rate for exclusionary discipline, ISS, OSS, or other removal, for African-American students will decrease from 11.35 in August of 2024 to 7.0 in August of 2029. Constraint progress measure 5.3 states that the disparity rate for exclusionary discipline, again, including ISS, OSS, other removal, for students receiving special education services will decrease from 16.03 in August 2024 to 11.0 in 2029. will decrease from 16.03 in August 2024 to 11.0 in August of 2029. And so with that, the team and I are available to answer any questions.
Trustee Kaufman.
Thank you for the video presentation and for being here tonight.
Thank you.
So this is, these are actually some clarification questions that might have better belonged in the, the written comments. But I am trying to understand on, on page three where it talks about the constraint progress measure 5.2, it says that the district-wide data shows that we are within the CPM target of 11%. What does that mean? What is that CPM target of 11%? And where is that coming from?
Yes, sir. And good to see you trustees. Thank you so much for having us this evening. And thank you regarding that sentence on page three in our board monitoring report regarding the district-wide data that states that we're within that target of 11%. At the end of this school year for 5.2, the goal is for us to be at 11% disproportionality for our African-American students in the area of discipline. So when I wrote, or when we wrote within the target, we're at 10.33% right now. So we are, we're not, meeting is not the appropriate term to use here because we're not at 11%. We're doing just a bit better than that 11%. So that's what we mean by within the target.
Okay, so the, the current year target that's going to get us to the 7%?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And then when I'm looking at the data on page four, please tell me if I'm reading this correctly. So when you're looking at how those disparity rates are determined, it's really comparing, and you explained it very concisely in the video, so I appreciate that very clear definition of disparity. But it's really comparing the, the discipline action rate across African-American students or students in special education to the overall rate in proportion to the percentage of the population that is represented by each group. You said it much more concisely. But I guess my question, I'm looking at that and I'm thinking, well, how can we turn that into actual numbers of students?
Okay.
Which I think you very powerfully did when you talked about the, you know, 92% of students have zero discretionary removals, et cetera. So we're really, a huge majority of the students aren't receiving disciplinary referrals. Okay, however, I'm looking at that chart on page four and I'm looking at the number of discipline actions for African-American students. And it goes from in 2023, 24, from 603 to 2024, 25, and it's 605. So it's like actually gone up to. So the disparity rate has gone down, which is great, but the actual number of, of actions is basically the same. And when we look at the next chart, we're on special education, it's a similar analysis. It's 1,264 discipline actions for students in special education. And now the disparity rate's gone down, but the actual number of actions has gone up by almost 200. So I'm just really trying to, I understand the math behind that, but I'm trying to understand what's happening. So can you, do you have an understanding of what's happening where we're seeing an increase in disciplinary actions for all other students while the rate is going down?
Mm-hmm. Yes, trustee, that's a great question regarding the total discipline actions. And so in that, on page four, you see the 5.2 mid-year data. Let's take a look at that, at that chart we have here and slide all the way down to the right where you see the 24, 25 data. And trustee, Dr. Kaufman shared with us about the total number of discipline actions. Take a look at that 3,709. And then of those 3,709, 605, that, that portion right next to there, 605 were attributed or were slated for or done to, given to African-American students. So yes, the raw number of African-American discipline actions did increase, but the total number of discipline actions we're working and dealing with across the district from all races and all ethnicities of students has increased. For example, you all, and you, you may have been able to, to take a deep look at this in our appendix data, we show those top five behaviors that are impacting us the most saliently. And those, some of those numbers are going up. And what's interesting is that some of those numbers are going up across all racial groups that are not necessarily within the scorecard of focus. Second, I want to share this and I hope, I hope that, that's helpful in terms of clarifying the, the answer to that question as far as the disproportionality is going down, but the raw number of actions is going up because the total number of actions is increasing across all student ethnicity groups.
Right, so what, what are the things? More what's happening.
Yeah, so Ms. Gratton and I had a conversation as we were kind of deeping, diving deep into the, into the analysis. And one of the things we talked about is let's understand, and these are discretionary placements, just to be very, very clear, there are lots of things that occur within our organization that, that students experience or the actions that are taken that are mandatory. And so I just want to make sure that this is a discretionary placements. When we look across all student groups, the one that is like clearly the outlier is fighting. Fighting has increased across all student groups. And so when you break down the data and you look at African-American, you look at students receiving special education services, you see in some cases a 30, 40% increase. And so almost every other one of the discretionary removals that are kind of the, the top six are, don't really move that much. Fighting is the one that was clearly kind of moving the denominator in the wrong direction. So then we began to ask questions. Okay, so what is contributing to this? Where is it occurring? You know, there, there are a lot of things that, that we have heard. There are things that we're moving towards to hopefully combat some of this, you know, most notably, you know, cell phones in, in schools. There, there's just a lot that's happening in our schools right now that appear to be contributing to these conflicts between students. And so we don't have maybe a, a better answer than that, but when you look at the data and you look across all bands, the reason that's happening is primarily due to fighting that's occurring in our schools. And then when you speak to principals and staff, the one thing that keeps coming up over and over again is the constant kind of use of cell phones and kind of how that contributes to fighting, whether it's, you know, messaging or bullying, there's, there's something that's occurring there. You don't see it in the schools as, that have established cellphone policies. So that's something that we're exploring, something that, that I think is worth kind of getting deeper into, but to me, it's, it's a data point worth talking about.
Right.
What about, helpful trustee Kaufman?
Yeah.
And trustee, if I, trustees and superintendent, if I can piggyback on that word discretionary. So these are offenses where there can be multiple responses, where chapter 37 that dictates our, our responses to discipline such as bringing a firearm to school, so on and so forth, there are explicit instruction, explicit responses that we must give to some of those mandatory offenses when it comes to discretionary, whether it's fighting, cutting class, physical aggression toward a student or towards an adult, they could have multiple responses, perhaps restorative circle, perhaps ISS or OSS or lunch detention or a conference with parents, so on and so forth. So just wanted to, thank you superintendent for putting that word discretionary in there. Just wanted to make sure that, that I defined that as well. And just also, I want to share this, this is a good report. We started with a thank you at the beginning for the work that you do. This is a thank you and a, and a, and a shout out, if you will, to our principals, assistant principals and teachers for the hard work that they're doing to, to build relationships and to sustain them. And where they're a little bit more difficult or where it takes a little bit more time, I, I appreciate what I heard from counseling the, the other day. They said, Ms. Gratton, we just keep chasing the why.
Trustee, do you have more?
Yeah. So thank you for the celebration of it. And, and I appreciate your constant recognition that there's celebrations and then work to be done that you shared in the video. So I, I want to address like a question that came up in the comments today from community, and that is around shadow discipline or around other ways. So when you're thinking about how do you improve these numbers, you know, one way is to create a culture where the misbehaviors don't happen, right? That's the idea. Another way is to find a different way to respond when the behavior happens other than removing the student from the situation. Another way is to just not respond to the behavior, right? So you could just say, oh shoot, this student is African-American, we're not going to remove them. And then you're removing all the white kids. There's a way to just not actually address the problem, but just prevent the data from going up. And then there's another way, which is to go ahead and remove the student, but don't report it. And as a principal, I saw that happening in colleagues and I heard about situations where that happens. And I was, so I really just want to ask this question, which I've asked at a previous meeting, but how do, what are the safeguards to ensure that the, the right way is happening here? That the data is not improving in one of the wrong ways? And that we're not having shadow discipline either through the, the, using special education placements as a way to remove a student as the caller mentioned? Or by simply calling a parent and asking them to come get the kid? Kind of telling them to come get the kid, but then not reporting that as a suspension? Simply just not reporting it? What are the safeguards that we have in place to prevent the misuse of the process?
Absolutely. And thank you trustee for that question. One of the ways in which we're responding to what many call it the shadow discipline is by number one, making sure that our teachers and staff are getting supported. And what do I mean by that? When it comes to perhaps that shadow discipline, perhaps a student having to sit outside of the classroom for an extended amount of time or not being able to participate in recess or whatever the case may be, or having a homeschool suspension, but it's not reported in, in the paperwork. One of the ways in which we're supporting is through our MTSS team by providing the teachers with the support, perhaps it's with classroom management in terms of having the, the tools and the, the ability to utilize those tools to respond to student behaviors that could be perceived as misbehavior, that could be misconstrued as disrespect or insubordination or whatever the case may be. So that work with MTSS has been robust. How do I know? I talked with our MTSS director and I said, hey, listen, share with me how many schools have raised their hand, perhaps through an assistant principal, a principal, executive director, or even a teacher that said, I need a little bit of help when it comes to classroom management, when it comes to interpreting behaviors, or when it comes to how I respond and even my own threshold of how I respond to behaviors. And so she shared with me the number, and, and I don't recall it off the top of my head, but nonetheless, across elementary through high school, there have been a significant amount of campuses, executive directors, teachers, assistant principals and principals that have reached out for that MTSS support, especially on the classroom management side so that there is a healthier response to those behaviors that doesn't have to feel like it has to be in the shadows or swept under the rug. The other way in which support is happening, and I've talked with a few campuses about this, is well, what happens when perhaps the classroom management, you know, is, is strong or it's stable, but it's a relational disconnect? Who helps with that? And so some of our campuses, even in this upcoming April PD, will be uplifting and utilizing their, actually campus-based counselors to give support for, how do you respond to certain things that could possibly be triggers for students? How do you ensure, make sure that you're connecting with students beyond just the academics to, to make sure that our students know and they feel every single day that they belong? Some of the other supports have happened through restorative practices where there have been campuses and even some of our parent support specialists that have raised their hand and said, hey, can you come give us some support as it relates to restorative practices? Because we want to strengthen and deepen the relationships that exist in our classrooms and that exist on our campuses. So those are some of the ways in which we're working to safeguard that shadow discipline. The other way is with our discipline team. And what we're doing is working with our reconciliation reports with attendance and then also with discipline. So for example, where we see that there had been an ISS or an OSS, ISS standing for in-school suspension, OSS for out-of-school suspension, where we see that may have been assigned on the attendance report, but there's not a corresponding referral documentation, we're working to help support administrators, particularly assistant principals, in reconciling though.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate that there's an attention to that possibility of, that need for support. I appreciate that there's recognition, recognition of that need for support and a recognition of the need for monitoring to ensure that, that we're ethically and honestly reporting the data. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustees, other questions? Trustee Di Uriostie?
I don't, clarifying question in the supporting data and the appendix. Physical aggression student, can you, can you explain that?
Yes, absolutely. And there is a difference between the physical aggression and the fighting. So for the fighting, that's two or more willing participants that, that engage in, in physical, in physical combat. Sometimes the way that you see it is that students take, take backpacks off, so we're, we're ready. So it may happen through words. You laugh at trustee Kaufman. You've seen it before. It may happen through words or it may happen through body language, but two are willingly participating in that. The second, as far as physical aggression, that's when one student is involved and there's a clear victim that's either trying to stop it or trying to get away from that particular aggression that they're facing at that particular moment.
So I, I just wanted to point out from my understanding, those are the two on this chart that are around any type of explicit aggression. And what I'm seeing here between special education, it's, it's about even when you put those two together. And with African-Americans, it's actually a decrease in overall aggressive behavior. But what I'm seeing in that pattern is just out of the aggressive behaviors, there tend to be more fights. Is, is there any speculation on why that type of shift? Because particularly, I think, you know, overall, this is a decrease for African-Americans. It's extending, staying even for sped. It's, it's just more the shift. So I'm, I'm kind of curious. Are there any, you know, thoughts or speculations on what are they seeing on the campuses?
Trustee, if I understand your question, you're asking why the, the more significant decrease in African-American, but the decrease is not as significant in?
No, what I'm saying is that overall, but when you, when you put fights and physical aggression together, because those are both aggressive behaviors, the other behaviors that are in there that are resulting in discipline are not explicitly aggressive. I mean, maybe you could say disruption, but I don't see a significant variance in disruption but from physical behaviors that are aggressive. It seems like it's moving more towards fights.
As opposed to just leaving it with a one-sided?
The proportion between physical aggression and fights is shifting towards fights.
Yeah. And if you're asking me, what, what, what are we hearing or what are we learning from our administrators and otherwise to better understand why more fights are happening as opposed to physical aggression? I want to make sure I'm understanding the question.
Yeah, because it's, it's not an overall, well, for African-Americans, what I'm seeing is an overall decline in aggressive behavior overall. Sometimes it involves another student, it's a fight. Sometimes it's just the one student being aggressive and, and it's a victim. But overall, those two combined is shrinking for African-Americans. It's holding steady for sped students. What's interesting to me is that it's shifting towards fights, which you're saying is two mutual participants.
Right, yeah. As far, and again, if I, if I understand it correctly, and I want to say this really quickly, when it comes to physical aggression for all of our racial groups and for our students that get general education services and special education services, everybody's experiencing a decrease. When it comes to the difference between last year and this year with fighting, all of our groups, excuse me, all of our ethnic groups have experienced an increase with the exception of our Asian students. Now that said, why more fights and less physical aggression? I think superintendent mentioned one of the, the, the significant contributors, contributors to that, that cellphone, the cellphone use that certainly can be utilized as a tool for, for bullying or as a tool for, you know, look what happened to you last time and I don't know if this is going to happen again. And so that, sometimes that, that negative peer pressure to, to engage as opposed to having something that's one-sided and then appearing a particular way is strong, especially when you're 14 years old. And we've, we've all faced it as well. And so again, if I'm understanding your question correctly, why fights are heavier in terms of more infractions as opposed to physical aggression improving? That's one area that I would, that, that I would say has, has been something that is, is a unique territory. And I'm going to speak from my practitioner experience as well. It's a unique territory that for many of us that were teachers prior to COVID, so on and so forth, and administrators, the, the advent of, of having more access to technology so quickly has become, like one parent told me, this is, this is, this is, this is a new frontier for you all. And it's a new frontier for me as a parent.
Good evening, everybody. I also, hi, everybody. Hi, how you doing? I wanted to also mention that, you know, there's some subjectivity to it as you're filling out a, a referral. And so if Dr. Williams started yelling at me, I hope you don't. But if that were to happen, the, the subjectivity of the person filling out the referral and the person processing the referral comes into play. So I might say it was physical aggression and you might say that was a fight. And so I think that there's some subjectivity to, to it that we can do a better job with our administrators to calibrate on, let's really make some clear cuts around what's physical aggression versus an actual altercation or a fight. So if that's helpful.
Trustee, did that answer the question that you were asking? Did it get to it?
I think so. It's, I mean, I, I get that it's a tough distinction to make. I guess what I'm, part of, part of what I'm curious in there is it seems like a trend towards.
I'm, part of what I'm curious in there is, it seems like a trend towards, kind of, I don't want to use the wrong term, but like mutual conflict, as opposed to one-sided conflict. Is that fair to say? Is that what the data is showing?
Yeah, the data is showing us, we're at, in comparison to last year, to where we are this year, we have had 101 more total fight infractions over the entire district. In comparison to our physical aggression, again, we're all groups experiencing a decrease.
Okay. And then, I'm trying to find which page it was, but I saw one of, one of the elements here was about staff training around special education, specifically talking about discipline for the special education populations. And then you had in one of the outliers, talking about identifying specific disciplinary patterns among SCORES students, and then addressing that on the campus. So given those two things, one administrators potentially saying that they could use more explicit training on how IEPs work, or elements of IEPs, and then an example there for a SCORES program specifically, you know, can you give more detail about what efforts or what trainings we're looking at providing for those staff specifically around students with IEPs?
Yeah, absolutely. And I'm glad you mentioned that, in our outliers, especially for our campuses that have experienced a significant, remarkable decrease in disproportionality for special education students. They consistently spoke about the collaboration between campus administration, which, and some researchers speak about assistant principals as the gatekeepers, if you will, of ISS or OSS and otherwise. But that collaboration between assistant principals notably, and the case managers, to, the case managers advocating in ways such as, hey, you know what, let me try this particular strategy first. And that was an actual statement that some administration shared with me, that the case managers will state. Not to mention, also, one of our high school campuses mentioned our case managers just having a much more uplifted role in terms of educating and giving training to their own colleagues regarding reading and interpreting IEPs, and what, how they're actualized in an actual classroom. So one particular middle school spoke to the ways in which they utilize their, excuse me, their professional development time, where their case managers were the ones that were in front of their colleagues facilitating professional development, so that they could better understand some things that were triggers for students inside of the classroom, and what they could, what teachers, general education teachers could do in order to mitigate that. Now, as far as, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry, doctor. As far as what we do with those particular outliers, to take it, to influence other campuses to do some of the same things, some of the ways in which we're working together with school leadership and special education and our discipline department, is to, especially during those assistant principal learning series, is to uplift some of those best practices, and allow our assistant principals to converse and talk with each other about what's working for them. And also, you'll see in some of our next steps, or in some of our plan forward, we're working toward next school year, creating a newsletter that's coming from our discipline team, that highlights some of those best practices, so others can be able to feast, if you will, for lack of a better word, and perhaps I'm hungry, and I'm utilizing that language. But to see some of those best practices, so that they can see some people that are looking just like them doing it, increase their confidence to implement that as well.
So I would just like to point out with that, that in the data that I'm seeing here, it's saying, for the sped students, 95% of the students have zero discretionary, 4% have one or two, and only the 1% have three or more. And I noticed in some of your steps forwards, it was looking at students with three or more, but that's a significantly small portion of the students that are facing discipline. And the other element I would bring up is also, sped is often kind of treated as a monolith. There's a lot of different programs, a lot of different disabilities. And so I'm curious, or, you know, what steps can be taken to look at the differentiation among the sped students? You know, again, the example you gave was small, is very specific to the SCORES students. You know, that's, SCORES programming is on every campus. And so, you know, students that are receiving disciplinary actions on a campus that doesn't have SCORES is going to need something tailored to that campus. And so, you know, what is, what is it that we can do to look at that level of tailoring? You know, I see the part of, you know, some of the admin report about more training, but it seems like it's going to need to be nuanced to differentiate between those different populations within sped.
Right, absolutely. And so one of our other outliers, and even some of the campus administrators that I've spoken to, that are doing well in their data, that didn't necessarily make the outliers report, speaks specifically, again, about the uplifted role of case managers to share, facilitate, and be some of the most significant voices to their colleagues about how to read and interpret those individualized education plans, that yes, are nuanced, and yes, speak to different needs that students have, and not just to students that receive SCORES, or SBS services, or otherwise, but the students that sit inside of those classrooms. One campus even talked about the case managers helping provide just some basic things like response scripts, just some pocket things, if you will, to be able to say, or to remind students about behaviors, so on and so forth, that are in alignment with that IEP. And again, those are coming from our case managers.
Okay, I appreciate that consideration, because I do think the case managers tend to be, you know, the ones working with the students directly. And so I know, a lot of times when I was a case manager, I mean, that is a significant, you know, advantage to the student, when they're able to talk with the principals and explain kind of the situation that's going on. And I would definitely encourage looking at those students that have BIPs too, as far as, you know, when you're looking for your outliers, of which students are getting disciplinary actions against them. So, thank you. I appreciate the detail.
Thank you, trustee.
Trustees Singh, you're with us. Do you have a question?
Hi, and just a quick question, which is also related to things that trustee Kaufman and trustee Di Uriostie already brought up. But, you know, we've been hearing about concerns around special education and the shadow discipline. And thank you, Mr. Rann, for like, really describing the things that y'all are putting into place to kind of change, you know, that practice. I was curious, Superintendent Segura, is this part of, like, is there an explicit message that is given to principals and teachers, that like, shadow discipline is not tolerated? It's not something that we want to see on the campus? And if it is, because it doesn't fit neatly into the categories of like ISS or OSS, it's kind of like, hey, like, I understand, you know, I don't, I'm not sure that I know enough about, you know, what some of the concerns might be that are raised by the community, but it seems like there might be some more conversation around this. So I don't know if this is something that has come up with like, our special education advisory committee that we have as part of the TEA agreed order, and if that's something that can maybe be discussed in the future as well, specifically when we're talking about our special education monitoring, because I am curious to learn a little bit more about this, to just know, like, what we are doing explicitly around this topic, and how we're making sure that it actually, you know, is happening.
Trustee Singh, Brandy just approached the dais, or I guess the table. If you're asking me specifically if I have stated, kind of broadly, no, not in that way. Now, I have stated, you know, expectations around supporting our students, expectations around following policy, guidelines, or values. Now, is there an opportunity to do that? Absolutely. You know, I see interim assistant superintendent, special education, Dr. Cherry Lee in the back, who supports the CFAC. We have the special education strategic plan. So I think there's an opportunity to explore it, but I can't say that I've said that, those precise words in that way that you described. Brandy, do you want to offer anything regarding special development?
Yeah, absolutely. Good evening, trustee Singh. What I would like to do with our principals is to take them through kind of an inquiry moment, like, why do we think these numbers are moving this way? What I don't want to do is say, these are great, we don't trust them. I want to take them through opportunities to say, let's talk about what's working really well, why do we think these numbers are moving, so that that can surface on its own, that what we don't want to do is make the numbers look good, and we're actually doing shadow discipline. And so I think really, an opportunity for professional learning, but in an inquiry way, around why are we moving these numbers? What's working for campuses? Where are those outliers? And so that we can drive home the message that it should be done with fidelity, these should be decreasing in the right way, and not just to make the metrics move, and to look good on paper, but to do what's best for kids, and to mitigate these, you know, behavioral issues at the lowest level, and with students at the center of that. Hope that makes sense.
Yeah, it does. And I think, like, and I haven't, it's been a long time since I've been in the classroom, but, you know, I, you know, if there, if a teacher is having to, you know, move a student to another classroom, whether they have an IEP or not, just any student who might just need a little break, I mean, is that ever reported, or recorded anywhere, or anything like that in a systemic way? And is that something that we even need to do? And I don't, I don't know. But I think it, I would be curious to know, kind of going back to what trustee Kaufman was saying earlier, is like, are we, you know, ultimately, just want to be sure that we're understanding that all kids' needs are being met appropriately, and so that might require the inquiry that you're talking about, Ms. Hozek. I would just love to appreciate, I would love to just continue this conversation and see what more we can learn about it.
Absolutely, we agree. To answer your question directly, anytime we do any sort of intervention for a student, we should be documenting that. That should be going into ECST, and that should be being tracked. And so that's part of documentation, so that we can, we should also be communicating with the parent, hey, Brandy had to have a cooldown today, we used one of our strategies, which is going to the teachers next door, et cetera. So it should be documented. Whether it ends up in, you know, the discipline system is a completely separate issue, because we're mitigating before it becomes an actual discipline issue. We are actually using the strategies necessary to help that student get back in the game, right? So, should be documented, yes, but not necessarily in a discipline system.
That makes perfect, that makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Singh, is that the last one? Okay, and just for a time check, we're at 34 minutes, not to cut anyone off, just a time check.
I don't want to extend our time much, but I just don't, I appreciate trustee Singh bringing that up. And I just feel that we cannot understate the importance of explicit and direct messaging about our district values, and how those play out in these decisions. And so I would encourage our board to continue speaking out about our values, and what we believe in, and for our superintendent and all his team to speak loudly and proudly about our expectations for ethical behavior. And I think that's particularly important when there's a history, and a recent history of district leadership modeling disrespect, and a lack of transparency, and unethical behavior, that it's doubly important than that new leadership loudly and proudly dissociates from that, and sets, resets the expectations for the organization. And so I will say again, as a principal, that messaging, to me, in the past, had been, we are no longer going to suspend kids who are in K through two with discretionary. So make sure that it's mandatory when you report it, right? So assault with injury. Oh, I have a little scratch on my hand. I don't believe that's assault with injury. And yet, assault with injury, we code because somebody got scratched by a first grader, when they were trying to hold their hand, and this first grader scratched them, that's counted as assault with injury. If you're an adult serving kids in school, and you consider a little scratch from a student to be assault with injury, justifying removing a seven-year-old to a setting, I question your commitment to this career. So I just want to say, like, there has been messaging in the past, I have heard with my own ears, about how do you, how do you meet those goals? And so I think it's extremely important that we loudly state the expectation for student-focused, right, and couple that with the support. So I appreciate your kind of attention to that.
Thank you.
So just one quick comment to kind of pair it on to trustee Kaufman and trustee Singh's statements about shadow discipline. And, you know, I do think that for special education students, the consideration of time out of placement is supposed to be tracked for students with IEPs, and that would probably be a really good metric to look at in conjunction with the explicit disciplinary data that you're talking about. I know a lot of families get concerned about how much time the student's out of placement. Surely, it would be a level more of labor to differentiate how much of that time out of placement might be in lieu of disciplinary action. But certainly, if it's related, I think it would be relevant, and I would think that we would be working at minimizing time out of placement for any of our students. I don't know if that was phrased as a question, but if, I would be curious to see if that could be in some way incorporated in some of this data as well. I can, I have to think through how we would do that at scale, but yes, I'd receive your comments and work with the team.
Can I share two things? And we're at 34?
Sure. And I think there are further opportunities to, to talk during one-to-ones about that.
Is it okay to share, president?
Yeah.
Okay. To, for trustee Kaufman, you mentioned something about the assault with injury. One of the things that our discipline team will be working on this summer is making sure that our coding is really clear with definitions, as clear as possible regarding, this is what's mandatory, this is what's discretionary, and each of the offenses that land underneath those, here's what the definition is. Per chapter 37, per the penal code, assault with injury versus a terroristic threat, for example. And so we're working to make sure that we clarify those codes to help be that support as well. And for trustee, regarding the question and comment about time out of placement, one of the ways in which we've started working with that is in collaboration with our special education team, where we're pulling this disproportionality data, and calculating it on a bi-weekly basis. And one of the first teams that gets shared, this particular data, is with the special education team. So they're consistently looking at, what do our suspension numbers look like, for example? How many, how many times has a student been out of school? And yes, this is, these are, this is formal documentation, for sure, so I know it lands outside of that conversation regarding shadow discipline. But nonetheless, tracking and taking a look at how much time has been out of placement, are there evaluations that need to be completed? Where are we with that for students? What conversations are needing to be had with the special education coordinator, and then with the principal, with those meetings that happen monthly, as it relates to disproportionality for kiddos that get special education support that have been out of school multiple times? And even the students that may not have that certain number of 10, but maybe getting close to it, so we can intervene and do some work quicker than waiting until students have been out of school for too long.
Great.
That's one way. It's not everything, but it's one way.
Thank you. And other trustees, other questions?
And I do have to clarify for anyone listening, by no means do I think any teacher should come to school and accept being injured in any capacity or any form.
Certainly.
And being, so I just want to explain that, yeah, I don't want that to be interpreted as there's no concern for teachers getting injured. There are risks to teachers in serving our students, and sometimes there are injuries that are very grievous that happen to our teachers because of the work that they do. And I don't think anyone should ever expect to be hurt coming to work or working with our students.
Yes, sir.
But I just want to put things in proportion to recognize that being assaulted by, you know, getting bumped, or whatever, is different from, you know, there's levels, and there's appropriate levels based on the age of students. So, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have other questions, trustees? All right. I would just love an explanation in writing, since we're tied on time, about the root causes of the high disproportionality between, elementary has such a higher rate than our middle schools and high schools, and we don't need to talk about it now, but I would love just an explanation in writing for the trustees about that one.
Happy to do that.
Thank you. I appreciate your, the presentation, all the information in the video. Thank you both, and the work. Thank you.
Thank you, trustees. Thank you, superintendent.
And people who have not had questions, have you had an opportunity, or have your questions been answered?
My questions have been answered. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was in the back, Dr. Kaufman asked the question that I would have asked.
Perfect.
And about the disproportionality of, like, it going down, but the numbers, incident has been higher. So thank you for that, Dr. Kaufman.
Everyone's questions have been answered. Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, trustees, for this conversation. Time again to vote on whether we'll accept this monitoring report. And again, as a point of clarity, we're voting to accept it as a formal acknowledgement that we had a satisfactory conversation with the superintendent, and have a deeper understanding about how the current reality of students lines up with our vision for them. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion for the acceptance of this monitoring report.
I move to accept our monitoring report.
Just kidding. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay. Okay. Having a motion by Trustee Quintana, a second by Trustee Lily Chu. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? And the motion passes with all those on the dais plus Trustee Singh. Thank you. And thank you, trustees, for taking part in our shared commitment to students and outcomes. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a review of our strategic plan for special education, which is part of our agreed order and does count toward discussion of student outcomes and special education. We have scheduled 45 minutes for this item. And Superintendent Segura, will you please introduce it?
Thank you, President Boswell. This is Gen. Item 5.2, TA Order Update, Strategic Plan for Special Education Quarterly Update. Tonight, joining us, we have Dr. Cherry Lee, Interim Assistant Superintendent for Special Education, Dr. Jennifer Baker, Executive Director of Compliance Operations Reporting Evaluations, and Mr. Joshua John, first time presenting this semester, Special Assistant Superintendent, to take us through the update. So take it away, team.
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Segura. This evening, we'll provide quarterly updates for the Strategic Plan for Special Education, and this is a requirement of the TA agreed order. And as a reminder, this is our district's strategic plan for special education, not only a departmental plan. And this illustrates collaboration across our campus and our district teams in support of the over 14,000 students in our school district receiving special education services. So tonight, we'll summarize key actions outlined in our strategic plan for special education that we've progressed since the previous quarterly update. And to recap the work from the past 18 months, our district and campus-level staff members have completed extensive training in the areas of MTSS, special education laws and requirements, differentiated instruction, cultural and linguistic supports, and the development of high-quality IEPs as required by the order. The district has also rolled out systematic MTSS structures, including the launch of an MTSS manual and approach for our school district and adopted intervention materials and procedures. We've also provided consistent reporting to the Texas Education Agency through our State Performance Plan or SPP data collection processes. Our special education strategic plan is built around the five key goals that you see identified on the screen. And each of these goals are supported by aligned strategies and actions to enhance services and outcomes for students with disabilities. And for this evening's presentation, and given that we have provided updates earlier in the year, we wanted to focus our attention on those three areas shaded on your screen. Those include fulfillment of evaluation requirements, high-quality IEP development and implementation, and improved student outcomes and accountability. And Dr. Jennifer Baker will now share updates on fulfillment of the evaluation requirements and staffing efforts.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, President Boswell and trustees. The third goal within the strategic plan outlines the district's commitment to comply with state and federal evaluation requirements. The Special Education Department has made incredible growth and progress within this area. As there are many objectives and deliverables associated with this goal, we wanted to orient you to a few of the most salient. This year, we produced an evaluation manual and a companion guide for parents and families to aid in their understanding of the evaluation process. This was a large undertaking and a massive accomplishment that has been well received by staff. In fact, we often get asked by surrounding districts if they can take pieces of ours and use a framework to build their own for their own district. We are overjoyed to become trailblazers of sorts and help other districts within this area. Over the course of the school year, the department has provided countless trainings for campuses and district staff on child find, the referral process, and adherence of legal mandated timelines. On the next slide, we'll talk a bit more about specific training that we gave our evaluation, speech, and related service teams themselves. As part of our ongoing commitment to our students, families, community, and the Texas Education Agency, we analyze referral and evaluation data bi-weekly in sub-departmental groups and overall as a department monthly. Notice in that second row on the slide, we pledge in the strategic plan for this to happen quarterly. Well, soon after writing and implementing the strategic plan, we knew quarterly was not enough to determine the effectiveness of practices and make adjustments where we needed to for optimal efficiency and compliance. More specifically, the last week of every month, the compliance and strategic integration teams pull various reports from our data management systems. Then we run a triple validation process. In this process, the team are checking for data correctness, quality, and compliance within predefined rules or standards. These teams also partner with the evaluation, campus support, and the speech and related service teams to investigate issues. We document patterns and trends that require further training or perhaps require corrective action within specific disciplines or the groups that they serve. I'll go a bit further into those last two rows identified on that slide. There, I'll talk more about the work we've done to honor the recommendations made from Dr. Francis Stetson and Stetson Associates in looking at appropriate staffing models for speech evaluation and related services. However, before I move on to professional learning and our progress on the reduction of contracts, I would be remiss if I did not share the brief update from our spring break evaluation clinic. In previous presentations, we have mentioned that we hope that as a department and district, we don't want to make holidays, weekends, and large breaks the norm for evaluation. But right now, with the amount of referrals for evaluations coming in, we have to make use of all the days we have available to remain in compliance with timelines. This all to say, spring break evaluation clinic was a success. We had a total of 123 students for both initials and reevaluations evaluated in person at Brook Elementary. In addition to direct testing, we had 141 speech evaluations, nine counseling as a related service evaluations, and 17 occupational therapy evaluations were written and finalized over the holiday break. This reflects the outstanding coordination and commitment from our team to keep timelines on track and ensure students receive the services that they need. Oh, perfect. As a part of our strategic plan around implementation evaluation, the district has made significant investments in our educational diagnosticians, our school psychologists, speech-language pathologists, and our related service providers, inclusive of mental health specialists, occupational therapists, physical therapists. So really equipping them with the skills through specialized training opportunities. So you'll see some of these comprehensive professional developments, and I can answer any questions about any of them above. But providing ongoing professional development for evaluators as well as providers is essential to ensuring that we have high-quality equitable supports for all students. These trainings help the professionals stay current with their best practices, legal requirements, and research-based interventions. It also enhances their ability to address diverse needs and collaborate effectively with their campus teams and respond to mental and behavioral challenges. Real quick, I think I wanted to also celebrate a couple of people too that are related to these teams. So we have some individuals, Kristen Valdez was a special education itinerant Teacher of the Year, Mallow Genovissey, Related Services Provider of the Year, Mackenzie Steve, Speech Language Pathologist, Speech Pathologist of the Year. And then Stacy Carroll, our School Psychologist and Evaluation Supervisor, was awarded the Golden Rave Award by the Superintendent Segura during School Psychology Appreciation Week in November. These are all amazing individuals that were nominated and ultimately selected as professionals by their peers. Their dedication, leadership, and commitment have made a positive lasting impact on our students and families. All right. So the good stuff. This slide depicts the impressive work that has gone into shifting from a contractor model to a full-time employee model. This model or approach is ideal for many reasons that benefit the district as a whole and most importantly, families and students that we serve. The first step in this process was for the special education team to engage with the finance department. This is where we review the data together on the past two years of evaluation and service provisions. And then we looked into projections into what the future would look like based on this historical data. An analysis was drafted based on this data for how many full-time employees, or FTEs, would be needed within the state and national best practices ratios for each discipline. After this work was complete, the finance and talent strategy teams were hard at work to find the money and agreed to conservatively release what was requested in specific phases. For this first phase, as of February 13th, 117 FTEs or positions were released for posting. The special education team then met with Dr. Stetson and her team, as well as our TA monitors, to review and revise job descriptions. We looked at school psychologists, educational diagnosticians, speech-language pathologists, occupational therapists, and mental health specialists. We ensure that all of these job descriptions align with the department's values, the expectations, and best practices within each one of their disciplines. It is here where we also ensure that each professional was seen as a full service provider, meaning that they all evaluate, they all participate in meetings, provide services to students, consult with other staff members and professionals. The job descriptions are now inclusive of the full scope of their responsibilities and the expertise that they bring. Once the job descriptions were complete, the talent strategy department worked expeditiously on posting these jobs and expanding recruitment efforts and advertising that we are hiring. Since the jobs were posted, the sped team has conducted, believe it or not, over 70 interviews since March. This is an incredible feat. So a huge shout out to our Director over Evaluation, our Evaluation Supervisors, our Director over Speech and Related Services, and our Speech and Related Service Supervisors. Because they have been sitting in a lot of interviews finding highly qualified staff members. We also had a great participation rate in the March 29th Austin ISD Job Fair. This is often the time of year where many providers start looking at available positions in various districts. So we do expect these numbers to continue to increase as we move through the month of April and into early summer. So if you're one of these highly qualified professionals listening to this board meeting, please apply today. We are still looking and eagerly await your application. We also have maximized the new school psychologist and DIAG positions to be longer contracted days, from a 197-day calendar to a 207-day calendar. And this was done to strategically support summer evaluations. So where this is where the department previously used a lot of summer contractors to assist as we didn't have evaluators on contract. In addition to the new FTEs or positions starting '25-'26 school year, the department transitioned about 38 existing speech-language pathologists from a 187-day contract to a 197-day contract for similar reasons and allows better for support for students and families and campuses. A huge shout out to Chief Hosak and our talent strategy partners who have been working incredibly hard to process these requests quickly. They've kept the momentum going and their support is deeply appreciated. Lastly, in the midst of interview and hiring, we are developing a robust onboarding procedures for these new hires. Our teams are currently mapping the district for potential assignments for their staff members for next year. What we look at is, of course, our staff preferences that are currently working with us and where they'd like to be for next year. But we have also pulled data related to total enrollment, sped enrollment, students with emergent bilingual needs, the referral rates for initial evaluations as well as reevaluations, and if those schools have specialized service programs for behavior or specific academics. This helps us look at information across the district to operationalize placements for all of the providers and optimal efficiency going into next school year. So I'm going to hand it over now to Dr. Lee, who will talk about high-quality IEPs.
Thank you. So the fourth goal within the strategic plan outlines the development and implementation of high-quality IEPs. And actions include building campus capacity to engage families in the art process, differentiated professional learning for staff, and increased monitoring of IEPs and services. We've also created a cadence for reviewing selected folders for IEP compliance, which we rolled out to principals in September. And campus IEP reviews and walkthroughs are in progress. So to date, district staff have conducted over 650 IEP audits for the year and over 30 formal campus walkthroughs. In the next few slides, we'll review some additional progress we've made towards actions outlined in the strategic plan. So as highlighted in our last presentation, in January, our team provided a half-day training for special education teachers on January 29th. And the training included a curated list of sessions based on areas of needs as identified in the IEP folder reviews and walkthroughs, including a math intervention training, strategies to support students with autism, transition assessments, and graduation coding. We also provided several sessions to support implementation of assistive technology and AAC, or Augmentative and Alternative Communication, which are tools and strategies to support students who are non-speaking or minimally speaking. I want to talk a little bit about AAC tools, including pictures, gestures, sign language, and high-tech speech generating devices, which help students express themselves and participate in learning. And I want to highlight the elevated work of our AAC team comprised of three individuals, Kendra Everett, Danny Welgie, and Mackenzie Steve, who transitioned our district from a specialist-only model to a capacity-building model focused on training educators, therapists, and families to support students directly. Their work includes caregiver education, campus coaching, professional development, and a six-week literacy and language coaching cycles for our early childhood and life skills teams. The team emphasizes literacy as a human right, helping AAC users of all ages access books, print, and meaningful instruction. Since 2020, our high-tech AAC use in Austin ISD has increased by more than 300%. And today, Austin ISD is home to over 800 high-tech AAC users. The team has trained over 500 staff members, supported more than 100 families, and responded to over 900 collaboration requests, all grounded in the belief that every student deserves access to communication and the opportunity to develop language and literacy. The AAC team's efforts in Austin ISD have been recognized not only at the state level, but at the national level. As we move beyond the professional learning requirements identified in the TA agreed order through May 2025, our team has sought educator input to shape current and future training development. At the conclusion of the January 29th training, special education teachers were surveyed on their request for future training. And along with requesting further training on the development of IEPs, teachers identified the professional learning needs captured on the slide, including additional training on the development of functional behavior assessments, behavior intervention plan, and tiered intervention strategies to support all students in regulating behavior. Currently, we're incorporating these recommendations into coaching and training opportunities for staff as we design our professional learning calendar in '25-'26 and the Summer Special Education Teacher Institute. I'd also like to shout out our professional learning for providers of dyslexia instruction, or PDI's, as the State Dyslexia Handbook refers to this person and this service. Austin ISD currently serves approximately 9,500 students who are identified with dyslexia. And students receive support from over 125 dedicated dyslexia interventionists and more than 300 special education teachers across the district. And I'd like to highlight additional and ongoing professional learning and advanced credentialing opportunities to enhance high-quality implementation of dyslexia services. So to support advanced credentialing, Austin ISD partners with Region 4, Valley Speech, and the Dyslexia Center of Austin. Currently, eight staff members are working on certification through Region 4. Three staff members who are bilingual are working on certification through Valley Speech. And seven staff members are working on certification through the Dyslexia Center of Austin. We've reviewed internal applications for credentialing programs for this next school year and approved staff members are submitting their applications for these opportunities now. Ultimately, the training organization itself approves their acceptance into the credentialing program. Now I'm going to discuss the Special Education Family Survey. So CFAC, or our Special Education Family Advisory Committee, met at the end of January to review the previous survey that Stetson and Associates sent to families in January of 2024 as part of the TA agreed order. They also reviewed the State Performance Plan Indicator that TA utilizes to survey a percentage of families yearly. Based on that input and partnership with the Department of Communications and Community Engagement, we developed a family engagement survey. DCCE sent the survey to families of students receiving special education services on February 14th of this year, and the survey closed on February 28th. The survey results can be reviewed by accessing our external special education website. Almost 1,400 responses were recorded, representing approximately a 10% response rate for the survey. Overall findings were positive, meaning the majority of participants or the majority of responders responded strongly, agree, or agreed to statements. In early March 2025, our CFAC members, in addition to district staff members, reviewed and analyzed the results focusing on three key areas: special education services, art committee meetings, and parent involvement and engagement. The following slide summarizes the key findings from the survey. In relation to special education services, over 75% of respondents agreed or highly agreed they are aware of who to contact if they have questions or concerns about services and that they believe their child is provided with effective support to develop and progress towards mastery of their IEP goals. In relation to art committee meetings, over 72% of respondents agreed or highly agreed that considerations for special education or highly agreed that considerations for special education services and accommodations or modifications were communicated to them effectively. And almost eighty-eight percent of respondents agreed or highly agreed that there's enough time to discuss their child's special education services and needs. And ninety percent of respondents indicated they feel comfortable asking questions and expressing concerns during the R meeting. Finally, in relation to parent involvement and engagement, over eighty percent of respondents agreed or strongly agreed that school staff created a welcoming environment and their child's case manager is accessible and responsive to their needs. With sixty-five percent of respondents indicating they strongly agree or agree that they are notified of upcoming family engagement events, this is an area we are focusing on for improvement. Based on community and staff feedback, we are now automating the Special Education Family Newsletter to ensure that families of students receiving services receive a quarterly newsletter via email. And while there are areas for growth, it's important to acknowledge that overall families expressed positive sentiments. Campus leaders were provided survey results on March twenty-sixth at principal roundtables and given opportunity to review the data. Within work groups, principals identified one to two priorities for improvement on their individual campuses, and they recommended practical steps our department can take to collaboratively address these priorities. In these discussions, principals highlighted for their campuses to support improvement, including timely communication and information sharing about campus and district events to families, and requested additional training for campuses and staff to best support student achievement and progress. Our department is currently hiring for a family engagement and learning specialist for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year to expand outreach efforts and continue to partner with community organizations. As part of our strategic plan and our commitment to support families, our team has hosted monthly engagement and learning opportunities. As the school year comes to a close, the department continues to host several more opportunities for families, including a three-part virtual autism learning series in both English and Spanish focused on advocacy and providing strategies and resources. We're also hosting a literacy and biliteracy summer enrichment session, offering resources for language and literacy development over the summer. Although our first fellow session was on Tuesday and Wednesday of this week, we have two more opportunities for families to attend, and registration is still open. So far, twenty-six families have attended our first sessions. I'd also like to recognize International and National Autism Acceptance and Awareness Month. To support autism acceptance, the Special Education Department provided campuses and district staff with guides in English and Spanish to support inclusive practices and celebration of persons with neurodiversity. Superintendent Segura also shared information on autism acceptance and our VELA opportunities in his weekly message. I'd also like to highlight four key engagement events designed to equip our students and families with crucial information and resources as they prepare for life after high school. Overwhelmingly, parents appreciated these sessions and will continue these in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. I'll talk just briefly about these now. In February, we partnered with Austin Community College to share information on accessibility services for students with disabilities, and we had thirty-two participants that attended. In February, we also hosted the University of Texas Mithoff Pro-Bono Program, who facilitated the Alternatives to Guardianship Clinic on February eighth, where forty-two families were supported. In March, our community partner Integral Care provided valuable insights into community-based mental health and support services for students with intellectual disabilities, and eleven participants attended this session. Finally, our in-person transition information session with Texas Parent-to-Parent was held just last weekend on April fifth at Jocelyn Elementary School, thank you Jocelyn for hosting, with twenty-five participants receiving information on peer support and guidance. These transition-focused events are of paramount importance as they directly address the critical need to prepare our students with disabilities for successful post-secondary outcomes. And by connecting families with vital resources related to accessibility in higher education, alternatives to guardianship, and mental health services, we're empowering families to make informed decisions and advocate effectively for their children's futures. Our department has sought feedback from CFAC around next year's family engagement learning opportunities and will be working to incorporate these suggestions as we build next year's schedule and offerings for families. So moving on to the last part of our presentation tonight, we will share updates on actions to ensure compliance structures, systems, and reporting. For this update, we're going to focus on the first row of this slide that you see projected, which is the progress we made on a transition of the new digital management system. Now, in October of twenty-twenty-four, we established a steering committee that meets every other Friday, and this committee is led by Joshua Here, our Special Assistant to the Superintendent, who also serves as the project manager for this project. The steering committee includes representatives from our Technology Department, our Special Education and School Leadership Team, as well as our TEA monitors. And Josh is now going to share those key milestones we've accomplished and next steps to ensure a successful transition.
Thank you, Dr. Lee, and good evening, Board of Trustees. What you see on the screen is an overview of our project plan for the transition of the sped and five oh four data management system. The visual highlights what our milestones are from January twenty-twenty-five through September twenty-twenty-five. But as Dr. Lee mentioned, our process began back in October when we surveyed our staff as well as held eight listening sessions so that the whole transition process from procurement all the way through implementation can be informed by the voices of our staff, who are the end-users and the subject matter experts. I did want to say that I'm so thankful for the four hundred and fifty survey participants as well as ninety-one attendees to these listening sessions, also to the seventeen individuals who served on the Evaluation Committee. I do want to say that I'm so thankful for the many team members on the Special Education Team, the five oh four Technology, Medicaid, Talent Development, Transportation Departments, who've been putting in countless hours to ensure the transition process is progressing smoothly. And what I'd like to highlight from this slide are a few key dates ahead of us. Within the next month, our sixty-plus district trainers from the sped department will receive three days of in-person training as well as three days of online training. And then after those six days of training, they will work with Talent Development to thoughtfully design training that they will provide to campus and other district staff from June to August. Another important milestone you see up here, in July, to be exact, July fourteenth, we'll be going live with the new data management system. And by that time, we'll have gone through a rigorous process of quality checks for the data that is being migrated to ensure that we are ready to go from day one of Go Live. And finally, I want to highlight that we are building in ample time in August during back-to-school PD days for all campus sped and five oh four staff to be trained on the new system. Moving on to the next slide, something that we heard from our staff over and over again through the surveys, through the listening sessions, through various meetings, is that it is so important for them, maybe the most important for them, that they are trained well and trained sufficiently for the new system. We are thankful for this feedback, and we've taken it very seriously. We've developed a comprehensive training rollout for the new data management system. This summer in June, we will begin our first round of full-day training geared towards staff that are working over the summer, for the summer arts. This training will also be open to all sped department chairs, who may want the opportunity to learn the new system ahead of time. In July, campus leaders will receive their introduction to the new platform at Leadership Institute. And then in August, we'll be preparing all special education teachers and five oh four coordinators for the upcoming school year through a full-day training. We're working to ensure that this training is informative, engaging, hands-on, and differentiated for our staff's varying learning styles, as well as different levels of proficiency with technology. This will be followed by a protected time back at their campuses to practice using the system and to collaborate with their team members to get ready for the new school year. Finally, I want to mention that something we're currently working on is to have an easy-to-use online library of help documents, SOPs, to ensure that our campus staff will have what they need at their fingertips. And we're also developing a robust support plan for the entire fall semester, including office hours where technical assistance will be readily available. And we'll be hosting follow-up small-group training sessions and sending our district staff to campuses throughout the fall semester to have support visits as needed.
As we close our presentation, I'd like to emphasize the shared responsibility across our district, including central office staff members, campus teachers, campus principals, teaching assistants. Each member of our Austin ISD staff plays a role in fostering a safe and inclusive learning environment and promoting positive outcomes for all of our students. We continue to build capacity and communication across our teams as we lift up the actions in the strategic action plan we spoke of tonight. So thank you for listening to our presentation tonight. We appreciate you.
And thank you for the presentation. Appreciate all the information and the work. I know that has been, especially the data migration, and so much of the rest of it has been a huge lift, so thank you for that. So trustees, are there any questions?
I have one question regarding the quality checks on the evaluations. And I know we're also focusing on a transition from moving off of contract for sped. You know, we're hiring internally. Can you elaborate a little more on how we're doing the quality checks and how we're ensuring that the quality of the evaluations that we're doing and how they're going to be maintained and, you know, hopefully increasing from the quality evaluations that we were doing when we were doing the contract services?
Can I talk a little bit about the IEP evaluation quality checks?
Yeah, for sure. So all of our supervisors do quality checks each week. They go through their documentation system and kind of randomize it based on their campuses that they receive. Even our directors do, our Director of Evaluation also looks at that, too. We also have supervisors who specialize in bilingual assessments, so they take those. So they do a percentage of those each week. So we have a form that we do, and they go through those quality review checks. I will say, we don't separate them based on employees and contractors, if that's what you're asking, kind of like the quality between both. They're all required to use a very designed template, so we ensure that all the legally compliant pieces are there. And then if there's misrepresentation in any way, then they contact the evaluator and have a one-on-one discussion with them about, hey, why did you interpret this way? Let's talk about it and kind of run through a scenario together.
Yeah, there's a very similar process for all of our evaluations that our speech-language pathologists and our OTs conduct as well. And, you know, we know we have new folks joining us, right? They're early in their career as evaluators and speech pathologists. So we have a really strong system of supporting those persons that are new to the field and new to the district. And we have our speech pathologists that are clinical fellows, so they're in their very first year of practice. And we have a very intensive review process for all of their evaluations.
Are we baselining that, or I guess maybe a different way? As part of those quality checks, are we comparing that to like the rate of requests for like IEEs or how often the quality of our evaluations are being questioned maybe by the families?
So anytime a family requests an IE, we do review that. We do review that request. In the vast majority of cases, we do agree to provide that IE. And of course, as a part of reviewing that IE, we're also reviewing our own evaluation that we've conducted as well through Austin ISD. That continual evaluation process of the evaluations themselves is just something that we do as part of quality assurance. In fact, next week, our speech pathologists are actually, and our related service providers are convening, I should say, our supervisors of those disciplines are convening to review our evaluation templates, because we do provide templates for our evaluators to ensure that the required components are there. So this is just an ongoing process of continuous quality assurance. It's never, we've done this before, we've created a process, it's always coming back and revisiting and refining improvements to our process.
I guess maybe a different way of phrasing that is, is the rate of IE requests at all part of the consideration for our quality check?
I don't think we count that in terms of quality, but we do monitor it. We actually provide that information to the state as part of the TA order. They do look at our IE requests. I will say that there is no significant increase or abnormality in the data, if that's what you're asking. I will say, when I said we didn't look at quality checks with contractors versus employees, because they're all of our staff, I will say we actually do look at that when it comes to IEEs, because we have a good relationship with the vendors to be able to go back to them and say, hey, we're getting a lot of IEEs based on your reports, so we really need to see what kind of quality checks you're also doing on your end. So we have had conversations with specific vendors if we continue to have IE requests from their specific employees' reports.
So then would there be data on how many IEEs are resulting from vendor evaluations versus our own internal ones?
Yes, we do have that data.
Okay, I would look if that could be shared with the board.
We can provide that as a future board update.
Absolutely.
Probably next Friday.
Yes.
Posted tomorrow.
Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely.
But we're hoping to move off contractors, so we can fix this.
Seventy interviews is a lot. Trustees, other questions? Trustee Hunter?
I actually just would like Dr. Lee to speak to a concern that one of the callers shared. I have gotten emails from parents saying, you know, I'm really happy, wow, way to go, AISD. But then we hear a call that says, hey, you're getting them done, but they're crap. So if you can speak to that, but also, I remember, like, if I didn't, I didn't sign it, right? I was like, nah, let's talk about this some more. When I was having an R and they were deciding what, you know, the accommodations were going to be, and I'm like, no, he's definitely going to need a calculator, right? And so I kind of held my ground, and maybe every parent doesn't know that they're part of that process. Like, you're in the room. When my kid was twelve, I'm like, okay, so now you got to be in the room so that you know what's going on, you tell us what you need. So I think that there may be, like, two things can be true at the same time, right? That someone's having a really great experience and someone's not having a good experience, maybe because they don't know how to access all of the ins and outs of the R process.
Absolutely. So you were talking about two things, right? We have the evaluation process, so children are evaluated. And then we were talking about the IEP process, right? So we go to the R, right, and we have, we develop together mutually an IEP. And that's the document that guides the campuses in, you know, knowing what to do and what services to provide and all of the accommodations that are included in there, modifications for children. And so your question is, like, what do we do when parents aren't satisfied? Or how do we, how do we support campuses when, you know?
It's really that parents can be satisfied, is the point that I want to make sure that people understand, is that it's not like, this is what you get, there you go. It's like, what you just said, that co-creation, and that's why I'm saying, I believe that probably some of this is, you know, okay, well, you're the school and you gave it to me, so I guess I'm unhappy, now I'm going to go tell my friends that I'm unhappy, instead of, no, 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 we're not leaving, let's get this straight. That's the part I think that maybe we can help families understand more, that they, I mean, I know that you get the big book, like, the big staple together, you're like, I'm not reading that.
The Parents' Guide to the R Process.
Yes, now you have to get that, I know. But perhaps with that comes, look, here's some quick, like, one-page things that you should know, because you're probably never going to read that, and I don't even know if you can read, because like, maybe you're functionally illiterate and you're in this meeting, and we're asking you to make really big decisions. Or maybe you're a lawyer, and you still don't have time to read that, right? So how can we help parents better access it if they're feeling they're not? Now, some people are, but some people aren't.
Absolutely. I think that's really important, and I think you bring up a good point. One of the components of family engagement is that it's not just happening at the R meeting, right? It's happening before the R meeting, it's happening during the R meeting, it's happening after the R meeting. I mean, a part of that can be communication that the principals, you know, directly providing, or the case managers directly providing to the family, it can come from the district. So I think there's many ways to engage families, but as far as, you know, we want parents to feel comfortable sharing their concerns. We want them to be a part of that IEP development process. We want them to feel comfortable sharing outside data that they may have from other providers or therapists that are supporting their child. We want those conversations to happen, not only with the special education providers, but also the general education teachers as well, who in many and most cases are actually, you know, providing, you know, services and seeing that child more frequently during the day. So those are, you know, conversations that we want to see happening, and I mean, that's our collective goal, not only, you know, here at the district level, but for campuses as well. So, you know, I do appreciate that statement, and, you know, I understand that, you know, there are some families that do have concerns. We recognize that, we honor that, and we want to, you know, move through that process collectively.
Well, and then I'll just share this little tidbit, totally off the wall, that my son gets to work with his caseworker from Keeling every day. She gets to watch him go teach an English III class, and it is amazing. And like I said, some of these people, like your caseworkers and your scores teachers and things like that, I still have a letter from my son's scores teacher that said, he showed empathy today, right? And so those things are
And so, those things are impactful for parents whose students receive special education services. And that parent engagement, like I said, amazing. She saw him, she goes, I can't believe he's the Mr. Hunter everybody's talking about. So, she remembers at Keeling, seventh grade, not the same kid, right? Different person. But those relationships are powerful. And I think it's really important, like you said, to have that family engagement before, during, and after.
Absolutely, thank you.
Also, that ARD guide and the family ARD guide, as well as procedural safeguards, are actually being updated April 14th, the TEA. So, soon to come to families all over, because we will get them delivered to campuses.
Thank you. Do we have more questions? From anyone, trustee Singh? Okay.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have one question. Thank you for, I appreciate the family engagement opportunities and specifically hearing some things about the transition services. We talked about CCMR recently. We talk a lot about kind of preparing our kids for what's next. And we know our kids who receive special education services go on to do, you know, a huge range of things, including college, career, military. And we know that, I think a lot of us have heard from families in the past that there weren't maybe this transition supports that a lot of families were seeking. So, I'd love to know kind of what we're doing differently in that area and how families are responding.
Yeah, I know, thank you. We're really approaching it from two different standpoints. One is that family engagement and, you know, engaging families, providing these resources and these trainings. And the other one is directly supporting campus teachers, right? We have a lot of knowledge and skill building for our campus teachers. And transition services for students with disabilities don't just begin when students enter ninth grade, right? They don't just start happening when students turn 14. They really happen from the first time that children walk into our school classrooms, right? So, thinking about equipping even our early childhood special education teachers with this knowledge, right? Because students are developing and, you know, we're building their transition skills along the way. But transition just isn't something that's happening at school. It's also documented in that IEP. And that IEP really serves as a roadmap for all of our families, for all of our teachers, for all of the professionals that are working with the student, to help students identify their preferences, their goals, and help them really start thinking about their futures. What classes do they need to be taking to support their future goals, right? That has to be documented in an IEP. We're also helping build our teachers' capacity to administer transition assessments and use that assessment data to really help plan those post-secondary goals, to help them enroll in courses that are meaningful and connected to their life goals, right? So, it's a really multifaceted approach to expanding and building transition services in our school district. When I started, we had one person supporting transition, and now we have a director over transition. She also supports, is Dr. Kimberly Pollard. She supports transition dyslexia and section 504. But we have a transition coordinator, and we have two very dedicated transition specialists as well. So, we've really tried to grow this specific area. It's also in alignment with CCMR. So, Dr. Pollard is now regularly meeting with our CCMR team members as well. They're doing campus walkthroughs. But again, we're focusing efforts across elementary, middle, and high school. I would definitely say there's, you know, more of a focus at middle and high, but we're really trying to reach our elementary school teachers as well, yeah.
Thank you for that. Exciting to hear that.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Perfect. This is not a formal report, so we don't have to approve it. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
For the work and the information.
Thank you.
And thank you Superintendent Segura for that. So, we will now move on. We've ended the section on information reports from the administration. And so, we're moving to a preview of our April 24th board meeting and the agenda items. And AISD staff is available to answer any questions we have. So, we'll begin with item number seven, which is the agenda preview for academics and curriculum. Any questions?
Yeah, I had a question on 7.2, the Dobie turnaround plan.
Yes.
Yeah, so Superintendent, I wanted to know if you could share a little bit about what the options are, when we have to make a decision on this? And kind of a little bit about, a little bit of clarity on like how we got into this situation. I know it does feel sudden, but I think you probably have some really good insight to kind of share that, you know, kind of how we got here with Dobie.
Absolutely, trustee Singh. And so, we did prepare a couple slides to communicate those very questions, as well as a couple others. And the one that I would like to start off with is a timeline. Over the last, you know, couple weeks, as we released information regarding kind of where we are in the process, we have received different thoughts around, you know, what did we know and when did we know it? And the one thing I want to say before we start this conversation, or maybe update, I should say, is that, you know, we recognize and believe that there are incredible things happening at Dobie. I have visited Dobie multiple times. I was the person who oversaw the placement of our great principal, Ms. Walker. And whenever the fall semester began, we were intentional in developing comprehensive initiatives that moved the system. It's a large system. It takes years to move, but we had goals, we'd had conversations with trustees, we had just passed the tax rate election, and there was stability in the superintendency for the first time in quite a while. And so, we began to build these conference initiatives, and there was a recognition that a focus for Austin ISD has to be in the middle school experience of our students, not just in schools that serve historically underserved student groups, but all middle schools in Austin ISD. So, we began to build out a framework that included initiatives or projects, I should say, that would apply to all middle schools. But we recognized at the time that there were a set of middle schools, Dobie was included in this, in this set, that required a significant amount of attention, support, and just a kind of creative way of thinking how to take the next step together. And so, in late fall semester of this school year, so, you know, November 2024, really even before that, I convened a meeting with these principals. Ms. Walker was one of them. And we were genuinely engaged in, like, what does a five-year plan look like for Dobie? What are the things that we as an organization could do if we began to think differently about how to support the Dobie community? Because there are incredible things happening. And so, that, you know, that work started. And one of the things that is important to me is that as you develop initiatives, it's imperative that you get community voice, staff voice, because they know the community best. And if we're not developing plans that are tailored to the communities, then we're not going to be successful. So, on December 17th, I did host two meetings at Dobie Middle School. One was a staff meeting, one was a community meeting. And they were incredible. Staff was engaged, prepared, enthusiastic, and you could tell that the work that Ms. Walker had done, Ms. Walker had done over the last, you know, really less than a year at that point, was really beginning to move the school. Climate and culture, I mean, you saw it even today during public comment. And so, we received really, really great thoughts and strategies around what we could do moving forward. Austin Voices facilitated that conversation, they did an incredible job. And that really informed kind of the start of a focus area in our middle school initiative. And when you see our monitoring reports, you'll see five initiatives. One of them is middle schools. One of the focus areas in that initiative is around schools that have been historically underserved, Dobie being one of them. And so, later in December, or shortly thereafter, we did get a notification from TA that the district was going to be required to submit a turnaround plan. And again, one thing that I think is important to clarify is that the turnaround plan was based on federal accountability, not state accountability. It often gets confusing, because we're, there are multiple things that we're tracking. At the end of the day, the state enforces or has the ability to enforce both, but different schools come in and out of kind of the, kind of risk of intervention from the state, based on where they are on the federal and the state side. And so, there was a request from TA for AISD to develop a turnaround plan for Dobie. And around this time, even really before we began to dive into what that meant, we actually pursued a Lasso grant, because what we were wanting to do was to identify additional funds to actually implement the initiative that we were building with community. That was really the purpose of the Lasso grant. There are multiple types of Lasso grants that you can pursue. Some of them are restarts, some of them are kind of changes to the curriculum, changes in focus areas. We opted, based on the feedback that we got from the community, to pursue not a restart, but a supplemental Lasso grant. And I had conversations with Principal Walker, trustee Hunter, and others, and we were comfortable at that point pursuing it. Around the same time, which is now kind of into January and early February, we, as an organization, as a team, did not agree with TA's determination of where Dobie was in the timeline. And you can see that here. Over the month of January and into February, we, AISD, contested TA's calculation of the TAP requirements, the timeline. Carolyn and Dylan, who have presented here multiple times, they have a deep understanding of, you know, kind of when timelines start and when they end. And based on their experiences in the past with TA, our understanding was that Dobie had one more year. And so, we were kind of building a plan, developing a strategy that would kind of tie into what we understood was likely to be the timeline. And again, that's based on previous experiences we have with turnaround plans. This is things in the past. And so, we pushed pretty hard, and we began to develop turnaround plan options, but we knew that we needed to get clarification from TA. And that clarification did not come really until late February and into March. And with that clarity came also the expected timeline. And so, in February, we were notified that Lasso grant was not approved. We had already communicated the turnaround notice. We came to the board and we had a presentation on targeted improvement plans. And I think we also presented, I remember in fact, we did present that we'd be coming back to the board for a turnaround plan. In early March, I think it's important to note that we got final clarification that the timeline that we believed that we had and what we'd experienced in the past was no longer the case. We had one less year. And that the timeline for implementation of the turnaround plan had to be August of 2025. Now, so for us, that is, that is a surprise, I think mainly because in past experiences in developing the targeted turnaround plans, you typically have, you know, you get the templates in August, you work with community, you work with staff to build the plans later in the fall, you then use the spring semester to begin the transition, and then you have two years to implement. And so, that is typically the timeline that you have to develop and implement a turnaround plan. And so, the timeline all of a sudden became very, very aggressive, the second and third week in March, so just a couple weeks ago. And then shortly thereafter, well, before I speed up, around that same time, we also had enough information to begin getting, developing projections for the 2425 school year, so the year that we're currently in, right? Because there are assessments that occur throughout the year. And so, the team that reports to Jacob takes all this information and then builds out kind of projections. So, we understood and we knew that Dobie was likely to get an F rating based on the current accountability system, which, by the way, has just changed. But there, based on our calculations, which are not final, we're projected to get an F. A week later, the 2223 lawsuit and the injunction is lifted. And so, essentially what happens is, we had, you know, one F that was already identified, and we'll have a timeline here in the next slide. We get 2223, which is an F. We know that it is, we know that it's going to drop. And then we also understand that the 2324, because 2223 has been released, 2324 accountability will drop, and that is likely to be an F as well. Now, we don't have the final accountability from TA, they haven't released it, but we had information to understand that that is likely where the school will be on the accountability system. So, then we're at a point in late March, early April, so just weeks ago, where there are three years of accountability dropping within four months, right? One in April, one likely to be later this spring, and then the one in August. And so, at that point, given that we had to have a turnaround plan approved and implemented by August of 2025, it really constrained our ability to do anything that, anything that really responded to what we were wanting to do. So, the constraints tightened, timeline's tightened, and now we have to move forward and kind of go through this process. The turnaround plan has to be approved by the end of April, so it comes before the board on April 24th. We are committed to having community engagement, having small groups. We have a meeting, as some of the community members just mentioned, on the 14th. We have a survey, really trying to understand all the different options that AISD has available to do a couple things. One, make sure that our students are supported, protected, make sure that we recognize the disruption that this will, that disruption this will have in the community, and then also take into account different inputs to make a solution that we know will ultimately be accepted by TA, because they have to accept whatever we bring forward. But two, also puts AISD in the strongest position long-term. And so, here on the right-hand side, the last column, or the last month, they're all very, very recent, because things are moving very, very quickly. You heard me talk about the community meeting on the 14th, the turnaround survey closes on the 15th, and then the public hearing, which will be on the 24th. Now, we will have other meetings in between. You know, we're constantly trying to have conversations with different folks to make sure that there's an awareness and understanding, but these are the bigger milestones that I wanted to share. Can you go to the next slide real quick? So, the way this breaks down, because it's important to note the conflict or the tension that we're trying to navigate. This goes back to before, I think, really anybody was here. But in 2018, Dobie met standard using that assessment structure, or I would say, accountability system. In 2019, Dobie received an F, and that became the first year of accountability. In 2020, the pandemic, and in 2021, the pandemic also impacted and the state did not release accountability for any school across the state of Texas. In 2022, recognizing that the school systems were kind of, were coming out of it, SB 1365 allowed schools that received an accountability rating of an A, B, or C to be released. And if it was a D or an F, there'd be no rating, not rated. And so, the next accountability year that we have is the one that just dropped, which is 2223. That is, that is expected to drop. And we do have an understanding from TA that it's on the 17th, is that correct, Jacob? When will, the TA will release to districts, and then the 24th, it goes to community? And then we expect 2024 to drop at some point later on in the spring semester. So, right now, we do not have those, but we expect those letter grades to drop. And then, based on what we know now regarding this year, we expect this 2025 to result in an F or a D. And there's lots of different rules around kind of what breaks the chain. What I will say is that a C breaks the chain, D's pause. And so, right now, we're at a point where we have to develop a plan, because we have to be responsive to the turnaround plan that TA is asking for, do it in a way that responds to the values of the organization, and also recognize that as you build out these plans, you're going to be entering into the fifth year. So, the education code states that on the fifth year, the commissioner shall take an action, which you can see how that conflicts with when you have a turnaround plan and have it be approved. And so, if we were to implement a turnaround plan starting in 25, And so if we were to implement a turnaround plan starting in 25, 26, we would also be in the same year that the commissioner shall take an action if we don't meet accountability by the end of that year. So what we're doing now is developing strategies that we know would be accepted by TA. And so if you go to the next slide, what this does is kind of shows categorically the different strategies that can be implemented. I will say that each one of these has multiple scenarios, and even like versions of scenarios. Because there are, there are lots of things that we have to analyze as we look at different options. The first is a charter school partnership. This would require restart in DOBE middle school for 25, 26. The thing that I, I want to point out here is it has to be an approved partner. Texas Education Agency has a list of partners that are approved. But those partners have to meet certain criteria, and those are on the bottom. They have to have a proven track record of formal school turnaround or a history of meeting state accountability standards. And so once you get to the entire list of partners on TA's website, you realize very quickly that there aren't that many available to us. The other thing is the opportunity to introduce new partners is not something that's available really to us. There is a process to go through. The timelines of that are very strict. But again, even if there were partners out there, they would have to meet those two criteria, even to be considered. The other one is permanently closed DOBE. This would be for the 24-25 school year. The, the reason that we use closure and temporary close differently is because you think about the students, the cohorts of students and the attendance boundaries differently. And so if DOBE were to close, the students would have, the boundaries would have to be changed, and a reassignment would have to occur first, and the students would have to go to an A or B school. That is, it is a requirement. So merging the DOBE population with a school that is not an A or B school would not be sufficient and would not be accepted by the agency. And the reason this is important is because ultimately what we do is we, we track the students so the rising seventh graders and the rising eighth graders. And at the receiving school, we would take their accountability, their, their scores with all the other student scores. And then the kind of outcome of that year would be this, the rating that breaks the chain. So there, it's always going to be, it really only be accepted if it's an A or B school from the agency's perspective. The reason close is, is a different kind of description than, than closure also. I mean, the turn, the temporary closure is because we would also be looking at adjusting boundaries. You know, the boundaries have to be adjusted because you have fifth graders that are going to sixth grade. And we would want to make sure that we kind of made those adjustments to ensure that the, the students had paths. We, we were thoughtful in how we developed them. But essentially what we would do is changing the boundaries and permanently closing DOBE. A temporary close of DOBE is, is different. The reassignment would still occur. You have to move the students to an A or B school. And what you would do essentially is take the time while the rising seventh and eighth graders are at the receiving school to actually build out a, a new school, a new DOBE. The thing that I do want to stress here is that the new school would have to be different. It would have to serve a different student group, meaning that a traditional middle school and the, the way that we kind of think about it would not likely be an accepted kind of restart. Something different would work. You know, there are different types of programs. There's magnet solutions. There's an expansion of grades, you know, K8's been discussed. There's lots of things that you could do. And it really could be an exciting restart. And, and it would also not remove AISD's presence in a very important part of town. Now, it would require planning. It would require movement. But it is something that I believe, and I'm quite sure, that if we put the time and, and intention into that solution, the, the agency would support it. But what I, what I want to stress here is that each one of these has a different level of, of execution risk. You know, what can the district pull off? These are time-intensive, the resource-intensive. What is the probability of each of these scenarios across each of these kind of strategies has to be accepted by the agency? We think about, you know, students, our student experience, the disruption of students, you know, blending schools. What are the cultures of those schools? Are teachers prepared? And do they have the skill set to, to support students that, that represent a different student group than they currently educate? So there's, there's all sorts of things that we work through. Do they fit? You know, that we, when, if you have to go to an A or B school, many of those schools are, are at our near capacity, which means that we would have to get creative, probably have to work with the city to, to get some things permitted in a relatively quick process or timeline. So I will, I want the board to know that we are evaluating scenario after scenario after scenario after scenario in an effort to bring forward something that can be accepted, aligns with their values, acknowledges what we are being asked to do. And we're not quite at a point where we have a recommendation because we still need to listen and engage with the community on the 14th. We need to understand what we receive in the survey and continue to have conversations. But at the point that we are, we will be 100% transparent. The other thing I will say is we are also constantly getting clarity from the agency about, you know, if this, then this, you know. And so I just, I want our board to know that there's a lot of energy and, and time being spent to try to get this as right as we can. But at the end of the day, I, I do want to acknowledge that, you know, DOBE has been doing some incredible things. I, I walked DOBE. When I first came on as interim, I was there as COO. I've been there several times this year. The climate and culture is moving. The, the stability that Principal Walker has brought is, is, is definitely noticeable. And we, when we engage in December, it was an honest, genuine effort to do something incredible and do it in a way that, that we would expect, and I think the board expects. That just requires more time than we have. So, so these are the, the three slides that I wanted to share tonight. I, I hope that it brings some additional clarity to kind of how we got here. I know it doesn't solve or answer all the questions, but I, I wanted to kind of just lay this out. So I appreciate the opportunity to provide an update. Trustee Singh.
Thank you for this. Oh, go ahead. Yes, I was just going to say, I really appreciate this. And so I just want to be sure I understand. So, you know, historically, you know, based on historical actions in the past, when we have had a campus that had, you know, that met, that basically was not meeting federal accountability expectations, the time we had to do a turnaround was different than it is now. Correct. Like, and, and TA has the discretion to interpret that timeline.
So yeah, there, there are two things that are impacting the timeline, and Jacob can probably speak to the first one better than I am. But it's when this, when the time starts. So the way the education code says is that, you know, once the school is identified. Well, our interpretation of that in the past, it's been, well, once STAR is completed and the accountability rating is given, at that point, the school is identified. The way that clock starts now, based on what we've learned from the agency, is that it's actually when the school year starts of the year that they actually get that rating, which is different than what it had been in the past. So that is how we started initially with thinking we had one more year than we actually had because our previous experience had been, you know, the other way, after you get accountability, because that's when they're identified. The second part of your question, Trustee Singh, is the time to do a turnaround plan. Typically, it is one year to plan, two years to implement. But we got clarity from the agency. The expectation is that we implement in August of 2025. So that planning was, that's previously a year is, you know, three to four months. And then the, the implementation time is, is kind of unknown because we, we will start, but we don't necessarily know that we will be able to get all the way through it. So I don't know, Jacob, anything else you want to add? I think maybe, like maybe precisely the language you probably know at the top of your head.
I just wanted to mention that also with federal accountability, we're dealing with some accountability rules to where there really hasn't even been time to get up to where we're at now. Because this is, this is all under ESSA, under former President Obama, which was passed just 10 years ago, if we think about it. And, you know, it took a little while for those rules to then go out to the state. States actually had to write an ESSA plan back to the federal government saying, here's how we'll incorporate your requirements, including your growth requirements, which in Texas is through domain three of our accountability system. And then once that got done, just two years later, COVID happened. And the feds, they did not pause ratings, but they carried ratings over. So if you look at any of our ratings for, and I hope, I'm pretty sure I'm going to get these years right, 1920 and 2021, you're going to see that it's the exact same rating of the year they got before that, and that's because they carried over. So then it wasn't until 22-23 that we started those ratings again. So there was also just some lack of understanding on how it was actually going to play out with those rules. But Superintendent Segura's point, part of what we thought is when the rule stated that it was two years failed to exit, that that would be your first year of getting in, and then the next year would be your year one of failing to exit, and then your next should be year two. And if that happened, then you do a turnaround plan. What TA told us was that no, it was, they read that as two years. So that first year, they counted as year one. And that first year of not being able to exit was their year two, which is what changed that timeline for us as well.
And so they interpreted it differently. They've changed the way they interpret it, in essence. Is that correct?
They definitely interpret it differently than we do on the fail to exit, yes.
Do they change the way that they interpret it, though, than they did previously?
I would need to double check if there was guidance that said something differently earlier than that. My colleague Carolyn Hanson hasn't texted me the correct answer yet, but I assume in a second now.
Okay. And then Superintendent, do we know if like other school districts are in this similar situation? If there is like not clarity on the timing?
One of the, there isn't clarity on what other school districts are experiencing this for the federal accountability side. On the state accountability side, as things get released, there are other schools, districts that are in similar positions. But that's a separate conversation. But on the federal side, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, I appreciate it. And yeah, I, I know that there's, I know you're working really hard to, to hustle on this. And I, you know, I just look forward to, to just seeing what happens next. And I just feel really, I don't know, I just, I think this is a situation that's really hard on all of us and especially for the students. And I know that we're committed to making sure that the students get what they need. And I know that there was an effort, a renewed effort to do that with the Lasso grant. And I really hope we get a chance to, to serve that community in the way that they, they deserve to be served. So thank you. Thank you. I think Trustee Hunter is next.
I'll have a question. I just want to translate for people, because there were a lot of words just used now. So here is the translation for anybody that's watching. Teachers, students, community, admin are doing great things. Schools get grades. We have possibly three Fs. State says kids have to be in a higher rated school. Now we're between a rock and a hard place. Our time is short. Our money is not long, and we have to make a decision, and we need to hear from the community. So there is the survey that's open till the 15th. There is the meeting that is there on the 14th. Kids are what is most important. But we have the federal system and the state system. One was going to be a plan. We were getting ready for it, and then the state system dropped. So now, new plan. Show up to the meeting, talk to us about it. We will have a new plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Hoppin.
Can, just to put this in comparison to the historical closures or changes that we've had, can you compare this experience right now with, either with Reagan or with Johnston or with or Mendez? Kind of in terms of how this timeline and this process is going to, by necessity, be different from the timeline or process in those cases?
Sure. So Mendez was strictly the, a state process in looking at state accountability, not related to federal. Eastside was also state, although there was federal, but that would have been under No Child Left Behind in previous federal accountability levels. Reagan, I, I came on to AISD after that, right when that completed. So I was not here for the beginning. So to the best of my knowledge, that was also on state and federal for, for both accountability systems. Does that answer your question?
But the timeline for the turnaround plan for each of those, how that is different?
So this is most, so this is not similar to Eastside's at all, to the best of my knowledge, or Reagan's? Because they were on both different state accountability systems and different federal accountability systems. Mendez was most similar. In 26, in 2015, we did a turnaround plan for Burnett and Mendez and submitted those to TA. We had two years to implement those. Burnett did turnaround within those two years. However, the state does require that you keep your turnaround plan through the life of it. Mendez did not. So in 2017, we had a conversation around what would be those next steps for Mendez. And that is what led to the original 1882 partnership with TSTEM Coalition in 2017 for starting the 17, 18 school year.
And is that the year that is comparable to this year? Like where, at what, at what point? Like where, in, in comparison to where we are right now with having to make these decisions, like in the timeline for accountability, where, what was happening at this time, parallel to that with Mendez? Does that make sense?
It does.
Is it at that point?
So we were in the, we were in the second year of the turnaround plan with Mendez at that time. We actually did not enter the 1882 partnership until the end of the fifth year because that bill was passed that legislative year. And it just came into place. As a matter of fact, it just so happened that it passed with enough votes that it went into place immediately. We didn't have to wait a few months. And so the state said that for these districts that are in their year five, kind of like a, a this time only, we will allow you to go ahead and do the 1882 partnership, even though you already have your fifth year of accountability. Now, this was also before the 2019 change to the law that said the commissioner shall take an action. But that was an exception that was made for that first year. And so Mendez was one of somewhere between nine and 13 districts who took advantage of 1882 immediately. And, you know, that was a project that I worked on, as I think you know. And a lot of it, we were literally having to figure out the rules with the campus while TA was writing them. So that we could have that in place in time for the next school year.
And in that situation, then, we had two years to implement a turnaround plan. We did not have two years to implement a turnaround plan this time. In that case, we had the opportunity to do a more open process for selecting an 1882 partner, including what ultimately led to a local partner being engaged with us. This time, we have lists that we have to choose from that may not include local options?
Yeah. So TA had, so again, there were no 1882 partners prior to that time. And so TA also did a expediated review of new partnerships. Since then, they have stated that they do expect any new partnerships for the turnaround program because there's also an innovation 1882 partnership, like our United Way partnership. For the turnaround partners, that they need to have demonstrated success. So that's a new requirement for looking at those 1882 partnerships.
And so new partners are not available. So if a partner has not yet done this work with, specifically this work, then they would not even be considered because they had to not have a demonstrated track record?
That's right. So we have the choice of approved turnaround partners, or the law always allows a subchapter D charter holder to serve as well, as long as they have met financial accountability and state accountability for the last three years.
Okay. So there really are very few lessons right now to be learned from any of those three past experiences because our timeline and our options and the ultimate necessity and the ultimate necessity of the commissioner to act, if we hit our fifth year, those are all different conditions?
That's correct. Yeah, we completely implemented the full turnaround for Mendez.
Jacob, for clarification, the two-year implementation plan for Burnett occurred after almost one full year of planning?
For both of those schools. They both spent a full year of planning and then two years of implementation. Burnett did turnaround in that first year, but the rules required that you still have to implement both years. So they still implemented.
To, for extreme clarity, once you get, once you're asked to do a turnaround plan, you have a full year to develop and plan and prepare to implement, and then two years to implement. That's the way it previously had been done?
And when you say two years of implement, you mean to demonstrate the results? Like, you have two years of implementation before they judge you based on the student results?
They would, they would judge you on that second year.
Yeah, that's right. Okay. And so, okay, so those are very big differences. And then just for clarity, can you talk about how the 2019 law says that the commissioner must act if a school district has a school get to the fifth year with a fail, with an F? Be very clear, what are the options that the commissioner says that they have now, if they have to act after that fifth year?
So the commissioner, the commissioner's been provided two options. He can apport, uh, excuse me, appoint a board of managers over a school district, or he can close a school. He also is required to, if presented with a, a resolution or a petition from the neighborhood that is being looked at, if they request one of those certain actions, he has to take that under consideration before he can take an action.
Okay. And then finally, is there any potential legislation being considered right now that would adjust that draconian rule?
I think the best I can say about that is that there's nothing that has been scheduled with the Public Education Committee. It is possible that, you know, there's thousands of bills, and it is possible that it is in a bill. But I can say with certainty that not one that has been scheduled with the Public Education Committee.
Thank you.
Trustees, additional questions?
So I just wanted to clarify for the people watching. You know, we have to submit a turnaround plan. And what I'm hearing you say is that you have kind of limited prospects of what you think would be accepted by the commissioner. And then, on the timeline that you had presented on the slide, you know, we need to make a submission by the, by the end of the month, roughly. My question, just for the people watching at home, let's just say we submitted a plan that we didn't, we weren't sure was going to get accepted, or that, that we thought maybe doesn't have good chances at getting accepted. What happens if we submit something and it's not accepted within the timeline? Or considering we're on such a constricted timeline?
Yeah. So, correct me if I'm wrong, Jacob, but we submit the turnaround plan. If it's not accepted, the commissioner declines it, then we have, is it 45 days? 15?
60.
60 total?
Yeah.
Well, you described it, because I think I'm getting the days.
Just trying to pull up the, the calendar so I could give you exact dates. Yeah, so you have 60 days to submit another plan. And the commissioner, so first, the commissioner has a certain number of days that he can respond. And I believe that they're different each time, because I believe the second time it's only 15 days.
That's right.
But, uh, so you have that first time, he can decline, you have 60 days to submit again. If he doesn't accept it, it doesn't say decline. It's that if he doesn't accept it the second time, then the commissioner has to take an accountability action. That's a little bit greater than what I just explained with those two options, because there's options of conservators and, and other different steps. But he would need to take that, since he did not accept the turnaround plan.
Okay, so just, yeah, just to be clear for the people at, at home, at most, we're going to submit two plans. And if the second plan wasn't accepted, we would be facing much more stricter or severe repercussions.
You, you, you have two options, you have two times to, to submit. If those are not accepted, then there will be an intervention. I think that, to Jacob's point, there are different types. Conservator is not a board of managers, but it is, you know, a conservator over the board. There are monitors, and there's also closures. So there, it's, it's more broad, but yes, it would be an intervention, and it would be out of our control.
Okay, and then my last point of clarification. We don't have a lot of time for developing and implementing and, you know.
Yeah, so, so this is, when I think about execution risk, whatever, if we were to be unsuccessful, and we lost 60 days between the end of April and the start of the school year, then the probability of being successful in '25, '26 goes down significantly. So, one of the things that I have been telling our, our, our community, been telling anybody that'll listen to me, I intend to submit a plan that will be accepted. I think that the risk of not doing that is, is pretty great. Not only the time we lose to plan and actually execute, but if it's an, if it, if the plan includes, which it will likely include a staffing, you know, change, it may include, like, facility changes, it will include pretty heavy tasks. And I will need to get those completed over the duration of the summer. If I lose that window, then I may not even be able to implement. So, so that's, that's kind of the, the challenge that, that we have as we think about, you know, what a successful first attempt looks like versus a successful second attempt. I do not intend ever to be at a point where the second one, if that were the case, did not be successful. If that makes any sense?
Yeah, no, I appreciate you highlighting the, the limited time that we're talking about.
Thank you. Trustees, other questions?
And so, in response to the concerns that this was a surprise to the community, just want to be clear that, at the time of the meetings in December and all that, the plan at that point was to work on a plan developed with the community and with the school to make significant investments and improvements, so that in '25, '26, we could expect to see improvement and success on that. Knowing that, at that time, thinking that if we did, again, achieve an F in '25, '26, we would, that would be then when we'd be having this conversation. We would not be facing fifth year at that time. Is that, is that my understanding?
That is correct. And the, the one thing that I think accelerated all of this is the, the lawsuits. There were not part of them, but those accountability years not hitting changed all the timelines. Those are two additional years that, you know, if they, if they would have dropped six months from now, then, then it changes everything. It's just, it's really all things kind of coming together and having three years of accountability hit within four months. But that's exactly right.
So it, that, so there was a very intentional and, uh, yeah, there was a plan sincerely to engage with the community, to develop a plan that's going to help improve instruction while maintaining all the things that are beautiful at DOBE and all the great things that are happening, with the present leadership, with the present staff, to make improvements. And that plan changed suddenly because of the new information and the new interpretations?
Correct. Yeah, I, I, that was, Trustee Koppin, I appreciate you kind of saying that, because I, when I opened up these slides, I, I wanted to make it incredibly clear, I will never engage in a disingenuine way, period. I'm not going to do it. And, you know, when I go to a community, you know, I'm transparent, vulnerable, you know, I, I really seek to understand, to improve the system. And, and that's what we did in December. And we did it at multiple schools. There were five schools, there's 10 meetings, five schools, and there will be others, you know? And, and these are deep conversations, and we learn a lot, and our partners help us. And Austin Voices is tremendous in supporting those meetings. Yeah, so that was the intent, and then things changed as we moved through the, the spring semester.
And can you help us understand what's going to happen at the community meeting on Monday? What is that going to look like, and what opportunities will people have to, to provide input at that meeting?
Yeah, so we've been, we've made some adjustments. I, I think, I hope our board knows that I will, I pivot as needed. I think it's going to be really important to spend time going through what we just went through today. And then also even exploring even deeper, you know, different scenarios within each of those kind of strategies. Because I, I want our community to understand how we're thinking about it. And then, hopefully do that in abbreviated time. I've been told five minutes. I, I don't know that that, that is possible. But I, I want to take the first 10 minutes, maybe at most, to talk about this, and then move towards getting input on, now that you, we all understand where we are, you know, let's take input and, and figure out how we can do this together. And, and that's, that's the plan. Structurally, I'd ask Ally and maybe others to, to respond, but that is the general approach. We want input. We want input. And, and I do, I will say this again, I, I want to have multiple plans that will be accepted. Which one of those plans best responds to the needs of the DOBE community, our community? Like, that is where I think the refinement comes. But I do not want to risk submitting a plan that has a low probability of being accepted. And I, I have said that, and I intend to say that again on Monday, for, for all the reasons that we just described, talked about.
And I just want to ask a couple, like, quick questions that I already know the answers to, but I want to just ask them. Is there an intention here, or a desire to close DOBE, because we want to close DOBE?
No.
Okay. Is there, is it a budgetary thing, where we're closing DOBE to save money?
No, the, the, the plan, in fact, was to do the opposite. Now, do I think that other resources would have to be pooled on the system to invest in DOBE? Yes, but I think that aligns with our overall value, our values, I should say.
Okay. And is there a distrust in the current leadership and faculty of the school that they could do the work of improving outcomes for kids at that school, if given the time and resources? You doubt the leadership and faculty of that school?
Oh, no, I, I don't doubt the, the leadership whatsoever, and I've spent time with many staff on that campus. I, I think that, um, you know, we, this administration has, I would say, this iteration of it, the last 18 months, 20 months, you know, like, we, we were very intentional about hiring Roxanne, sorry, Principal Walker. We worked with community, we heard from community, we walked the schools, we had conversations, you know, to, to, to make sure that it was, it was the right leader. And, and I think that we found the right leader for DOBE, and I think they would, they would agree. Climate and culture has improved, things have improved. It, it is, it is purely a function of time. And, and recognizing that if we don't execute this plan correctly, risk, existential risk could be introduced. And that is something that, you know, I think we need to be, like, honest about.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Trustee Gonzalez?
Thank you. So I, I heard a lot frequently tonight during public comment that there's a desire to continue to include and preserve core elements of DOBE's identity in whatever happens with that community. And so, could that be a part of a turnaround plan? Commitments to continue certain programs wherever that community ends up next year?
Absolutely. I mean, I think that's, that's, that's our intention. You know, I, I think it's important to, to acknowledge that this, this school supports our students. The programs support our students. And where the students go, or, I mean, there are strategies in here where the students stay. I mean, based on what we saw, there are those strategies. But in any case, our expectation, my expectation, as the leader of the organization, is that the implementation plan is responsive to the, the, the culture and the needs of our students. And so, yes, the, the programs that have been successful at DOBE, if they were at another location to move with the students, I would expect them to be there. And I would expect us to support access to those students. To me, that's maybe the one thing that isn't always said, is the access. If a smaller school goes into a larger school, sometimes, you know, students maybe are further away from the ability to engage with an activity, whether it's fine arts or athletics. We would create a, a process and a procedure to mitigate that. Again, every school's different, every plan is going to be different, but that is part of the work ahead of us.
I appreciate that. Living in Austin for a long time, and we talk about that, and we're talking about moving communities to different parts of the city to go to school. I think it triggers a lot of uncomfortable memories for people about what that process was like, so. I appreciate the clarification that you provided around how the agency is interpreting accountability and what counts towards the years that we're keeping track of, and then what triggers mandated action. Are there additional campuses beyond this one that now need to be taken into consideration because that timeline has been adjusted?
So for federal accountability, no. But for state, state accountability, which we know is coming, yes. You know, we are going to have to take a hard look, because what we know, when you look at, then, when, we have staff that report to Jacob, incredible staff, that take all the information that they have to make projections. And what we know is that there were schools that were Bs that have moved to Ds and Fs. And so we have to acknowledge that because of that change, based on the way, you know, STAR was, the way it was changed, the way it was implemented, all of the things that occurred, we are going to have additional schools that are going to be at risk of intervention earlier. So, in my mind, what needs to really occur is a kind of comprehensive, citywide focus, but really intentional around the schools that need the most support. I actually heard a couple of comments from the community about, like, leaning into our city, leaning into our, our partners, like, leaning into advocates and recognizing this is a, this is a city problem. We will, we will get through it together, but it's going to require all of us to do it and to do it well. So yes, but not on the federal side. That'll be the, the state side. And there, and one of the things that we're working through right now is there isn't clarity on the rules of turnaround plans, targeted improvement plans. That, those will come out as the '22, '23 accountability gets released. And so, we are, we are constantly trying to get clarification. And we've gotten some along the way, but there's still more to be, to come.
Thank you.
So, Phil, I have to ask this, just for due diligence, because I know the way we've approached this and the conversations, you know, you're talking about the existential larger risk to the district. Is there a high-risk option for keeping DOBE open?
Is there a higher, is there a higher risk of being accepted?
No. Is there an option to keep DOBE open that would put the district in risk, but allows DOBE to stay open?
I mean, you, you could just not do anything. I mean, that's, that's, you know, the, I think that's, um...
And so, for the public, what is the risk?
If, if we did not do anything, the risk would be that DOBE would get the, '22, '23 would get released, which we know it will. '23 and '24 gets released, which we know it will, would, they'll be likely enough. And then '24, '25 will get released, which is likely enough. And then, we will not have done enough to move the school in one school year for '25, '26. And because they did not improve, then the commissioner shall take an action of closing the school or installing the board of managers. So, so the, the, there, there isn't a, a risk of doing, there isn't a risk, I guess, doing nothing is not, the risk of doing nothing is, like, so high that I don't know that I would ever bring that to the board.
Well, I want to clarify, because I don't assume that we would do nothing. But I want to highlight, because the difficulty of this decision is, you know, we're having a lot of conversation about DOBE. There's a meeting next week with the DOBE community. But in, you know, this high-risk scenario, I'm putting in air quotes, high-risk scenario, is something that actually involves the entire district. And so we have a dichotomy of listening to the DOBE community, while also the whole rest of IS, Austin ISD, by all rights, would have... while also the whole rest of Austin ISD, by all rights, would have a say in some of this conversation as well. Because you're basically risking all of the other school districts, I mean, the rest of the school district.
Yeah. And I think that's where the input from the board is incredibly important. You know, y'all represent the community. And as we develop plans, we're very intentional in making sure that we have the voices of those who are going to be impacted by the decisions. And we keep that closest. Yes, you know, there should be, and maybe we can consider additional opportunities for the rest of the city to engage on the ultimate decision. But, you know, historically, our practice has been, if a disruption is going to occur, you know, make sure those closest to it are part of the conversation. And then get feedback in regards to the kind of other risks that we would have to manage. So I'd have to think through, like, the best way to do it. But I do think that y'all's voice in the process is really the best way to introduce it, at least initially.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I'm not trying to overcomplicate the matter. I mean, I think it's intrinsically complicated. And especially because of the extremely limited amount of time that we have to make any decision. I just wanted to kind of highlight the complexity there of, you know, for better or worse, I think, well, clearly for worse. You know, these are a type of situation that is kind of intrinsically designed to put a community against itself or community members against themselves. Because we're talking about one very specific community, but then we're also talking about the entire district. And I feel remiss if I, you know, don't highlight the fact that, you know, vouchers are coming up for a vote very soon. And this news about the accountability ratings coming out seems timely. And so, for, you know, the people watching at home and the rest of the community, I just want to highlight, you know, the multiple aspects that are coming into play for a decision that we're giving very, very limited time to make an informed decision on. So I just wanted to highlight that complexity and appreciate you weighing in on it.
Of course.
Trustee Foster.
Since this is an information session ahead of a voting meeting, and when we get to the vote, we'll probably move, I don't know if we'll move quickly or not. But I just want to sort of candidly acknowledge a reality, at least that I perceive as one trustee. And that is that the Dobi community has just been doing amazing things. And growing and, you know, going in the right direction. And the administration, from what I can see, in response and in support, has been sort of working with the Dobi community to see what does it look like to get stronger and stronger. And then we have community partners, like, communities and schools and Austin Voices, who are just like showing up. So there's just been so much going in the right direction. And I think what can, we can forget, even though we know we are working with a system that's just rife with imperfect, not just imperfect metrics, stupid metrics that don't really reflect, and apologies to, you know, for using such a horrible word like stupid. But when you see something going in the right direction, and when you know the complexities of a community, and you know how heroic and brave that community is and strong that community is, and you see that community then given a false label, it's really frustrating. And if it's frustrating for me, then I imagine it's deeply painful for other folks who feel judged by this false scarlet letter. So our community is just put in an unfair situation that they don't deserve. They deserve our gratitude and our praise for how hard they're working, and yet here we are. Then the double down on this is to be put in a situation to undo good work. And to say, well, you know what? Instead of doing things in a way that would say, let's have a runway and let's do something over a year and a half. And let's, you know, plan ahead. To be told by a larger enforcing entity that, no, we think what's really good is to roll out massive plans in six months. That's a good way to run things. And so, then what do we do? We say, all right, well, we got to do what we got to do. And maybe it's apparent to folks, I see a lot of tired eyeballs on this dais. I see a lot of tired eyeballs all through the community. I see a lot of people that are just reeling and yet keep working. So ahead of whichever way we go, I'm confident that we will be doing the absolute best we can. That the Dobi community will be doing the best that we can. That we will probably have imperfect solutions because we're dealing with a badly flawed system. What I saw from public comment was evidence of a healthy community. Or a community that was healing, a community that was growing, a community that's going in the right direction. You don't have teachers showing up and with specificity telling you about the growth of different programs unless the programs are actually growing. And then you don't get the double down of kids showing up unless they believe. So there were some really cool things going on and that you could just see. And you can't fake that stuff. So I sat here and said, wow, look at the evidence of the things that they're doing. So I desperately want to support this community. And also understand that it's a real communications nightmare to be able to work through and explain that, yes, F doesn't mean what other people seem to say it means. And having to retool and redoing it another way is a protective measure that is not necessarily, in a perfect world, the best way to go. But this is the world that we're in, where we're in an oppressive state. So I think that needs to be said, and maybe only one trustee or nine. I don't know how many people who needs to say it, because I'm not trying to run afoul of the state. I'm not trying to insult the state. It's not my interest to insult other bodies. But I also don't like when they come for you and make it hard for you to do well by kids. And some of us, our teachers, our principals, they know how to do well by kids. And it's frustrating to see their great work interrupted. I have deep concerns that whatever happens for our rising eighth graders, our rising seventh graders, our rising sixth graders, that they're put in the absolute best position possible with any solution that we come up with, that equitable access to excellent opportunity remains the gold standard for our kids, wherever they are. That our awesome teachers understand something that UT doesn't do. Right now, UT, we're firing people left and right. Lifetime bleeding orange Longhorns. We've given them their walking papers and saying, yeah, you know, you can just go about your business. And that's why I'm here tonight, instead of doing stuff with my university. Because I know our values aren't that. And I know and have confidence, but want to like say it and know it and see the metrics on it, that all the awesome teachers that we have at Dobi, that next year, if it's their will, they're with us in this building or that building, serving kids in the way that feeds their heart and soul and feeds our kids. Our kids are taken care of, our staff are taken care of. And that we engage the really difficult work of a long-term plan that has us survive the moment and then thrive into the future. So you laid out a couple of options, three options, with all sorts of confusing subparts, you know, that you're working through. And we'll just have to keep working on it, come up with what we come up with, be listening to the community every step along the way, even when they're coming at us. Because there's a sense of, you know, our complicity in it, which we don't want to be complicit with. So my heart's kind of heavy in this moment. And my heart's heavy because I'm just so, I just don't like seeing beautiful people put in these bad, in these tough situations. But I know they'll come through it, I know we'll come through it. And I guess I'm just, I'm ironically heartened and proud right now because of our community and because of the way they're showing up. And I really felt tonight that even when we heard an hour and a half of public comment that included a lot of pain, what I saw was students who were clearly have, have been growing and developing, and teachers who were passionate and inspired in a way that three, you know, a couple of years ago, we were going in a different direction. And lastly, in all this conversation, Superintendent Segura, I'm really proud of you in that what folks aren't seeing, if I'm in this building, I see you. And if I'm over in that building, I see you. And if I'm over in that building, I see you. But all these, you, I don't know how many buildings you're in. You're probably talking to legislators, you're probably on campuses, you're probably sitting and doing classroom observations, you're probably working directly with kids. Not probably, I know you are. And that this is a lot. You sat with the Ann Richards community, and several of our trustees did, and took the pain of that community expressing itself. And you, you know, all, Trustee Hunter, all of y'all with dignity, listen to our community, wherever things go with that one. Wherever things go with Dobi, wherever things go with any of these things. So I know that you're sitting through a lot. And I know your executive leadership team is sitting through a lot. And I'm just really proud of you. And whatever I can do to be supportive of you and the administration over the coming weeks, I'm absolutely here for you. And all you have to do is just follow the North Star, keep listening to our community and respecting and honoring our community. So I don't, I don't know what next two weeks looks like in terms of what actually ends up on our agenda. But I'll be watching and paying attention and doing my best to support you and the executive leadership and our entire community.
Thank you. Anyone else?
All right, I just want to just follow that, that, just kind of share that pride. And first of all, the love that we know there is for our schools here, the progress and real excitement that we're seeing at Dobi, that showed up here in the room tonight, that was there last week at an event that, you know, I know a lot of people are seeing. And that's why we chose you to, you know, to do this work. And we see it bearing fruit. And I think it is important, as people showed up here tonight and said, and as people on this dais have said, to keep that momentum for our students, to keep that promise that we've made to them, whatever we need to decide, that we've made that promise. And we need to keep that promise by putting them first and doing whatever this is with our community and not to our community. I would love to go, if we can pull up those slides again, the slide that shows the years and the test scores. I want, I don't want our students to be carrying this burden. This is an adult burden to be carried. And when you look at those test scores, if they come up, we see a 68, a 59, we see the pandemic. We see a 59, to come out of the pandemic as well as you went in is a pretty big accomplishment. Then we see a 51 and a 47, which looks like things fell off a cliff. And I want to be sure our community understands that the yardstick changed. It's a yardstick we will be measured by. And we have to meet, but that does not reflect our students knowing less or working less hard. It doesn't reflect our teachers accomplishing less with our students. It reflects a new measurement. And I want to be sure that's really clear. Because I don't want anyone to be going through this and feeling that on top of everything else. And then I think it's, it's important right now, we live in this, and I think we can take that down. But we live in this and understand the shift in the test and the yardstick. I think we understand terms of, we talk about a conservator or a board of managers. And I would love for that to be defined. If you could just define that really clearly, what that means, I think that would be helpful for our community as we make sure everyone really is fully informed.
Yes, President Boswell. So conservator is, let me start actually with the lower intervention, which should be a monitor. So the Text Education Agency can place a monitor, really in any division within a school district. And a monitor does precisely just that. They come into the organization, they are paid for their time. They really become a collaborating partner in progressing work. But they do not have the ability to direct staff or to supersede a vote of the board. And I use collaboratively only because the only example that I have with the monitor is our TEA monitors for special education, and they have been collaborative. I know that's not always the case with all engagements. But the one that is most recent to us, the special education, I do want to acknowledge that they have been collaborating with us. And so, the big difference there is they're monitoring, they're reporting back to the agency, they're assisting, but they cannot, they cannot direct staff and they cannot supersede a board vote. A conservator does, is all of those things, except they do have the authority to direct staff or direct, supersede a board vote. You see this a lot of times in financial distressed organizations where there's difficult decisions to be made, whether it's like a RIF or some other type of real big adjustment. A conservator will come over finance and make recommendations with the CFO. And if the board does not vote in a way that aligns with the expectations of the conservator, the conservator can come over the top and essentially, you know, kind of make the vote behalf of the board. So that is, that is the difference between a monitor and a conservator. And just kind of rewinding back to TEA with Special Education agreed order, at one point, a conservator was the recommendation. And then we worked really hard, worked with the agency, worked with our special education department, worked with everybody really to actually negotiate and agree to a monitoring relationship, which actually, which actually has worked out very well. So those are the two differences. Is that helpful?
And then a board of managers?
So board of managers, very different. Board of managers is where the commissioner replaces all the elected officials on the board with, you know, identified members appointed by the commissioner. I think one thing that's unique about it, and Jacob, it can clarify, but technically, there still are trustees, they just have no power. So there is an election, there are people that are trustees, but they do not sit on the dais, they do not direct the superintendent, and they are appointed by the commissioner. So that would be the difference. And also, along with that, in many cases, you do also see a turning over of the superintendent. So that's not always the case, but typically, you see that occur at the same time.
And that's when people talk about a takeover or what happened in Houston. That's what we're talking about. So that is, ultimately, if we don't get this right and don't do what's required, that's our...
That is intervention that could occur, yes.
For our district. Yep. In addition, yeah, to the risk to the kids of not getting it right. So I appreciate the chance to, you just kind of have this moment to really help our community have clarity on something that's come really quickly, because it's a whole lot to process. And I appreciate that people are already showing up to help us kind of figure out how best to navigate this for the students at Dobi right now. So, and really appreciate your comments, Superintendent Segura, that really we're going to be calling on our whole community. Not just with this, but as the new accountability system goes into place to really help the larger number of schools, not only here, but statewide, that will be falling into this, it's, we're going to need new solutions. You know, kind of a different way of thinking about resources to make sure that we're taking care of all of our schools for our students everywhere. So, thank you. Any more questions or comments before we move on? Okay, well, I trust that you'll let us know what you need from us and bring us some recommendations and that our community will be engaged. So, thank you. Okay, so we're going to finish our agenda preview at this point. Next section is Section 8, Board Administration. Do we have any questions about this? Trustee Gonzalez.
Thank you. For time's sake, I was just wondering if somebody could briefly speak to, I guess, the context of this corrective action plan and how the administration's responding?
Trustee Gonzalez, I'm happy to share about the TEA rules and the corrective action plan and why it came across. And then my colleague, Dr. Diaz, can share more about what we're doing moving forward. So the corrective action plan is in regards to the district's individual graduation plan data for the 2023 graduating class. So we're looking back at two years, because we are typically delayed in how we report graduation data. So the state actually created these rules back in 2014. They went in place to allow 11th and 12th graders to still graduate, even if they were failing one or two of their end-of-course exams, but met all of their graduation requirements. And then this individual graduation committee could come together and determine that this student still satisfied everything that's needed, other than just the physical act of passing that EOC. And so that put in place for all 11th and 12th graders starting in 2015, they renewed that in 2021. And at that time, they also put new requests for TEA to monitor how districts were utilizing these individual graduation committees. And we'll probably refer to them as IGCs a lot. So IGCs. So TEA sent us a letter in February of '24, letting us know that they were going to start looking at districts, and that they were monitoring any campuses that would be above 10%. So in August of this school year, but also 2024, they sent us a letter letting us know that they were opening an investigation into Austin ISD, because according to their records, we had two campuses that were currently above 10%. We had another campus that was just at 10%, but they, they told us that, but they indicated that they were really looking in to the other two campuses. And so they opened that investigation, we responded to the data that they requested, and turned in all of the IGC materials for those two campuses and explained to them what we were doing to put in place to address our IGCs for this school year, and of course, moving forward. So TEA wrote back to us just at the end of last month, letting us know that they were willing to enter into a corrective action plan in order to end that investigation. And so that is one action that TEA can take. Basically, what it says is, you know, they're saying that, hey, we believe that we've learned enough to say that there's, there's a concern. And our next step would typically be to go out to the district and do a big audit onsite, you know, at campuses for all the year different schools and review all this data. But understandably, you know, they would rather just move straight into, let's put a solution in place. So TEA offered a corrective action plan that we can accept in place of them continuing on a longer investigation. That corrective action plan will require that we do training for all of our appropriate staff, and we are going to ensure that, you know, we meet who that appropriate staff is if the board chooses to approve this corrective action plan. So we'll do that training. TA actually has provided us an hour-long webinar training that we can utilize. And then they want for for us to report on data for the year and to put in place certain actions. I'd like to ask if Dr. Diaz can share some of those actions that we're going to put into place and have already put into place.
Absolutely. So we kind of saw this coming before we even got the indication from TEA. So these, these corrective actions were already in motion before we even received any news from from TEA, and it was a combination of academics and school leadership working together to realize that we didn't have a tight process in place. So we kind of, we kind of knew that, you know, something like this might happen, and we were trying to triage it and be preventative. But unfortunately, you know, we uncovered this, you know, a little, a little too late. So right away, you know, we, we had, we created a website, we created a formalized process, there's a handbook, we created the projects. So as before, each campus was able to kind of do their own projects, we said, no, we needed to do this in a more centralized way.
And these were the project to demonstrate?
Yes, that's right. Yes. So there, so in order to demonstrate proficiency and why they are able to get credit for passing the, you know, they're missing two EOCs would be, you have to have a project or a portfolio. So we created a project for each one of the EOCs, and they have rubrics, and then there's also a bunch of data that the campuses have to gather. And that was one of the things that we uncovered, is some of the campuses did not have the proper documentation. So we carefully watched the webinar over and over again and read through all the FAQs and, you know, created the forms that have every single aspect that TEA is requiring us to have in the forms. So, you know, we have a steering committee, and the committee has counseling, and it's got folks from technology, you know, it's got some of Jacob's folks. So we're really coming together as a district to all work together, because everybody has a little piece in this, because there's PMS for tracking the kids that are graduating with IGCs. And we've done, we did a training initially with the principals, we did a training with the APs, and we are also going to do audits. So we've got, we are bringing the campuses into the district, and we're going to help them sit down and look through all of their paperwork and ensure that everything is, you know, on the up and up. And if there are any campuses that need more attention than just the time that we have with them in the central office, then we're going to go out to the campuses. Actually, we have gone out to some of the campuses already. So we've, you know, I don't want to, you know, bring anybody's name up or anything like that, but we have already gone out to the campuses and started doing some of that work.
I think that's, I think you covered it. Those, those are the steps.
That's enough. I can go on.
I know you can. We, we started on this a while ago, and we've got a solid plan.
He's like, sometimes you say too much. But anyway, yes, we have a really tight plan, and we will ensure that this will never happen to us again.
Thank you. Yeah, we're watching our minutes. So thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, trustees, anything else on section eight?
I just wanted to clarify something real quick, President Boswell.
Yep.
On that, IGCs. Looking at the data that is in board docs, it looks like there were four campuses that exceeded 10%. Is that correct? I just want to make sure that we were clear on the number of campuses.
The campuses that were under review were Eastside and Northeast.
There were five, there were five total over 10%, but there were two that were significantly higher and thus under review, because there were hundreds of campuses around the state that were over 10%, right?
Correct.
Yeah, there are over 200. Okay. And is this like, does this present any sort of existential threat to the district? Anytime we get something from TEA, it's like, okay, what is, you know, what does this mean? So do, how, I know you've got it, it sounds like you've got it under control, but I kind of just wanted to hear from Superintendent, like, does this present a risk that we should be monitored, that we as a board should be monitoring closely?
No, I think, I think your, your assessment is correct. You know, obviously, if we are not successful, or if the agency wanted to escalate because we didn't execute our plan, then, you know, a future step may occur, and, you know, perhaps to a monitor. But this is not a complicated solution. Like, we have the ability to execute it, we know what to do, we've already started the work. It is, from an execution perspective, very, very low risk. So I'm confident that we'll, we'll do it and do it well. So from a board perspective, I think getting updates to the board, you know, as we move to the processes appropriate via board update, but I don't think it necessarily requires the same kind of level of awareness as the TA agreed order for special education. I just think it's a different level of kind of risk.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anything else on section eight?
Eight point three, at what point will we be, the, the form is currently blank. At what point are we going to make nominations for the TASB director position?
So so far, we've only received one nomination, and so that is what we'll bring forward for the board in two weeks, which will be to continue our current, Lynn Boswell, for our current position.
Okay, so that will be filled in for the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next section is nine, business and finance. Any questions? All right, moving on to 10, facilities. Any questions on this? I know people are very excited about TURF, and we have a TURF vote, which is very exciting. The next section is 11, talent strategy. Any questions? Okay, moving on to 12, any questions on these? One thing I'll say, the loan strike governance quarterly evaluation, I've been over with Ashley, she was available tonight, but for in the interest of time, she's going to be available to speak to anyone between now and our next meeting, if you want to have an individual conversation with her about our self-evaluation. And then we'll be, she'll be available to answer questions during our meeting on the 24th as well. And we are going to hit 70 points on it, it's going to be our third quarter after we hit our first quarter, so this one's a big deal. So thank you all for the work you've done to get us there. So any other questions? Okay, well, we will now end our regular agenda preview, and we will recess the open meeting at 11:23 PM and move to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code sections 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.087, 551.076, 551.0821, and 551.071. When we're finished with the executive session, we will briefly return to the open session to formally adjourn the meeting. The adjournment will be recorded and included in all replays of tonight's meeting. Thank you for joining us, and have a good evening, and thank you to all of our staff for staying so late. Okay, we will now reconvene the open meeting at 2:10 AM. Secretary Gonzalez, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
The meeting is adjourned at, we don't need that anymore, the meeting is adjourned at 2:11 PM, AM. The meeting is adjourned at 2:11 AM, thank you.